... We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 2:00 after 1:00. The first item on our agenda is the citizens' comments. Sinead, do we have residents who would like to speak to us?
Yes, sir. We have three people who would like to speak today. Citizen comments provides the opportunity for citizens to address the council on items that are listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and I will let you know when one minute is left. Please state your name and address prior to your presentation. For handouts, please just provide them to me, and let me know if you have handouts, and I will approach you. Our first speaker is Osvaldo Rojas, and we've got the three-minute clock up, but I'll still let you know when one minute is left.
Sorry, I didn't know this was going to be that fast-moving. A little nervous, a little intimidating for me.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Osvaldo Rojas, address 2411 Skylark Drive.
Thank you.
And I'm here to speak to you about 801 Singleton. It's a project that I proposed in the P&amp;Z meeting, and would like you all to take a look at all the facts that I've, and my research that I've come across with future land use and actual facts that, sorry, them nerves are still there, that the property can actually be built, what can be built on that property and what can't be built on that property. I understand you all here in Irving have a vision for Irving, but sometimes those visions can be modified and tweaked a little bit to fit what we actually can and do on the properties or on land that's vacant. And that's the reason why I'm here, to try to show and prove that what I want to build for the future of Irving is something positive and something that we need here in Irving. I'm tired of Dallas. I've built plenty in Dallas, and I see what's coming towards Irving, and I want to be a part of it, and so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Laura Anderson.
Do you have Pete Graham? He signed in before me.
Laura, it's your turn to speak. Just please do your part.
Good afternoon, and if you all would just look at me for just a second. My name is Laura Anderson, and I live at 3728 Pocatello, Irving, Texas. Mr. Cronin, I especially want to talk to you and Mr. Lamorges, the lawyers. I will be requesting to speak in executive session regarding the municipal judge's position. As you are aware, instead of allowing the presiding judge of the city of Irving to conduct this judicial selection process and make recommendations to the council, as had been done for 40 years, the city of Irving through City Attorney's Office conducted the search for what was supposed to be the third judge, hiring a headhunter, Baker Tilly, to conduct the search. Through the negligence of Baker Tilly, they allowed the police chief, the assistant city manager, and the city attorney in charge of the prosecutors to select the municipal judges. As you are aware, the court is an independent entity and should not be subject to the opinions of city management. Because they are one of the parties that appear regularly before the judge, and it signals an appearance of impropriety on the part of the city of Irving, trying to gain an advantage of the other parties standing before the judge. Instead of allowing Judge Adams to review the candidate pool for the third position and make his selection, Baker Tilly solicited the opinion of city management and the city attorney, of who the five final selections were picked. Because Judge Adams' opinion counted just one vote, the city management's opinions outweighed Judge Adams' opinion. I've sent you an email just recently at noon. It's an email with an affidavit from Judge Adams, who said that had he been able to make the selection instead of the city management, he would have selected the incumbents. I know one of our alternates is getting ready to come up and speak. Again, I'm asking to speak before executive session. As you are aware, I never got the opportunity to even apply for my job. I was removed without the ability to speak about that position, and we didn't know we weren't selected. Judge Adams and I didn't know we weren't selected until Friday, when the mayor called us in.
Forty-eight seconds.
You have a choice today. You can reestablish the independence of the third branch of government, the independent state judiciary housed in the Irving Municipal Court, or you can continue to allow the Irving Municipal Court to function as another department of the city of Irving and rely on advice coming from the City Attorney's Office instead from the judges with 63 years of legal experience you've selected to provide you with that service. It is never too late to do the right thing. I'm providing you with all the law and the facts. I sent you an email about 12 o'clock today that has all the law regarding why the City Attorney's Office and city management should not be involved in our independent relationship. It should be the council and the judges deciding the slate of judges and not a...
Three minutes. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you all, and I'll be available during the executive session to talk to anyone who's willing to talk to me. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, just as a side, since the council can't talk to you, I can. We don't let residents in executive session unless they decide to...
I'm not asking to do that. I would have been a candidate. I'm talking about the municipal judge's pro...
Thank you. Please be seated. Peter Graham.
My name is Peter Graham, and I reside at 1717 Bryan Street in Irving, Texas. I've been a resident of Irving for almost 40 years, and I reside there with my wife, Valerie, who is a graduate of Nimitz High School and a lifelong Irving resident. I've been an associate judge with the city of Irving for just over 20 years, and I was recently reappointed. I'm here today asking that the council consider my application for the unfilled position in the city of Irving Municipal Court. I'm a graduate of the University of Dallas and Southern Methodist University Dedman School of Law. My legal experience includes representation of several thousand clients in municipal courts, county and district courts of the state of Texas, as well as United States District Courts in the northern and eastern districts. In addition to 20 years of service as a judge here in Irving, I also serve as a judge in the city of Capella Municipal Court and as a Dallas County District Court magistrate. Those are appointed positions. Prior to my appointment as a district court magistrate in Dallas County, I was selected to serve on the Dallas County Grand Jury in 2001 and 2003. The Texas Municipal Court Education Center is tasked with providing continual continuing judicial education for municipal court judges, and has requested on seven occasions that I have been part of the faculty there, including this year where I am presenting a new course on the discovery process. My participation in the judicial process, education process, has been entirely associated with my service as an Irving Municipal Court judge. I am a combat veteran of the Marine Corps with only 20 years of service as a tank and infantry officer. I've served in various positions to include General Staff Headquarters and conducted over 20 legal investigations...
One minute left.
...and served as a summary court martial officer and special court martial jurist. My service in Irving is typically, as a Irving judge, is typically involved night and weekend service, signing warrants, serving protective orders, transfer warrants, and juvenile interviews. My experience in Capella, however, since they don't have full-time judges, has involved every aspect of municipal court operations. I attend church here in Irving at the Modern Day Catholic Church, where I am a former member of the parish council, social committee, and I'm currently an usher and member of the parish security detail. The Irving City Council has expressed its confidence in my service for 20 years. I am well-qualified, both legally and judicially, as well as life experience for this position. I'm asking you to give favorable consideration to my application. I have my resume here if any of the council members want to see that.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Graham. That concludes...
Okay, we're going to go a little out of order today. We're going to start with our legislative update. We've got people in from Focus Advocacy. John?
We're going to ask, we have half of our Focus Advocacy lobby team here. We're going to ask them to kind of preview the legislative session from their perspective, talk about some of the issues that we've talked to you about before, often more than once. And then also just want to let you know that the legislative program that we laid out last meeting is in your packet. It's on the agenda for approval tonight. There is a slide that references those priorities in this presentation as well, so we'll just cover all this. One thing we can skip when we get to the regular agenda review. So Snapper Carr, Kurt Sidlitz are here. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Snapper.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Snapper Carr, I'm partner in general counsel with Focus Advocacy. As John mentioned, Kurt Sidlitz, my partner, is here with us today. Our other half is spread throughout. It's a busy time around the Capitol right now. It's a fundraising moratorium kicks in on Saturday. It's some of our favorite time of year, actually. And today, I wanted to give you a quick overview of the items that we see that are going to kind of shape some of the legislative session for next time. But first, give you a quick level set on where we are in the legislative calendar. The session kicks off on January 14, 2025, the 89th legislative session. Prefiling started on November 11, just the week after the election. Prefiling began, and we actually had a record number of bills prefilled, a little over 1,000 bills on that very first day. So in our, in setting up for what we've been hearing about the backlog at Ledge Council with the number of drafts, we expect there to be a record number of bill filing once we finally get to the bill filing deadline, which, if you'll skip down, is March 14. Very pivotal time around the legislative process. It kicks off the activity of the committee hearings that go very heavy from that time period until about the first week of May, and then we kind of start winding down towards the signee die. Currently, to just give you all a little bit of where we fell from the election results, there are 20, the partisan makeup stayed relatively the same, although we did have a big amount of turnover in the House in terms of number of new members. In the Senate, there was one partisan shift. A South Texas seat went from a Democrat member, Senator Morgan LaMontea, to a senator-elect, Adam Hinaosa, who is a Republican. That is a district that stretches from Brownsville to Corpus Christi, and so that made the overall partisan makeup 20 Republicans, 11 Democrats in the Texas Senate presided over, of course...
And should not be subject to the opinions of city management because they are one of the parties that appear regularly before the judge and it signals an appearance of impropriety on the part of the City of Irving, trying to gain an advantage of the other parties standing before the judge. Instead of allowing Judge Adams to review the candidate pool for the third position and make his selection, Baker Tilly solicited the opinion of city management and the city attorney, of who the five final selections were picked. Because Judge Adams' opinion counted at just one vote, the city management's opinions outweighed Judge Adams' opinion. I've sent you an email just recently at noon. It's an email with an affidavit from Judge Adams, who said that had he been able to make the selection instead of the city management, he would have selected the incumbents. I know one of our alternates is getting ready to come up and speak. Again, I'm asking to speak before the executive session. As you are aware, I never got the opportunity to even apply for my job. I was removed without the ability to speak about that position, and we didn't know we weren't selected. Judge Adams and I didn't know we weren't selected until Friday, when the mayor called us in.
Forty-eight seconds.
You have a choice today. You can reestablish the independence of the third branch of government, the independent state judiciary housed in the Irving Municipal Court, or you can continue to allow the Irving Municipal Court to function as another department of the City of Irving and rely on advice coming from the city attorney's office instead from the judges with 63 years of legal experience you've selected to provide you with that service. It is never too late to do the right thing. I'm providing you with all the law and the facts. I sent you an email about 12 o'clock today that has all the law regarding why the city attorney's office and city management should not be involved in our independent relationship. It should be the council and the judges deciding the slate of judges.
Three minutes.
And not a...
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you all, and I'll be available during the executive session to talk to anyone who's willing to talk to me. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, just as a side, since the council can't talk to you, I can. We don't let residents in executive session unless they decide to...
I'm not asking to do that. I was like, I would have been a candidate. I'm talking about the municipal judges' pro...
Thank you. Please be seated.
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Graham, and I reside at 1717 Bryan Street in Irving, Texas. I've been a resident of Irving for almost 40 years, and I reside there with my wife, Valerie, who is a graduate of Nimitz High School and a lifelong Irving resident. I've been an associate judge with the City of Irving for just over 20 years, and I was recently reappointed. I'm here today asking that the council consider my application for the unfilled position in the City of Irving Municipal Court. I'm a graduate of the University of Dallas and Southern Methodist University Dedman School of Law. My legal experience includes representation of several thousand clients in municipal courts, county and district courts of the state of Texas, as well as United States District Courts in the northern and eastern districts. In addition to 20 years of service as a judge here in Irving, I also serve as a judge in the City of Capella Municipal Court and as a Dallas County District Court magistrate. Those are appointed positions. Prior to my appointment as a district court magistrate in Dallas County, I was selected to serve on the Dallas County Grand Jury in 2001 and 2003. The Texas Municipal Court Education Center is tasked with providing continual continuing judicial education for municipal court judges, and has requested on seven occasions that I have been part of the faculty there, include this year where I am presenting a new course on the discovery process. My participation in the judicial process, education process, has been entirely associated with my service as an Irving Municipal Court judge. I am a combat veteran of the Marine Corps with only 20 years of service as a tank and infantry officer. I've served in various positions to include general staff headquarters and conducted over 20 legal investigations.
One minute left.
And served as a summary court martial officer and special court martial jurist. My service in Irving is typically, as a serving judge, is typically involved night and weekend service, signing warrants, serving protective orders, transfer warrants, and juvenile interviews. My experience in Capella, however, since they don't have full-time judges, has involved every aspect of municipal court operations. I attend church here in Irving at the Modern Day Catholic Church, where I am a former member of the parish council, social committee, and I'm currently an usher and member of the parish security detail. The Irving City Council has expressed its confidence in my service for 20 years. I am well-qualified both legally and judicially, as well as life experience for this position. I'm asking you to give favorable consideration to my application. I have my resume here if any of the council members want to see that.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Graham. That concludes...
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go a little out of order today. We're gonna start with our legislative update. We've got people in from Focus Advocacy.
Hi, John Wees, legislative officer. We're gonna ask, we have half of our focused advocacy lobby team here. We're gonna ask them to kind of preview the legislative session from their perspective, talk about some of the issues that were, we've talked to you about before, often more than once. And then also just want to let you know that the legislative program that we laid out last meeting is in your packet. It's on the agenda for approval tonight. There is a slide that references those priorities in this presentation as well, so we'll just cover all this. One thing we can skip when we get to the regular agenda review. So Snapper Carr, Kurt Sidlitz are here. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Snapper.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Snapper Carr, I'm partnering in general counsel with Focus Advocacy. As John mentioned, Kurt Sidlitz, my partner, is here with us today. Our other half is spread throughout. It's a busy time around the Capitol right now. It's a fundraising moratorium kicks in on Saturday. It's some of our favorite time of year, actually. And today, I wanted to give you a quick overview of the items that we see that are gonna kind of shape some of the legislative session for next time. But first, give you a quick level set on where we are in the legislative calendar. The session kicks off on January 14th, 2025, the 89th legislative session. Prefiling started on November the 11th, just the week after the election. Prefiling began, and we actually had a record number of bills prefilled, over a little over 1,000 bills on that very first day. So in our, in setting up for what we've been hearing about the backlog at Ledge Council with the number of drafts, we expect there to be a record number of bill filing once we finally get to the bill filing deadline, which if you'll skip down is March 14th. Very pivotal time around the legislative process. It kicks off the activity of the committee hearings that go very heavy from that time period until about the first week of May. And then we kind of start winding down towards the signee die. Currently, to just give you all a little bit of where we fell from the election results, there are 20, the partisan makeup stayed relatively the same, although we did have a big amount of turnover in the House in terms of number of new members. In the Senate, there was one partisan shift. A South Texas seat went from a Democrat member, Senator Morgan LaMontea, to a senator-elect, Adam Hinaosa, who is a Republican that is a district that stretches from Brownsville to Corpus Christi. And so that made the overall partisan makeup, 20 Republicans, 11 Democrats in the Texas Senate, presided over, of course, by Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick. That is an important threshold to get to the 20 mark that allows some procedural room where the majority Republican Party can make some decisions with, without really the fear of being blocked by a uniform, unified Democrat caucus. So procedurally, it does make some changes there, that one vote swing. There was a net two pickup of Republican members in the Texas House. They gained two seats. They picked up two open seats. The former mayor of Uvalde won Tracy King's seat in his district, who is a retiring Democrat member. And in Oasis County area and Corpus Christi, Representative-elect Denise Villalobos took over a Democrat seat that was held by Abel Herrera. So that was the two switch there. 88 Republicans, 62 Democrats. And just in case y'all have heard about a little thing called the Speaker's race, it takes 76 votes to be the speaker of the Texas House. And that, of course, is what all eyes have been on. These are two recent quotes. This actually was a quote from just yesterday with the governor endorsing the House Republican Caucus process to select. That was David Cook pointed out, former mayor of Mansfield in this area and been a member of the Texas House for a number of sessions. Now, this race that you've read about, and it is primarily now, at least the declared candidates, of course, are Dustin Burrows, the current calendar's chair from Lubbock, and kind of a coalition of 30-some-odd Republicans that have joined with him, and a coalition of Democrats, not certainly the whole caucus of the Democrat caucus, but enough to get him close to that number. Currently, as we said, no one has 76 votes. And there are two Democrat candidates declared as well, Anna Ramos, Representative Anna Ramos, and Representative John Bryant from the North Texas area. It has been a very different type of race. We've seen a lot of speaker races in the time. My partner was a speaker's candidate in his time in the career. These races have changed, and the outside involvement and the politics behind them have changed a lot. There used to be legal restrictions on engaging to spend money to campaign in a speaker's race and some heavy criminal penalties for involvement in that. Those statutes were ruled unconstitutional a number of years ago, and that opened the door for outside politicking that looks very similar to election campaigns that you see during election season and with the same sort of influence being applied to members. And so the ultimately, that race and who becomes the speaker will set the stage for how our House process will be. It's a whole new slate of chairman, a whole new slate of committee makeup. And for entities like cities that go before just about every committee up there, that's a pretty big upheaval. And you kind of get a sense of how certain committee chairmen will handle certain issues and receive them, kind of what they prioritize. All that gets changed. And so you have, we all, as local governments, start figuring out how that, those changes are gonna impact certain issues, whether it be land development, taxes, public safety, going down the list. It will affect those debates. For y'all's delegation, very capable delegation, Senator Tan Parker, you'll see his, we've listed the committee chair, or committee makeup service that they have currently. That can change in the Senate, too, but it stays a little more static, and they just generally do minor amendments to their committee service makeup, whereas in the House, it will be a complete change altogether. Good committees, I would note that Senator Tan Parker is the Senate Chair or the Vice Chair of the Sunset Commission, which isn't an actual legislative committee, but one that deals with all of the state agencies and has a big role, takes on a lot of the big items and agencies that get under review. And another very important committee is his service on the Local Government Committee, which is in the Senate, is chaired by Senator Paul Betancourt. It's where a number of our very important local-type legislation goes, whether that be land use items, affordable housing measures, building sort of related issues, a whole host of city-related items that go through local government. So it's very important, at least for the issues that we deal with. And I would note, Senator Johnson, although Vice Chair of Jerris Prudence, also serves on the Business and Commerce Committee, which is another one that a lot of our right-of-way and franchise fee issues, utility-related issues go through. And then the Water Ag and Rural Affairs, which is really very close to the Natural Resources Committee. It deals with water policy primarily for the state. And we'll say this several times in the presentation, this could shape up to be a pretty big water session because the chair of that committee, Senator Charles Perry, is proposing a $5 billion water infrastructure plan. And so Senator Johnson is well-positioned to kind of have a good role in those discussions and how that water supply and infrastructure bill looks. Your House delegation, veteran members, with the exception of your new repelect, Cassandra Hernandez, who is taking HD 115, Julie Johnson's former seat. We don't have the committee makeup membership for them now because, like we said, we know we will have a new speaker. Dade Phelan will not be the new speaker, and that will precipitate having a whole host of committee changes. We already have 11 vacancies with regards to committee chairs, even if we hadn't had a speaker's change that we're seeing now. And so we will kind of to be determined how their committee makeup will be going into next session. Bill statistics, you've seen this before. This is just to reiterate, cities will once again be affected by the most pieces of legislation out of any entity affected by the legislature without a close second. We expect that we will exceed that 8,345 bills. It was a record number of filings from the prior sessions, and we even look that it could get close to 9,000 pieces of legislation that are filed. We're currently only just over 2,000, but we are told that there are 8,000 pieces of legislation that have been requested for drafting by the Texas Legislative Council. And so if all of those, not all of them, will get filed, then we're pushing, of course, our filing record again. Also would note that the passage rate of bills was at a historic low, and part of that is because of the congestion that is caused by this inability to process this many bills in a shortened session. Some of the core issues, these are, would look similar to some of the core issues that were discussed ahead of last session as well, certainly with some new policy discussions behind them. And this is certainly a good news, and it's good news for local governments generally when the state is operating with a surplus. It's not the tendency to look towards your local revenues for potential use or to have local governments raising revenues for the state in some manner when we have a budget surplus. And we're gonna have $20 billion to $30 billion surplus. In addition to that amount of money, there was $10 billion in federal funds that were unexpended last session. So we'll have a significant amount of revenues, lots of programs that are being asked to be fully funded, and certainly programs that local governments take full advantage of, whether that's in the transportation realm. Skip down to that bottom prong about new water infrastructure and supply funds to complement the funds that are already at the Texas Water Development Board. Those all get full funding. Some of that budget surplus will be spent on that second item, state property tax relief, continuation of that effort from last session. It already talks about expansion of the state-funded homestead exemption on the school side, a continued buy-down of the M&amp;O rate on the school side that the state's responsible for. That totals into the multitudes of billions for any of those proposals. Some would require additional constitutional amendment, like we had last session, for that relief. But local governments will find themselves, even with the state, when they're talking about the school system, in that debate, whether that's looking at the no-new-revenue formulas, some of the exemptions that are there, that are in place, that were a part of that original SB 2 legislation. All of that will kind of be back on the table, and so we expect that we will have evaluation to do about the effects of some of this and what those could look like. My partner has been working extensively in the electric grid and in the electric system area. Kurt, I didn't know if you wanted to mention anything about some of these activities.
I'll just take a minute if that's okay. One, thank y'all for allowing us to come up here and visit with you today about what's about to happen to all of us. The electric grid reliability, I just wanted to mention from a city perspective, the main focus since Winter Storm Yuri has been on reliability of the system. And nobody likes outages, and people's expectations are very high and very short with outages. So they spent a lot of money on the resiliency, building up, hardening of the distribution systems, that's the system that supplies it to your house, as well as expanding the transmission. One of the things is, we mentioned our friends at CenterPoint here during Hurricane Burl and actually during the straight wind problem that they had down there earlier. Communications was a huge deal, or the lack thereof. And I know that the transmission and distribution companies encore here in our area are making extra efforts to be able to communicate to citizens, customers, et cetera, on outages and how to go forward. So I don't know, Chris, if they've been in contact with y'all lately, but it's certainly getting everybody's attention, that everybody wants to know outages and outage trackers and on my telephone, I need to know that. So that's one of the big things. And when we're talking billions, might as well mention expanding the Texas Energy Fund. That was the deal that everybody voted on to allow the state, first time ever, pretty much, to loan private industry $5 billion to build new generation. And that passed, and those loans are being processed as we speak, and it's in an effort to add about 10,000 megawatts to the grid. They owe another $5 billion on it, and there are some members that say, I'm not quite sure we did real well on the first five, so I'm not sure about the next five. But I think that's probably gonna be part of that $20 to $30 billion that Snapper mentioned. So, but the communications efforts, and here it's December the 12th, the outlook is that we could have some issues this winter, and that's just because of the makeup of the power sources that we have right now. So anyway, just wanted to expand on communications, Snapper.
That, the issue of electric grid, and we visited with the Chair of BNC, Senator Charles Schwartner, this past week, is gonna continue to occupy a great deal of time. And as Kurt said, it's very much a significant money issue and a health and safety issue as it relates to reliability of the grid, and so continued to be a very big part. You'll note the last one here, affordable housing and available housing, multitude of interim hearings and a real focus by the House about the shortage of residential housing stock. The comptroller came out with a report that we needed to build 300 and something thousand rooftops to catch up, to get to a good market position for availability of residential housing. And so a continuation from last session is really to look at our development processes locally and what that means. And there was a lot of bills aimed at mandating certain minimum lot sizes, doing away with zoning provisions at different ways, mandating accessory dwelling units. Some of those bills have been filed again already. We expect many more to be filed before it's all said and done. And the Texas Association of Builders have pushed during the interim that package that they believe that there is more ability to improve housing affordability by restricting local government's authorities and shortening certain timelines, like shot clock provisions on permit review and other areas. City issues that we, and we're not gonna cover all of these, but this will give you a good understanding. A lot of these are things, again, that you will recognize as from past sessions or several sessions, as they're ongoing issues, some that have been going on for a number of years. Continued discussion just about preemption as a whole. The super-preemption bill passed. Of course, that bill has been, since been deemed, I would note that was House Bill 2127 by Dustin Burrows, one of the speaker candidates, that has had a lot of discussion. It's never really been fully implemented because of the litigation. They pretty much stopped it right out of the tracks from being implemented or from any private entities utilizing that bill to this point. And I think that we will see amendments to that to try to address some of the things that have been exposed in the litigation about its constitutionality. Any areas where cities regulate a commercial activity or deal with state license holders are starting to get a much bigger review, and it's been this trend to reduce regulatory licensure in the state of Texas as a whole. And so the state is looking at letting go of some occupational licenses and some other areas and not having that. And as part of that, they don't want local governments to step in, if you will. And so there's this big discussion. Part of preemption that we've included here is what we've labeled community censorship. That's also referred to by some as bans on taxpayer funding lobbying. But there have been proposals and already proposals that have been filed that would prohibit membership in trade groups such as TML and others. Texas Association of City Attorneys, TechFOE, and others that y'all are a part of would prohibit that, would prohibit our ability to contract with you all as consultants or for you to maintain a position similar to your intergovernmental relations position. And they run the gamut. That's not all in one bill, but there are several that have been filed that look at that. And then there are some that are simply transparency bills that would add some layers of transparency that candidly, I think you all already operate well within, that have been discussed. And so that topic and your ability to engage with the legislature, to take a position on certain things, will be in debate. I think the biggest area that we will have, what we will see the most of, number of bills and probably significant areas, is in the land use realm. We always have a lot. There's always trade groups like the builders and developer groups that push an agenda there, but this time it is more tied to some of these themes of preemption and what level of regulatory authority should local governments maintain. Some of this will pit older neighborhoods, I think, if you follow some of the debates that have occurred against new development discussions, and that's certainly how it came about last time. And so you will see a number of these. Wanted to highlight the housing finance corp reform. We'll get to that as one of y'all's items that you're looking at, but the Local Government Committee has looked at this and I think is very much in line with where y'all are wanting to pursue on some proactive legislation. Debt and kind of management of your financial budget, there have been bills in the last two sessions that restricted or limited the use of certificates of obligation. We're gonna see a continuation of that to maybe even eliminate a few more uses that are specific or to put... are specific or to put greater restrictions on the use of COs in particular. But, and there's been a big, and this bill's already filed, that would not allow any debt elections to occur other than in November. So in essence, there would be no May uniform election date for those. And that will be a significant discussion. Spoke with the city manager about this previously. One area, if you look down to the bottom of this taxes and fees piece, is really a review of anything that would allow a local government or a city to generate revenue is getting put under a microscope. And there have been bills that have been proposed that would reduce these or have impact fees. We know without a doubt, for example, that the building community is seeking a proactive change that would limit those from their status quo. Every session, there is a right-of-way bill. We know that there will be additional bills. I would note, and some good news on franchise fee, that we did just recently get a court decision on Senate Bill 1152, which was a significant bill that eliminated millions of dollars statewide in cable franchising fees a couple of sessions ago. Took a couple of years to get to it, but that bill was ruled unconstitutional by the appeals court and fully, and that it violated the public gift statute, that we gave away public land without just compensation. And so it was a very good decision that came out with a coalition of cities that are a part of that. And I believe Irving's part of that coalition as well. Election reform, a lot of discussion. I know y'all have had it here in DFW area about ballot items that get placed on and the legality of potential enforcement of those items that are approved by voters. There's been a multitude of bills that are filed and we know some that are coming that would either make local governments submit ballot language to the Secretary of State or Attorney General's Office for approval. And there's also provisions that would allow someone to appeal to the Attorney General's Office to get a ruling on whether or not a proposed ballot item was legal under state and constitutional law prior to it being allowed to stand at an election. So we're going to see a lot of that. There will be bills filed that would require designation of partisan elections for local elections that has been filed in the past. And that certainly will be a debate that we know will happen again. Already mentioned a few of these, certainly the public safety debates, there's always a large number of issues, kind of back to that notion of cities have more issues than anyone else, period, at the Capitol. And certainly in the public safety realm, we will see a number of significant proposals and probably some statewide legislation on dealing with areas that have prolonged officer shortages as well as being discussed. Couple of long-time items that I think we have a better-than-average shot at seeing happen this time is the move from newspaper publication to online notice publication authority, which I would note state agencies have had for, I think, about 15 years now. And so hopefully, local governments will see some of that. There will be proposals that have already been filed that would do that. Discussion about some larger open government bills that would likely shorten timelines for compliance with certain open government requirements that are there. As you can see, a number of others, I did already mention this water supply and infrastructure fund, but the Senator Perry plan that is being discussed not only has a component to create significant funding for new water supply, and we're short about, by the Water Development Board's projections, 10 million acre feet is what we're kind of behind in our cycle on. And so this is intended to catch up on that, but it's also would create a state-owned pipeline system that would be able to move water from different regions of the state. It'll be interesting to see how that's received. In the past, proposals like that have not been received well. But we currently, with the drought conditions that exist in some parts of the state, there seems to be a greater appetite towards looking to that. That would allow water, say, from D-South facilities to be moved, water from East Texas to North Texas and so forth. So a big proposal and ambitious proposal that we expect will get a lot of attention. Moving to the last part of the presentation, as John said, I know that y'all have been briefed on these and will ultimately have your vote on. These are the priorities, proactive priority areas that you all have in your agenda. I would note the issue on the HFC changes, the Housing Finance Corporation changes, is one that y'all are participating, kind of leading a coalition of cities statewide that have been impacted by that. It was a very good article in the Houston Chronicle today about the problems with this loophole that exists and the impact that it's having on local government's tax bases. We've had very good feedback from Senator Paul Bettencourt where this bill would go. Senator Tan Parker is on that committee and they're going to be working together to help hopefully close the HFC loopholes on this area. Certainly, the other items that y'all have been well aware of, and again, kind of being instrumental in efforts to retain local land use and development authority is going to be pretty front and center. And so with that, certainly, open, these are the other policy areas, as y'all might see, that are lined up with the main areas that the cities will be confronted with during the session. They line up nicely with what we know to be the major areas. And with that, I would say we're open for any questions or comments.
Questions, comments? Al?
Thank you, as always, comprehensive. Thank you for being up here with us. I got a couple of areas that we're focused here. And one of them is, of course, the, on the energy reform as it relates to the whole ERCOT and the impact on the data centers that are coming in. And then you have the Encore, you know, applications, and that really, it puts us in a tough position here. Do you see any legislation coming up on that or has there been any filed? And then I've got a couple others.
Yes, sir. That's been well discussed and I think it'll be the, an issue that they're going to look at. They've had some interim studies and on large loads, ERCOT's looked at interconnecting large loads. And mainly it's driven, a lot of folks say, well, the crypto guys are here, but it's really the AI guys that are backed by the big guys with big money. And what they want and what differentiates it is they want 24/7 power, whereas the Bitcoins can turn it on and off and they frankly arbitrage, which is good and it helps the market. But that's going to be a big issue. I think it's pretty public, but there's like about 83,000 megawatts of interconnection requests in Encore, and Encore is 48% of ERCOT. So think about that. That's a lot. ERCOT came out and said they're going to need 150,000 megawatts by 2030. Most people don't think they're going to get there, that some of these guys will not come. And that's another issue that's coming up. If you bring a large load, the legislature is actually considering, bring your own generation, which will be a really interesting debate as we come, because we've always welcomed everyone. We've always said, yeah, we'll provide electricity to you if you come here. So you're right on.
Great, thanks Curtis. The other one that we're looking at, I thought I heard there were some filings on card clubs and where that may be moving or not.
Yep, I'm happy to.
You want to take the chair? He's going to deal you that one.
Boom. There are some land use issues that would affect, although I don't think the actual poker room or card rooms, overall legislation has been filed. In reality, I think we're going to see bills on, what I would say, both sides of that issue. There are some members that want to greatly restrict the ability of them to operate. And then there's also a segment of members that I think are going to propose kind of what I'd call a more uniform regulatory scheme, make it a little more uniform statewide and maybe clear up some issues and definitions. So 100%, there will be a debate, a little bit of a division on, I think, the direction that could go. And that's one of those issues where the chairman, like we said, that gets appointed to the committee in the House that oversees that could play a pretty big role in the direction. We don't necessarily know who that is. So, but they could be on either side of that debate and it could greatly affect that discussion.
Yeah, and that's been some areas that we've actually had to deal with.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, we're trying to decide as we go forward with how we regulate, number one. And number two, as part of that, is it public or private use? And that's really where the, I think is where it's going to come at. So that's one we're looking at or we're having to deal with as well. So.
Absolutely. And Councilman, I think some will be straight-up bills that want to discuss card and poker rooms. And then some of the land use discussion, just on land use authority and zoning authority and building code enforcement, other things that might come up could, although not directed at that debate, affect it. And so there's kind of two areas that I think are relevant, land use authority and then the poker room-specific bills as well.
And that's my third item that we're dealing with as well. And that's the whole area that not only land use, but comprehensive plans, how do we zone? How do we not? I mean, so we're right in the middle of also. So those are the three that, at least that here, we've got others, but I think the council will agree, those are the three that are at least on upper my mind at this point.
Yes, sir.
So look forward to getting with you guys down there.
Likewise, thank you.
Brad. Yeah, thank you, you and Kurt for coming back. It's always informative. Now, you may have mentioned this, but do we have an idea of when we'll get a resolution on the Speaker?
Well, there was hope that, from, I think, members of the legislature and certainly those of us around it, but it was a pretty action-filled Saturday. That was when the GOP caucus meeting took place all day and their purpose was to endorse a candidate, thought that there might be some resolution. Speaker Phelan had already announced by that point that he was not going to continue his bid to retain that role, but it didn't get resolved. And so it's very likely that it will not be resolved. And they elect the Speaker the first day of session. The Secretary of State presides as the presiding officer over the House. So that's Senator Jane, former Senator Jane Nelson, that will preside over and they will take the vote there on the floor. And we may have reports closer to that time after the new year, but it's pretty much looks like it's going to be an open race, if you will, until that time.
So it kind of makes it difficult, I guess, because you've got pretty two different philosophies and who would be chairs?
Yes.
To see where all this is going at this point.
Certainly in the House. That's why I think, you know, you will see more so this session than any other session. We're not alone in this. If you have proactive items, you're doing a lot of discussion with Senate members because you know generally where they're going to be and you generally know what the structure of the Senate is going to be. But yes, it makes it difficult because certainly whoever becomes the makeup or chair of a committee can have a totally different perspective on how they're going to handle a particular topic or whether it'll be a priority or not. I think one thing we will see, even with a new Speaker, is there has been a commitment to, as they say, quote, "get to work sooner." By Constitution, the first 60 days of the 140 days of the legislative session, you can't hear or take action on a bill. That's an old visage from, it used to take a long time to get from El Paso to Austin. And they didn't want people taking a lot of work in front. And so that literally has been in that restriction. And so unless something is designated, an emergency item by the governor, which I can pretty much tell you, some budget items, vouchers and border security-related issues will be deemed emergency items, maybe an item or two more, but those items will and they'll go to work on those once they're organized. You know, the House isn't organized, they don't have committees named, but everyone has said they would like to get work started more closer to the end of January. So within a couple of weeks, getting some of that done. And I do think we'll see them, they can hold hearings on agencies and others, but yes, it greatly affects the outcome of the legislation and the process.
Yeah, I think that it's up to them, but it'd be helpful to them, I think, to get moving on things. I think we're, we continue to, obviously you've got a good list and a good feeling of what our priorities are. I think DART is a serious priority for a lot of cities. We had a lot of discussion, RTC about that. And it appears unless we reach some sort of settlement or agreement, that RTC won't be opposing legislation. They're not in favor of it certainly, but my understanding is that in 40 years or whatever, that legislation has never really been touched.
Not had a wholesale reform of it, certainly.
And again, I would struggle, like if we were trying to get that legislation through today, brand new, no caps, no nothing, I don't think it would have a chance of anything. So.
Well, and kind of to the point we were just discussing in your prior question, you know, your Senate delegation is going to be heavily involved in that. Senator Parker and Senator Johnson will both be heavily involved in that discussion. And I do think some of these discussions will originate earlier in the Senate, just because, again, they can start holding hearings on issues almost immediately because they haven't had much change and it's the same presiding officer and the lieutenant governor. And so I expect we will probably see some of that start in the Senate first.
And on way of property tax, of course, I always have my ideas. And we've had residents complain, well, there's no real reform because it just goes up X percent. And I continue to echo, again, I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but the whole idea, the national election you saw proposed, oh, well, we'll do a phantom tax on capital gains that you don't actually get. But that's exactly how we do our property tax system in Texas. You know, I bought my house, we all bought houses, it rides up and you're paying a phantom tax. And so I think if they really wanted to do some reform, they could eliminate a lot of central appraisal districts by knowing what you purchased a homestead for and then they set a reasonable percentage that goes up. And then we here, all around the table at your counties, at your hospital districts, at your community colleges, then we really have to do a meaningful view of our tax rate. And to me, that would be way more meaningful. And so, because I don't think, it sure doesn't feel like, to me at least, that we've had any kind of meaningful property tax relief or reform with all the proclaiming victory every two years. And I appreciate the effort, but it just hasn't made a difference. And so, you know, anything we can do to help on that or bring light to that? And I think we've got a very good slate. I'm going to be down there, I haven't let y'all or John know yet, but I'll be down there doing double duty for family loss section. So I'll let y'all know when I'm down there.
Perfect.
You'd like to use me for anything or whatever, I'm happy to do it, but.
There'll be no shortage of opportunities.
Yeah, thank you. Well, and that's the one thing that's, I could just say is a little frustrating, is we're originally told, well, we really want to talk to you, we don't want to talk to your lobbyists. So then when we go, I mean, it's very hard for me to even get an audience because they're so busy and it's very compressed and it just seems chaotic down there. You know, I know they have busy schedules and I'm happy to go talk to them, you know, and give them our point of view and perspective because, once again, we're all elected by the same people who, we hear what they want and they still come to us. Like you mentioned power. So in my neighborhood, we're having power outages and they're all calling me. I'm like, I would love to be in charge of Encore and be able to turn power on and off, but I'm not. But they still come to us. And so, you know, I think we can share some insight with them, maybe that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just add that, you know, we talk about the homestead that they did for the schools. They do it differently than they, than we do. They give it an amount. And one of the things that I would like to see is that they would give us the authority to do more than the 25%, because then we could, we could work that number. It's one of the few things that we really don't have any, when it comes to property tax, that all we can do is get to the 25%, where with other things, like businesses, we could 100% abate the taxes. So it's really, it hamstrings what we can do for the single-family homeowners in the area. So I know that it's always difficult, because even when I talked to our representative about it, she said, well, we gave, we raised the homestead exemption. Well, they raised it for the schools, not for the city, so I'd like to make sure that they take that into consideration. The other thing is, I agree with Brad on this power. I mean, in the last week, I've been without power at the House four times. Now, it's only for like 15, 20 minutes, but then my sprinkler goes off, my pool pump quits, my oven's beeping, my alarm's not in the right mode for me to get out of bed the next morning, and it's, every day it's a reset. And so something's wrong, and it's not even cold. And so I think we've got to start looking at this thing from a different perspective on how we, how we deal with it. I mean, it's, even when we see the Encore rep, it's, she goes, well, it's a good day if the power's on. And I mean, it's gotten to be a joke, because there's a lot of days that the power isn't on. And we're trying to figure out, do we move forward with that warehouses? Do we move forward with all this, these other things? And they're going to be sucking power like crazy. And at what point do we have to start worrying about our residents making sure that they have the power that they need in their home? So I think it's a real legitimate concern that kind of gets overlooked, because, you know, the power goes out for five or 10 minutes, and Brad's right, all the neighbors start calling. I got one guy at 6:35 that's had his power out 19 times in less than 12 months. And it goes out usually about 8:30, 9 o'clock at night, when he's trying to, he's right in the heat of his restaurant, and then he doesn't have the ability to run the cash register, you know, everything's on a machine now, it's all got to be handwritten out, and, you know, but it's just, it just goes on and on and on. So I mean, I don't have any problem, I think all of us around this table could probably sit down with him and say, look, this is what's happening in my neighborhood, and, or this is what's happening in our industrial area, or this other area. So I think it's, you know, I don't know if we've really addressed the issue. I think all we've done is bought us time until we get to the next big, which tells us whether we didn't address the issue. But the little things just don't seem to get the attention. It's like, well, it's only our neighborhood, or I'll get a call from, and I'll follow up with Chris, or with Orlando, and they say, well, we've got 19,000 that are out, but now we're down to 16,000. And, you know, and that's a regular occurrence. It's not something that happens just once in a while. So as you get into that, Curtis, I mean, we've got to figure out how to provide quality. Now, I don't know if that's because, over the years, because they've just built so fast that they haven't gone back and replaced the stuff that's blowing up because it's old and it's overused, or we, or we, you know, I always think about this, when we plan things, sometimes we're spending a lot of money because we didn't have adequate-sized water lines and sewer lines and stuff because we overbuilt, and I'm thinking that's probably the same problem they've got, because we've overbuilt. And I can tell you, if they go ahead with some of this, that they're trying to take our zoning abilities away and allowing ADUs in the backyards and things of that nature, not only are we going to have water and sewer, they're going to have electrical.
Right.
So they're not thinking about the repercussions of moving forward and doing these type of things. Nobody likes their commode not to flush, and nobody likes to turn on the water and it, and it just trickles out. And nobody likes to go home at night and to a cold house because they haven't had electricity. So I think that they need to, I don't know how, I talk to you like you're going to, you're the ones that are doing it, but the reality of it is, we've got to get across to them at some level, that to continue to build out these areas where we've already been built out is just going to tax our infrastructure, and then with a cap, you know, we've been under this cap, and we can tell you today that we started out with $800 million with the road repairs, just to keep us at a C. And we've been at that for six years, making good progress, but we probably, if we had it done again, we should probably have 850 million today after we've spent 150 million. So, but when you've got caps, you can't do those type of things. But the more people you bring in, the more cars you bring in, the more water that's needed, the more sewer it's needed, by allowing 1,400 square-foot lots to be built on and things of that nature, you're just going to tax this infrastructure even more. So I think somewhere, there's got to be something that gets the point across, that we're not against doing dense development, but it's got to be done with the proper infrastructure. You can't go back in an old neighborhood that's got clay tile and things of that nature and start doing this type of thing, or you're going to be blowing things out of the ground. So those are the two things I would say that, really, they need to understand our limited infrastructure in our existing areas, but if in the future they want smaller homes and things of that nature, we can plan for that and have the proper-sized things in the ground. And, but I think that's what's really happening with our power, is we've overbuilt and they've under, it's not that they've done anything wrong, it's just that they haven't got caught up with what we've done, or their advancement of the power that's available to be out there. But it's not even brownouts. I mean, brownouts you can live with, because most of the time, your stuff doesn't go crazy on you. But when you shut it completely off, you're rescheduling everything.
Yeah, they've framed the issue in managing Texas's growth, so they're looking at all of those things. Any solutions? One, the legislature did pass, in their defense, a bill last session asking all of the utilities, like CenterPoint, Encore, AEP, et cetera, to file system resiliency plans. And Encore's is like a $3 billion investment in their system. CenterPoint's was $2 billion, it's not been approved yet. So they're looking to do significance. But I think what.
But does it work?
What they need.
Good enough.
What they need is feedback and input from folks like y'all and cities, because cities historically have taken positions on a lot of the bills, and Tech Foodie does a really nice job. But I don't think our voices really get heard in that debate where there's a lot of money. I mean, frankly, there's just a lot of money in that debate. And the one folks that we haven't looked out for are the consumers.
Right.
We take care of the generators, we take care of the TDU guys, but we don't take care of the consumers and empower them and the customers with some type of tools to react to these outages.
So we each get our bill each month.
That you do.
And I never see any reduction for loss of power. Funny how that works, isn't it?
Mayor, there was, and Kurt can comment on this, because, one, you're right, and we mentioned, we believe this is going to be, just to give a little context, Kurt said there was 83,000 megawatts request for new interconnect. That's new interconnect. Our current ERCOT gridwide, at peak, is about 85, 86, for the whole system right now, and that's for one utility that has 40% of the market, and they have something equal to our entire, already requested in the queue. So to your point about the growth and the keeping up, almost more so than winter storm Yuri, the effect that CenterPoint and Hurricane Burl had and the failure there because of 2 million people without power and the interim hearing that occurred with that, one thing that occurred was there were a lot of county judges and mayors and local governments that were heard on that day at that hearing, and it left an impression of, they have a role to play in this. I think we have some goodwill that we haven't had before, but that, that experience caught the attention, I think, because they did think we had already, because of our prior with Yuri, managed it, and they're not. And so I do think there is, to Kurt's point, a very big role for us to express this.
And I think we can, we can get with Encore and get a record of the outages that we've had over the last 12 months, and we'd be more than happy to present those to them. I'm sure they're not going to be happy to give them to us, but they're, it, we're at a point where we have businesses that are thinking of moving to different places because they can't afford, when, during their dinner hour, not have, have power. And so it's a legitimate deal for a lot of our businesses, so. But I know you guys do a great job, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything we can do to help you get these points across, we'll be more than happy to do it.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
So just, you have a resolution approving the legislative program on your agenda this evening. This is the main page. You've got the whole program as we outlined it last month. So with that, I think we're finally done.
Thanks, John. The next thing we're going to take out of order is the animal care campus expansion and project. We have people that are here to hear that, so we'll make sure that we'll get them back on their, back on track.
I am Dee Johnson, the manager of the Animal Service Campus. I'm going to give you a pretty high-level overview just of our operations and our partnership, and then pass it, pass it on to Michael in chief. So just an introduction to the Irving Animal Services. We have a partnership with the DFW Main Society, and we have worked together for 17 years to provide safe and loving environments for animals in need. Our partnership does focus on sheltering, rehabilitating, finding homes, and definitely rescues for abandoned and stray animals. The collaboration is guided by a 20-year contract and is set to expire in December of 2027. Our goal, as always, is to improve animal welfare, increase adoptions, and reduce any of our shelter overcrowding, and ultimately euthanasia. You know, we definitely do not want to have to do that. So obviously, we are located here in Irving, Texas. We do provide temporary homes to lost, abandoned owners, surrenders, and stray animals. Our basic operations include intake, housing, rescue, rabies control, and also different adoption and enrichment programs. Our shelter is committed to offering quality medical care, rehabilitation, and enrichment. To highlight on medical care, we are expanding our veterinary clinic, so we can provide more, more operations and different introductions and things for animals that are already in the shelter without having to contract out. Our shelter is also a resource for the community. We offer TCAP low-cost vaccines, microchips about quarterly throughout the year, and different low-cost pet recovery systems and educational programs to Irving residents. This is just an overview of our current intake. So just this past, since January of this year, we have taken in 6,170 animals, 1,532 of those being owner surrenders. Something I do like to highlight right here is that we only had 36 adoptions returned, and I do think that is just due to us making sure that we are hiring the right people and putting them in the correct spaces to make sure that they are making those partnerships with different rescues and different outreach people, to ensure that proper adoption counseling is happening when the Irving resident or any resident is coming in to get to know an animal. So the more that person, the more that employee dedicates time to get to know that adopter, the less likely it is that they're going to bring that animal back, because they're getting to know the breed, the species, the type of exercise and everything that it needs. One thing I do want to highlight that's not on here is that this is our intake, but our outcome is pretty awesome, pretty positive, especially this year. We had 3,515 positive outcomes, 1,047 of those were adoptions, and 1,800 were transfers to different rescue partnerships that we have built just in this past year and a half. So overall, about 67% of our outcomes have been positive life outcomes, where we did not have to euthanize animals. Just a high level of DFW Main Society, they are a nonprofit organization that is paid to operate within the Irving Animal Service Shelter. They do occupy 55 square feet of space, and they also play a role in rescue and adoption. Currently, they pull animals mainly from the Irving Animal Shelter, and they provide, they prepare them for adoption, and they also transfer animals to other rescues or foster programs for additional care. Their partnership with Irving is definitely aimed to alleviate overcrowding at the shelter and increase the chance for that animal to find a forever home and reduce, reduce the need for us to have to euthanize. Our Irving team, which I am really proud of, especially in this past year and a half, we've hired on some really amazing people who are dedicated to just making sure that the animals have what they need, the care that they need, and the exercise. We have 22 employees currently. One person, she is an animal care technician, but she definitely focuses on making rescue partnerships. She's only been with us for about two months, and she's already found eight new rescues that have pulled from us, and will also fly animals to Connecticut, Michigan, and different states. So that way, even if it doesn't work out in an adoption, it's not getting returned to our shelter, which is very impactful. This team also works together to ensure the health and safety and well-being of every animal in our care. We definitely provide daily cleaning, medical treatment, behavioral monitoring, and we have different vets that are contracted through RSVP that come in and do walkthroughs of our animals to make sure that if they need any medication or any type of surgery, that they take care of that. Our animal care requirements, we do have 220 kennels, some of them are pop-up kennels in our Sallyport if we ever get to overcrowding. Just an overview of what an animal care technician does have to do. It takes about 13 minutes to clean a kennel, and on average, we have about five animal care technicians, because we do have to spread out the eight that we have, so people do get off days. But it does take about 9.6 hours of cleaning per person. This does not include the time that they go out and they do enrichment and throw a ball, or give a dog a Kong, or something like that, or the time it takes to complete a vaccine whenever an animal comes in, or take its photo, or get its weight. This is just basic animal care of cleaning, walking, and scooping. Just looking to the future, both organizations, DFW and Irving, plan to, we plan to enhance animal welfare through expanding community outreach programs, increase adoption and rescue opportunities, and also furthering our medical and behavioral programs, as well as exploring ways to improve shelter capacity and efficiency. Our goal, as always, is to build success, improve animal care, increase adoptions and rescue transfers, and reduce the number of animals that have to be euthanized, especially unnecessarily or due to lack of space. DFW Main Society has requested a meeting with the city to discuss the renewal, as I previously mentioned, that is upcoming in 2027.
Michael Buckler, CIP. I'm going to talk about the building itself and the planned improvements. So in 2010, the building was constructed, 26,000 square foot of animal care campus facility. And in 2021, passed a bond designated for the public improvements of the facility. So with that in mind, an architect was selected in August of '23, all with the needs to expand and increase kennel space, quarantine space, isolation unit space, additional exterior dog runs, and improve the entirety of the HVAC system for the facility. After the design was done, we solicited for beds, received them in June of this year, and awarded the contract to our contractor in late August of 2024. So the key components of the new project, we're adding just over 6,000 square feet of new constructed space and just over 6,000 square feet of renovations to the existing facility. The additional new square footage is to have new, larger dog kennel spaces, a new state-of-the-art clinical facility that Dee had mentioned, including surgery, radiology, ICU, and exam rooms. And the renovation space, after we have created the new clinical facility, will repurpose the current clinical spaces, enlarge the dog and cat transfer or recovery spaces, and remodel the reception area. We anticipated starting the project in September of 2024 and it being 11 months long to complete. It's phased in four phases currently, and the funding is $5 million for all the construction. That being said, we started in late November, actual start late November, and it's now about 11, 11 and 1/2 months, so we expect to be done in November of 2025. And with the construction starting in Phase 1, there is, and we've probably seen this before, but do I got the little dot? Yep. So this is the new building on this side. This is a completely new building on this side, and the renovation to the reception area, the old clinical space, and this is the new clinical space. We'll do the public intake and surrender. We're going to upgrade that one a little bit as well. That being said, with the phasing being Phase 1 that we're in now, starting late November, we haven't got a lot done, but what we have done has been impactful. Done a lot of demo mobilization, fencing, getting ready for the structure for the new buildings. It's not just the footprint of the buildings themselves that are in red, but we have to go a little bit beyond that for structural support, utility connections and whatnot. So it has impacted the day-to-day life at the animal care facility. So that being said, Assistant Chief Hall is going to step up and talk about some timeline things that we've done just here in the past two weeks to make sure that our communication and we're working together with the Humane Society.
Hello, everyone. Sam Hall, Assistant Chief. This is Michael's schedule. This is the schedule. It's kind of small. I don't think you'll be able to read it, but it shows the dates of when this was supposed to originate and then end. Just give you a brief timeline of where we started with all this, with our communication with DFW Humane Society. October 15th, we'd scheduled the first meeting. It got delayed until September or until November 7th. However, Dee was able to speak with them at their at the DFW board meeting on October 16th and presented them a high-level plan of the renovations. November 7th, though, we reviewed all the drawings with DFW board members and the architects for the project so they could see the phased schedule and the overall plans. On November 11th, the phased building plan, we provided that with them and clarified the phases of two and four would have the greatest impact. Those are where we have to knock out a wall, and then the fourth will be just cleaning up the areas that they work in now. November 15th, shared the construction schedule with them. On the November 22nd, we delivered the more detailed schematic of the construction plan. On the 26th, Phase 1 began. When that happened, it removed DFW Humane Society's dog yard. They came in, they were kind of surprised by that. They didn't have the information, so they're a bit upset by that, and rightly so. I didn't have the information to give them, or I definitely would have. That day, we also gave formal notice for the Phase 2 and 4 of the construction, which is scheduled for estimated March in June of next year. On the 4th, we addressed concerns about Phase 1 demolition that happened next near the large dog kennels. CIP provided walkways and bridges and mulch for the safety of the employees using those areas. We established daily communication meetings between the construction foreman and both parties. I think that's essential to continue and as as we go forward is Russell's the foreman out there, and he can meet with Dee and from our side, and Danielle from the DFW side, and let them know what's going on day-to-day so there's no confusion on on what will be taking place. On December 5th, we did a walkthrough with both parties and the city manager to address any additional concerns. CIP agreed to include the DFW manager in our operations meetings, and that's already occurred. The city offered to cover the dog food costs during construction due to the operational inefficiencies or inconveniences. And December 9th, we delivered the full working blueprints and conducted a design walkthrough with Michael and DFW so they could see exactly the the details of what will be impacted. The notes that of their concerns were the front desk locations, some sink removals in isolation rooms, walkway placements in the play yard locations, which I think those are all things we're going to be able to get together on and and work through. Addressing concerns, actions and collaboration going forward, addressing concerns, reassigned yards, and ensured safe access during construction, provided walkway, bridges, mulch, and safety measures, offered city-funded dog food to offset disruption, enhanced the communication with daily meetings with construction foremen and managers, included DFW in the operational discussions. Will be delivering regular updates on project phases and actively resolve design concerns raised by DFW, which will include those blueprints we just walked through and those those concerns they had. So we need to go through those and and get that corrected, adjust any timelines and and designs to mitigate any impact on either side, maintain open communication and monitor ongoing phases, and overall, just reinforce our commitment to a successful shelter expansion. It's a it's a great area, and it's going to be much better soon as we get it completed. So we're looking forward to that. With that, you have any questions?
Hello, all. My name is Derek Miller. I'm the chief of police. Hi, Derek. I just wanted to add that what we need to say plainly was this construction project did not start as we wished it would have. Being overall responsible for it, as soon as we found out some of the inefficiencies, we worked extremely hard to try to correct those things and are working hard and putting into place steps where we are increasing communication to make sure that not only our employees are in a safe environment and our animals are in a safe environment, but the Humane Society employees and animals are in a safe environment as well. So going forward, you'll see an increased level of communication. There's already been several meetings between the city and and the Humane Society, and those meetings will continue. There are daily meetings between people who are on staff at the facility so we can get this project completed.
Questions? Al.
More of a suggestion for our city manager and yourself, chief, and your team. I get questions every time I make a presentation on where we are at the HOA, the HOA that I I live in, in Attacbury in particular, but I'm sure it's other community. I would urge that we have a process during all of this ramp-up of not just the construction, but as things are going forward, that we invite in not just people that are want to volunteer, but also some of the areas in the communities, HOVs, because they're the ones we're getting the feedback from, the people that are there, so that we have a process of having them make input. Because one of the things that I found, and we Chris and I have been out there twice over the last five years, is that until you walk in and see, because we have a great large dog outside area that's well-done and well-kept, but when you get into some of the more internal areas that are out, it's outside to try to get some exercise for the smaller animals, it ends up where it's it's hard to keep it clean. Let me put it really bluntly as far as some of the activities of water, the mud, things of that sort. So I think that what we've done and the money that we're putting in, the only suggestion I can have, thank God we're doing it. People do care. We've got a great opportunity to really do something that we started back, I guess, maybe what, 15 years ago, 14 years ago? But input from the people that own the animals or want to adopt, I just think would be really positive. So it's a suggestion more than anything. Okay?
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank everybody for being here today. Glad everybody's working together, and we'll get an update as you move through the through the phases. Okay. Chris, city operations update.
We have April with last month on ICTN.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. April Riley, Director of Communications, pleased to present to you the top video hits from the month of November. I would like to just briefly share with you that the ICTN team produced over 550 videos in fiscal year '24 with over 378,000 views on our YouTube channel. So we are really moving and grooving, and the team is doing excellent work. So thanks to the ICTN team, and without further ado.
Your ICTN team produced 36 videos in the month of November. The ICTN game of the week closed the season with more than 10,000 total views, averaging more than 1,700 fans watching each of the six games.
One of the things Mr. Carpenter always was keen on is he said, I want Los Colinas to have a sense of place.
I'm really excited.
And we had to come to a very big state to to premiere that, and Texas was calling.
I never would have thought in a million years this would happen to me when I was running around doing all this stuff.
My grandpa was one of the first ones that went around raising money for the hospital before it was ever built, and then I happened to be born there.
So if you like science, engineering, if you want to be a lawyer. Water utility is a really great job.
The major theme is learning to appreciate and not take advantage of those we love.
Most gobbled up every bite in their bowl, just like many of us on Thanksgiving.
Diwali is not a celebration just for us as Hindus, but it's a celebration for the entire world, the whole community.
A beautiful sight sparkling in lights. Irving is once again a winter wonderland.
Stay up to date by subscribing to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/thecityofirving.
Thank you.
Chris, anything else from the? Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda. Let's see, items 2, 3, 4, and 5 are minutes. Item number 6 is an amendment ordinance number 2024-10996, providing budget adjustment number 2 to the 2425 fiscal budget year. Item number 7 is resolution approving the City of Irving's legislative program. We just went through that with our representatives and John. Item number 8 is approving an order form and addendum with West Publishing Corporation and Thomas Recruiters Enterprise Center GMBH for computer assistance legal research service for the city attorney's office and the municipal court. Item number 9 is going to be pulled. Item 10 is approving an interlocal agreement pursuant to the Chapter 59 of the Texas Code of the Criminal Procedures between the City of Irving and the Dallas County Criminal District's Attorney's Office for forfeiture contraband. Item number 11 is approving an agreement for construction, maintenance, and operation of safety lighting systems within the municipal between the municipality between the City of Irving and the Texas Department of Transportation for Interstate Highway 635 and Beltline Road Project. Brad?
Yeah, that's one I just continue to like to be excited about. You know, we're that's going to be the Texas U-turn. At Beltline and 635, we've needed it for a long time. We've really worked hard at it, staff, putting it in our plan and seeing it come to fruition. We're going to put some light on it, too, which is good. But I mean, that that intersection up there is a safety issue, and so this will be, I think it's going to be great. But I mean, this is something the residents have wanted for many years, and so everything's going according to plan, Chris.
Yeah, I came in from the airport last night about 11:30, and they were laying beams across, so we're going to we're going to be ready to go here pretty soon. Item number 12 is amending Resolution 2024-297 to approve submission of a Victims of Crime Act Formula Grant Program application to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the designating the city manager or his authorized official to apply for, accept, reject, or alter or terminate on behalf of the city, a grant on behalf of the city. Item number 13 is approving an expenditure with Mart Inc. in the amount of 800, 589,040 for the break room build-out for solid waste services at the Briar Yard through the interlocal purchasing agreement. Item number 14 is awarding a contract to Atkins Brothers Equipment Company, Inc. in the amount of $2,486,770 for a pressure zone boundary change water improvement project. Item number 15 is awarding a contract to JB and CO LLC in the amount of $1,768,505 for the construction of the park development project at at where are we? This is one they've been working on behind the old sandwich shop. John?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't need the full presentation on this. I'm not sure if it would be CIP or Parks, but do we have a timeline on estimated finish date for that project, assuming we award the contract?
Councilman, we can get that to you.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Item number 16 is approval, change order number 6 to the contract with Humphrey and Morton Construction Company in the amount of $274,610 for the Embassy Channel Drainage and Wastewater Improvements. Item number 17 is approving termination of an agreement among the City of Irving 777 HR Associates Associates KLLC, 777 HR Associates B LLC, and Pioneer Natural Resources. Item number 18 is approving a sign variance allowing a painted mural and painted wall sign approximately 16.787 acres located north of Fuller Drive and west of Los Colinas Boulevard. This is the music factory where we're seeing the signs being painted. Item number 19 is is adopting update on the policy set forth of the minimum standards and evaluating criteria for applicants seeking support from the city council for the projects of to qualit quality for housing tax credits awarding by the Texas awarded by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Mark?
Yeah, I like the presentation on this, or I know we're talking about Lytech later, too, so I don't know. Does it go with that? Maybe we can consider them together?
Yeah. Is that okay, Mel, if we consider those two together? Which other one were you? Okay. Thank you.
So this presentation, we presented last last council meeting, the updates that we proposed for the low-income housing tax credit policy. Just as a reminder, last year was the first year we you approved a formal policy for Lytech applications and scoring criteria that went with it. And so each year, staff reviews that policy and scoring criteria to assess if there need to be any updates, and in order to continue to make sure we're prioritizing the housing needs and constructing the developments and identified targeted area of the city and aligning with our current future land use. So during this year, we assessed the policy, found a few areas where we needed just to clean up and clarify some language there, presented that at the last meeting and received support to bring this back forward for your consideration of approval. Just for reminder, the three changes, one was in the threshold requirements where we require that a notification of the community outreach meetings go out to neighborhood associations, homeowners associations, and property owners. We made sure to include the schools and school districts near the proposed development. We did not change anything in the policy in regards to aligning with our land use, continuing to award up to 24 points there, or addressing the Irving's housing needs. Nothing in the policy changed there. There was only There was only some scoring criteria clarifications. For the policy under the project development type and location, this was one where we proposed language that said provides adaptive reuse of an existing development and, or as a mixed use housing development. This is where we talked about the projects coming in and adaptively using already residentially you, residentially used properties and just looking at how to adaptively reuse them to enhance that property, trying to encourage innovation with project types. We have proximity to amenities, nothing changed here. This is where we're looking at how close a project is in regards to parks and grocery stores, libraries, et cetera. The deconcentration was to ensure we're not concentrating all of our projects within one area. We did not change anything in the policy, but made some clarifications in the scoring criteria as last year we had a project that received zero points basically through omission. So clearing up language in the criteria, but not the policy. Lastly, the last three policy areas are our mixed rate where we're encouraging mixed rate units, deeper affordability where we're trying to target a certain amount of, of the units to hit the 30% area median income. And then the last change was the public engagement, ensuring that, or allowing that schools, in addition to school districts can supply a letter of support for the project. Points overview here, nothing changed. Again, this, the total points out of 100. And this is just again, the summary of the policy changes. There were just three minor updates. Again, the inclusion of schools and school districts in the community outreach requirements and then the scoring criteria policy sections, the inclusion of the adaptive reuse, mixed use housing projects, and inclusion of school in the type of neighborhood organization that can supply a letter of support. So after approval tonight, then of the changes, applications are open right now, will be due by the 30th. And then we'll start reviewing those in January, bring an overview to you on January 16th. And then your consideration will be at the February 7th council meeting where they'll be, have an opportunity to present their project to you. And that's when you'll take up consideration of any resolution.
Questions?
Yeah, so yeah, we have, we're not obligated to participate in this program. I would submit that considering that we, the abundance of multifamily that we have in this city, that we don't really want, we don't want to participate, participate in the program regardless of the scoring criteria. So my recommendation or suggestion would be that we don't even engage in the application process. Why? We have to. We don't have to participate in under the fair housing.
Councilman Cronin, what I can provide some legal advice on that and answer, respond to your question. You're correct, you don't have to approve these programs. However, if we do receive an application, the state law does require us to at least go through the process. And so this just provides a framework of criteria for you to evaluate, at least staff to evaluate it before it comes to you. But you are correct, ultimately, the council makes its determination of whether or not to provide just a resolution, whether in support or no, no objection, et cetera. And happy to explain that further to, to you.
So we're obligated to receive applications?
Yes, or we have to at least receive them and process them.
All right, thank you.
Just a couple of questions. So development type and location, obviously, we're steering away from, I mean, we don't want to engage any discriminatory development type. And so what are we, what are we talking about again there as development type?
Here, we is where we're trying to encourage the rehab or renovation of existing multifamily, giving more points for that, or the adaptive reuse of something existing versus a new construction.
Well, I guess we can weigh those. I mean, I've, in some ways, if it's a tear down and somebody builds something new, I think that'd be phenomenal.
Yes, that would be counted as kind of the adaptive reuse part, but it's going back to the conversations we've had of to our percentage of multifamily to single family. We do have a large stock of existing, so we want to encourage the redevelopment, the redevelopment or rehab of currently existing multifamily assets versus the new construction.
And as we see these come up, I think it's critical if we're giving points that it, it'd be more something than just window dressing, like it'd actually be a rehab to make something And so I know y'all are focused on those. The other, I don't know where this fits, but it's, it's been on my mind because we have the concentration factor. But all these factors are good. I think the number of units is also relevant. And so where, does that come in somewhere? Because if it's 800 units, that's a, that would be the single largest Lytech in town, at this point at least, versus 80 units or something like where, maybe that goes into addressing housing need, like it's, if it's a lot bigger than we'd want, because, you know, some of these will have an impact and we want to make a good impact. And so I think some of the larger ones have struggled, in my opinion. So is that anywhere in here? Can we put that in a factor somewhere when it's, when y'all are looking at it?
So Dan, I'll answer both questions. So in regards to the rehab, TDHCA has higher requirements. It's, it can't just be window dressing. They have to have a certain amount of minimum investment, usually $50,000 or more per unit on hard costs that go into the rehab. So it, it has to be more than just window dressing. That's why we didn't include that in our scope because it's basically covered. It's covered. In regards to the number of units, we did not include that because we're more about the, just proportionality of the project itself, really trying to push the market mix. So we have market rate in the project and where those are spread out just location wise. We didn't take into account, we haven't seen a project come in of 800. They're typically around the 76 to 120 is the sweet spot for most Lytech projects in their applications now. I haven't, Irving hasn't seen them and I haven't seen them in the other scorecards of the higher number of the 300 plus. So at this time, we just didn't see that being an important part to have versus just the concentration with, within the city as in with, as well within the project. So we're looking at distance from projects and then within a certain project, making sure it's mixed as well.
Well, and that, that's where I'll say, it, it will be on my mind because we do have two in the north that are almost 300 units each and they're right on top of each other, within a mile. And so that would weigh on me as far as, okay, again, we don't want to cluster. It's clustering is illegal under federal law, but you know, that, that would affect my mind if it's, okay, we have 25 over here, even if there's something pretty close. You know, wouldn't, I don't think that the closeness would matter as much, just in my book at least.
Well, we collect that information, so you'll receive as part of the packet, the full application, so you'd be able to see the number of units. It just wasn't included as part of the scoring criteria.
Well, I think this originally came out of, or this idea has been at work for a long time. Thank you guys for putting something together, just because we were getting these without sort of any criteria and it's, I think we want to be in a better position to evaluate based on standards we set. So I think it's, it's a good idea whether we approve them all or approve none. I think we need, we need something to have in print that y'all can evaluate, okay, is this a good one? Thank you.
Thank you.
Al?
Yeah. When we're done with this one, I'd like to go back to 18. I just have a couple of questions.
Okay. Kyle?
Yeah, I think, first of all, it gives a minimum qualifications for a developer to come. Past, we've had a couple of Lytech folks come in doing, trying to do different developments and we got into a real big mess of he said, she said, they're lying, I'm lying. So we got, so this has allowed us to remove a lot of that. What's been done, what hasn't been done, and gives us some good basic guidelines by which we can go. And as we continue to go through the process, we're allowed to ask certain questions about the development as it comes in, which gives us the ability to ask those. But this will eliminate a lot of what we had a couple of years ago with two different developers coming in and basically telling us whatever they thought we needed here, not what was the truth or what was they were actually going to do. So I appreciate you committing the work and doing this because that'll eliminate that and give them some criteria when they come in to where, when they're sitting with one or two of us, they don't say one thing and the next two or three of us, they say something completely different, which happened in one of the last developments. So I appreciate all the hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Al, you want to go back to 18 about the wall signs?
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions. When I look at the actual, well, let me ask the first question. I assume this is being paid for by part of the 30 million that we've allocated to Brookfield, am I correct?
No.
No?
No. This is on the developer.
Who's paying for it?
Brookfield.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, I noticed that it also, in both of the locations are basically facing out, so people will be able to see both these signs, am I correct?
That's correct.
And how did the decision make, how was it made as to what we're putting on there?
These were proposals from the Brookfield Design Team.
And who approved it?
The council ultimately will have to approve it. These are variances from the sign ordinance.
You answered my question, thank you, Phil.
And I think we have in that, that it also be, has to be approved by Los Colinas Association as well. Okay, 20 is approving a professional services agreement between Fries and Nichols and the estimated amount of $629,400 for the Hackberry Pump Station System Testing and Assessment. Item number 21 is approving a purchase with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in the total estimated amount of $220,581 in Brazo System Hardware and Software Maintenance. The next is items 22 through 44. Item number 27 is being pulled. Brad?
22, chief. Where's Chief Harvey when we need him, but we'll, we'll take, we'll take the big chief here. Yeah.
I can get him here really quick.
No, I'm sure he's busy. So this, one of the tillers here is nearly 2.2 million, which replaces one of our two original tillers.
Yes, sir.
At 12 or at?
Currently, looking at the data, it would replace the tillers at, at station three based upon maintenance and acquisition, all the data that goes into that. So those tillers were ordered in 2013. So, you know, we're looking at this tiller being approximately 50 months out and we try to replace them within 15 years. So we're knocking on that time period.
This tiller, if I remember right, since it, almost 2.2, that's, we had, we bought about two tillers for that price the last?
You are correct. We paid right at 1.2 at our original purchase when we replaced the first one and then I believe the second one went to 1.4. Is that right? Yeah.
They're pretty pricey, so.
Yes, sir.
And again, I'm not, I'm not complaining about that and it's, it's frustrating for all of us, but costs have gone up and that's less than 10 years and we're 50 months out.
Yes, sir.
And that one took a while to get in too, the old one.
Roughly 15 months back then.
And tillers, just for everybody, I learned this the first time, but it's the one with the, the steering in the back with the big ladder. We can get in our tight neighborhoods and so when we're asked to build tight neighborhoods, like we heard earlier, get ready for more expensive tillers because there's no way to get, well, I mean, there's a way to get pumpers in there, but not everybody will like it, but the tillers, yeah, can, tillers can certainly get in tight spaces. Pretty impressive watching those videos of being able to drive.
Yes, sir.
Things you, you'd think it'd never get into. So definitely needed, but definitely tiller inflation is real, so.
Yes, sir. You're 100% accurate.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Al?
Yeah, chief, I notice here that I think it's two that you're putting into reserve status. What does that mean by basically?
Well, the way our rotation works is, like I said, we try to keep our front line ladder trucks about 15 years, our pumpers about 12. So when we replace those front lines, the front line moves up to a backup status. So anytime a front line apparatus goes down for any maintenance or repairs, we have another one move up in a position. And they're pretty much used constantly. I mean, it's a terminology we use, so we know it's a backup, but they're used constantly just like a front line piece of equipment. And then of course, with the blocker program, the pumpers are rotated past the reserve into a blocker program and then we eventually to an auction. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mark?
I have a question about 25, if chief has done here.
Okay. Is the expenditure with Baker and Taylor for library services, total estimated amount
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I had a question, and I know that the library board is looking at the acquisition policy that the city has. Is this part of that consideration that they're doing? And just how's, how's that process going with the library board looking at those things?
Right, this is, this is separate. This is just our regular annual renewal of our contracts, state contract for Baker Taylor Midwest Tapes in Ingram. What the library board is assisting with is separate. We've, they assisted us with reviewing our collection development policy and we amended it to update and allow for non-traditional, more independent publishers so that we can maintain balance within our collection. And the board is assisting with identifying publishers for us to go back and look to add to our repertoire of publishers that we order from, so it's separate.
Okay. Item number 45 is amending section eight through 34 and eight through 35 of Article 6 entitled inspections of Chapter 8 of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances related to the multifamily risk rating requirements. Item number 46 is amending Chapter 41 entitled Water and Sewer Systems of the Code of Criminal and, of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas, providing a servability repealer and savings clause and providing an effective date. Item number 47 is approving and endorsing the implement of the city's continued pretreatment program as requested by 40 Code of Federal Regulations, Part 403, for the Central Regional Wastewater System as submitted by the Trinity River Authority and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Item number 48 is granting a franchise to Frontier Access LLC, DBA Frontier Waste Solutions for Solid Waste Collection Services beginning on December 12th, 2024 and ending on December 11th, 2027 pursuant to Chapter 33 of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas. Item number 49 is granting a franchise to Republic Waste Services of Texas LTD for Solid Waste Collection Services beginning on December 12th, 2024 and ending on December 11th, 2027 pursuant to Chapter 33 of the Code of Civil and Criminal Ordinances of the City of Irving, Texas. Item number 50 is authorizing the abandonment application of certain portions of a 22-foot fire line easement along a portion of property located at 5675 Riverside Drive, Lot 2A, Block A, Fire Station 8, addition amended. And addition to the City of Irving, Dallas County, Texas, owned by the City of Irving, a homeroom municipal corporation. Individual considerations, ordinance, public hearing and designating approximately 33.932 acres of land, tax abatement, reinvestment zone number 62. Item number 52 is resolution approving a tax abatement agreement between the City of Irving and Quality Technology Services LLC, QTS, Irving DC 3 LLC, QTS, Irving DC 4 LLC, QTS, Irving DC 5 LLC and QTS, Irving DC 6 LLC in an amount depend upon, depending upon annual qualifications. Want to thank the staff for all their work on the QTS project and this one that's funded. I want to thank the staff for all their work on the QTS project and this one that's following it with the abatement of tax abatement agreement between the City of Irving and Microsoft Corporation in the amount depending upon annual qualifications. Item number fifty-four is approval of amendment number one to the amended and restated Economic Development Incentive Agreement between the City of Irving and Quality Technology Services LLC in the amount depending upon annual qualifications. Item number fifty-five will take up in executive session, and that brings us to our zoning cases, number fifty-six. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jocelyn Murphy, Director of Planning. We do have several cases tonight, because it's the end of the year, and it's one meeting this month, so I'll do my best.
Good luck.
The first case is a preliminary final plat. Normally, you don't see plats. Normally, the P and Z, they stop at P and Z. This plat goes to the city council, because they are requesting approval of a private street. So this is the Alyssia Estates addition on Coell. This is property adjacent to the city financial. If y'all are familiar, of course, it's adjacent to the brand-new Aberdeen subdivision as well. It is twenty-two lots, and for single-family uses, one lot for private school uses. P and Z recommended conditional approval, subject to council approval for the private streets, and they had a couple of notes they needed to change. They have made those changes on the plat, so those have been complied with, and so tonight you would just be approving the plat with the private streets. And so this is a, the picture of the plat. It has been through full tech review, therefore, traffic, fire, water, everybody has reviewed this and has signed off with approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Okay.
Okay. Next one.
The next two cases are companions. The first one is a conference of plan amendment. It's at seven fifteen and seven eleven North Main and one fourteen West Bower. The request is to change the future land use from Main Street downtown to Manufacturing Warehouse. Staff recommends approval. P and Z recommended approval, eight to zero, no opposition. I'm sorry, you do have one letter of support, I believe, that we just recently got, and you should have a memo with that.
Support, right?
Support, yes. So this is property at North Main and Union Bower, so it is just to the west of city property. So the site you see right here is city-owned, is currently being developed into the MDU, the Municipal Drainage Utility Site. So the future land use of this area was intended to be, originally designated as Main Street with the thought that maybe the development, the mixed-use development that's happening downtown, might work this way up here. But as we look at this area, especially with the MDU property come in, we, it looks like it really will probably stay these smaller industrial type of uses. And we looked at, would single-family be, work here? Would commercial work here? Would multifamily work here? And the answer was pretty much, what is there is probably the highest and best use, just because of the lot sizes and what's going to be around it. So that's why staff did recommend approval to Manufacturing Warehouse. And down here, of course, is just a normal commercial shopping center. So this, we did look, y'all had not seen this as part of your future land use proposals yet. You're going to see it in the next phase. We do have some cleanup in this area we want to do of the Main Street, but this is part of our thought process, is to clean up the area that is shown as Main Street, and reflect a little more what's on the ground, and just bring it to what we think it'll actually develop to. So we did want you to know we were thinking ahead about this area. And again, Main Street downtown is more of the walkable mixed-use, and Manufacturing Warehouse is, as it says, manufacturing and a little bit of storage. So they, we'll get to the zoning case in a second, but the proposal here is for a granite slab manufacturer. And we do find that complies with the regulations in the conference of plan. It does conform, or it's, it does, is compatible with the uses in the area and does not cause any negative effects. Should I go ahead and go to the zoning case?
Yeah.
Okay. So the zoning case is CW Warehouse today. The proposal is SP one to ML twenty A for the manufacturing, storage, and sale of granite countertops. They cannot do manufacturing in the CW, which is why they had to do the zoning change. Staff recommend approval. P and Z approval, eight to zero, and you do have a letter of support. Again, the property location, future land use. So today, it is three lots, and we had to kind of go through a chicken and egg process with, they couldn't plat because of the, because of the setbacks, so they need to go through the variance process and the zoning process to allow the use to get the setback. So we, after working with the applicant, it's easier to go through, get the zoning cleaned up, and then they will come back and plat these three lots into one lot. So what you see here, the white buildings are existing. They'll build a new building here in the rear and do a couple of parking lots. The property down to the south, you wait for the aerial for a second. Down to the south is a tow yard, and there are some other small manufacturing companies just to the north. There's a couple of single-family homes around, but for the most part, again, it is a small manufacturing. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? John?
Thank you very much, Jocelyn. I want to note, I just took a look at that letter of support that we received. The letter of support that we received is from the, one of the single-family homes to the north. It's actually the one that's going to be right behind this property, so insofar as this is, or I think it's that property, is that correct? I know it's one of those, because I just looked it up. It's definitely one of those three. I think it's the eastmost one. So insofar as this is adjacent to, to residential, those property owners are in support, or one of them is. I did have a question about with the, with the setbacks that they're requesting, so it's a side yard setback that they're requesting a variance on, right?
So it's because?
It's kind of weird, because it's multiple properties.
Well, and that's, that's why, once they replat, they won't need those variances.
Right.
But they had to get the zoning in order to do the use. It was just, it was, those won't be necessary once those lot lines go away.
So, so I guess my question really is, so is the side yard setback variance on a particular lot, or is it on all of them, or like, how does that work?
So like, let me get this. So here, this is a?
Because they front different streets, or some?
Right. These two front North Main, and this one actually fronts an alley. I can't explain that out, but it does. So this one, like here, this building here has a four-foot, seven-foot, a four-foot, seven-inch setback.
Right.
You know, this building here would have a, I think it'd be a three-foot, seven-inch.
Yeah.
So it's just, they know it's going to be cleaner to replat it. It was just, again, which came first, so.
Okay.
And what, once they replat, of course, it'll be one lot, and they won't, they'll just have building separations for?
The setbacks are actually only required, looking at this, with the existing building, but also with the other buildings, they're only required in the interior.
Correct.
Lot lines.
Correct.
Does the site plan reflect that they don't, would they have the side yard setbacks on the exterior?
Yeah, they would have, like here, this, they'd meet the ten-foot here. This is a twenty-foot alley, so they'll meet that.
But based on this, yes, obviously, they, they plan to comply with, you know, not needing the setbacks. Once it's one property, but is the site plan that we're approving, just blanket, any side setback is at that variance level, or is it particular to some of the, do you get what I'm asking?
So the ones specifically, well, for each of the addresses. So for the side yard, it was ten feet on one of them, and it was four and a half-foot setback. I'd have to see which one it is. I think it's this one here.
Probably that one, yeah.
So, yeah. And then this one was a five and a half foot, so they were asking for a five-foot, just give some wiggle room. And then this is a three-seven, so it'd be a three and a half was the variance request. So again, once those lot lines disappear, those won't be necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Hal? Yeah, okay. Okay?
Good. All right. This is forty-eight thirty-five North O'Connor Road. This is La Peep. They are requesting, they want to start selling alcohol. I think, understand they want to sell mimosas, so they have to get an RAB in order to do that. So they're at forty-eight thirty-five North O'Connor, Suite One Hundred. Staff recommends approval. P and Z approval, eight to zero. Four letters of support, no opposition. Again, here it is at the corner of North O'Connor, O'Connor Ridge, existing restaurant. Here's just the location on their site plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
They've been there for a long time.
Yeah. Mimosas are fine.
Yep. Next case.
Next case is twelve fourteen South Britton. They are R six. The request is SP two R six for an accessory building with variances to maximum height and minimum side and rear yard setbacks. This is an existing structure that has been built. Staff finds no unnecessary hardship. P and Z recommended approval of denial, I'm sorry, of eight to zero, no letters of support and three in opposition equals fifteen point eight-one percent. Does not hit that twenty percent threshold quite yet. So here's the location, just north of Shady Grove and South Britton. So here's the site plan, the, from what we understand from the applicant, there used to be some, it's kind of deteriorating storage buildings here, and I think the next one shows it. Yeah, so there used to be a couple of existing buildings. These were old nineteen ninety-eight permits, and they wanted to do a new building, and so they removed these buildings and then put this building in. So it is not really the same footprint, it was not the same size. From what we could tell here on the aerial, the square footprint here looks to be the new one, and this is the existing. So again, here is the request. So because the building does exist, I've got a couple pictures here in a second, they are requesting a, let's see, a minimum side yard setback of four point four feet, and because of the height, it would be almost a twelve-foot variance, a minimum rear yard setback of six point six feet, and then a height of twenty-one feet, which would be an eleven-foot variance. So this is the front of the property. This is the building itself. And they were stopped mid-construction, as you can tell, and some pictures of the interior. So there are no interior walls yet. We believe there are in snow plumbing or water, so they do say that it will be a storage structure. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? John?
Did the fire department weigh in on this?
Fire department reviews everything.
What did they have to say about this?
Yeah, I don't think there was anything specific. There were no specific notes in here, and usually, if they have something to say, we would have put it in the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? On to the next one.
All right. Fourteen twenty-two English Street. This is an R seven five requesting to go to SP two R six, variances to lot depth, rear yard setback, side yard setback, and lot width for transitional lots. Staff recommends denial. P and Z recommend denial, eight to zero, no opposition or support. So here's the corner of English and Growaller. So you can see here, these are deeper lots along English Street. In 2018, they did rezone and eventually replat part of the rear of this property for a single-family home that has been constructed. And so they're essentially wanting to do the same thing, is divide the lot again in order to put a home in the rear. So we kind of tried to color code it. Lot A is orange, lot B is blue, just in order to try to keep things a little separate. So in order to do this, they have to have multiple variances. Again, to lot depth, it would be, the lot A, because it fronts here on English Street, would be sixty-six feet. Where it's supposed to be a hundred feet, the rear yard setback would be now eleven feet, because they would be cutting down the middle, and y'all can read all these, I won't go in detail, but in other words, they are not meeting the minimums of the district. One thing that is significant is the lot area for lot A, which is the one on English Street, should be thirteen thousand square feet with a transitional lot size. They're requesting a little over six thousand, and for lot B, which is the interior lot, would be, I thought they had, oh, there we go, should be ninety-four hundred square feet, and they would be a little under five thousand square feet. So, yeah, here's the charts specifically. So the variances are pretty significant from the, and again, the area around is R seven five. They're requesting go to R six. The variances are from R six. Here's our calculation that we pulled from to get those transitional lot numbers for lot A, and then here's lot B. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay.
The next two cases are companion cases at eight oh one Singleton Boulevard. The applicant did provide a couple bits of information that you should have under memo. The first case is a request to go from compact neighborhood to local commercial. The staff recommended denial. P and Z recommend denial, six-two. This, at this time, we had one letter in support and twelve, I'm sorry, and two in opposition for fifteen percent. We got it right before this meeting started, so out on your dais, we have seventeen letters in support that the applicant just recently got, I think this morning or late yesterday. So this is a property on Singleton, so it's just off Loop Twelve and East Irving Boulevard. There are single, these are, I think it was platted for townhouses, so they're really kind of attached duplexes, but they are obviously singly owned, an apartment complex here and some houses to the north. It does have a future land use of compact neighborhood, which was the basis for staff's recommendation of denial. And at the time, at this time, we have not had a rescission, but the owner of the apartments to the west have submitted an opposition. So of course, compact neighborhood is residential homes, the higher density residential homes, and what he's wanting to do is build an office, so local commercial would be the appropriate future land use category for that. And staff, in evaluating these, did not find that they met most of these issues, or these criteria, because they would affect the residential property in the area, wouldn't have transitions, and would not be the same type of use as the residential. So here's some pictures of the property. We're not sure what the history was of these columns. We don't know if the apartments were going to build and they decided not to, but they just have some random columns out here. This is South Trees. This is to the north. So this runs along the side of the property, and then just some other pictures. And this is across the street to the east, so this property fronts Loop Twelve. Would you like me to go to the zoning case?
Questions? Abdul?
Is this in the middle of the residential area, or is there a commercial in the surrounding?
So there's commercial, this red kind of blends in. The red here is that golf cart company, is this one. But around it, there's their single family to the north, there's an apartment complex to the west, and then these are those kind of attached to townhouses together down here. So it's surrounded by residential on this side of Singleton. On the other side of Singleton is that golf cart company.
So there is some commercial in the surrounding?
There's some commercial across the street.
Do you have the current picture of, of the structure, what we have?
Well, this is the, this is the future land use case. Let me get into the zoning case, and we do have a couple pictures in there, I think. And the picture, so the zoning case is a straight zoning, so there's not a site plan tied to it, and we can't control the way things look anyway, so the elevations that they gave you are just to let you see what they intend to build, but we can't enforce that because of state law.
Well, I, I was watching in, in the P and Z meeting, I happened to sit for a while, and if I understood correctly, the owner intend to, to build a office for their own use.
Correct.
So is there a existing structure that they want to convert it into the office, or is it a new?
No. It'd be brand-new construction. It's just a vacant lot today.
Brand-new. Okay. And also, I understood that the size of the lot is not compatible to either apartment or multifamily.
I wouldn't particularly say that. It's, let me get into the zoning case. I'll kind of show you some of the pictures and, because we could discuss that, yeah. Again, 801 Singleton, it is zoned for multifamily today. And they are requesting go to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Again, staff recommend denial, P&amp;Z denial, six to two. One letter of support at this point, and fifteen, or two in opposition for 15%. Begin the location. So this, again, is just their, it's an illustrious exhibit. This is not an SP case, but we think it's helpful for you to know what they're, what they have in mind. So it is intended to be a one-story metal building. They've been working with fire in terms of their access. They've been working with CIP in terms of their possible detention, because it is a relatively flat lot. There are some easements. So there's a sanitary sewer easement down here. There's some easements up here. But they're not anything that's really unusual for a larger lot. This is about, I think, a three-acre lot, a little over two acres. So I wouldn't say it's unbuildable for any other use, especially a multifamily use. It would just have to, they would have to fit within those easements and meet the applicable codes. But again, they do plan to do a one-story metal building with a fire lane around the outside. And in your handouts, we did have a meeting with the applicant a couple days ago. And we talked about buffering to residential if it was going to be approved. So they, they thought it'd be a good idea to put trees about 20 or 25 feet on center around and put the solid screening fence to make sure that, if it is approved, that they won't be affecting the residential in the area. There was also talk, and the applicant may bring it up tonight, about maybe postponing and maybe reducing the size of the request to just include this site. But he'll have to tell you tonight if that's what he decided to do. So again, just pictures of the property. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Abdul, go ahead. I'm checking. Okay, John?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jocelyn. I guess I'll reserve my more speculative questions for tonight, and I can ask the applicant. But is there, well, I mean, they're here, but we'll wait for the public hearing for that. Because it's, it's not so much about the zoning, more about their, their plan, just out of curiosity. But is there, my understanding is the duplexes or townhomes, or whatever they are, to the south, they do not front onto Singleton, is that correct?
They do not. It's a cul-de-sac here, and so their only access is on South Irving Heights.
Okay, and then?
I mean, they, they back to Singleton, but they don't have access to it.
They back to, but they don't. And then, of course, a number of those would back to the subject property.
Correct.
And then those on, what is it, South Trees? The residential up there, obviously, that would all front to South Trees, except on that corner. Does that front to South Trees or Singleton?
Looks like Singleton.
Okay. And is there anything in the site plan that would restrict? Oh, there is no site plan, I guess. So in terms of frontage on Singleton versus South Trees, is there any, anything from our end that we could say, you can only, you can only access from Singleton? Or would they be able to?
From what I understand, in his discussions with fire, is fire is pretty much requiring that they access onto Singleton. Because I know there's, we were looking yesterday, there's two hydrants on Singleton. And just the quality of South Trees probably isn't good enough for their trucks.
Sure.
So I think they were required to pull access from Singleton.
Isn't good for whose trucks?
The fire trucks.
The fire trucks, okay.
Because South Trees isn't in the best condition.
Sure. So, so, well, yes, they'd have to have access from Singleton. But is there anything to, like, could we, could we require them to not have access from South Trees also?
You could, we'd have to be, it'd have to convert to an SP. Right, which can be done. And that could even be, it's just, it's, you know, it could be done on the dais tonight, if that's what you wanted to do. Or you could postpone it, and we could relook at that and turn it into a site plan. He wasn't against the idea of converting it to a site plan. We just didn't have a reason to trigger it, because there were no variances being requested.
And I, I'm not, I'm not married to that. I was just curious about that. I mean, it seems to me, in terms of impact to the residential, this has very minimal residential impact. There is, there's only, I mean, they're, assuming they build what they're going to build, and I know that's not what we're voting on. You know, there, there's going to be office traffic on a street that doesn't have, that has one residential property on it and a bunch of commercial properties already. And the only other real impact to the residential that I can see is those townhomes or duplexes. Instead of having potentially a multifamily complex right out their backyard, now they'll have a quiet office building. To me, that's a positive impact. If I, if I lived with that lot behind me, I would much rather have an office building behind me than a multifamily complex. So, I mean, personally, personally, I, I see the city's argument, but I think, you know, given how long this property has been vacant, especially in, through, through a period of extremely low interest rates and extremely low property values, I assume if it were viable to develop as multifamily, when it was already zoned that way, it would have been. So if someone comes along and says, we want to buy this, build brand-new on it and put it to use, that's a win in my book. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with John, and I'm going to vote to support this. My question is, based on the square footage of that area, how many multifamily units could be put on it? Any idea?
Oh, gosh, we haven't calculated. It's about two acres, and that district allows a maximum of 18 units an acre. So say, yeah, it's, it's a little less than two. So with parking and everything, yeah, probably 30, 32, maybe.
Okay. So as we talk about impact to the residents, I agree with John. A multifamily unit there with 30 units, two, three cars per unit, whatever, is a heck of a lot more impact than a small office complex, you know, with just the people that work in the office complex. Number two, I don't think you're going to find any developer that's going to come into that area right there and put a lot of money into building a multifamily unit. I mean, it's not the most aesthetically looking area that you want to build a multifamily unit in. And so I'll support the guy trying to improve. I, I watched a little bit of the P&amp;Z, you know, on this case, and it was talking about the retention pond. So I guess I'd like to ask, you know, somebody in Capital Improvements, will they have to? Will whoever puts something on there have to put a retention pond for the water drainage?
Yeah, that'll have to be analyzed by the civil engineering firm that, that does the plans, and then we'll, we'll review that. But most likely, there would be a detention pond required there.
So, so, I mean, there's not a lot of incentive for an apartment builder to have to put a retention pond in with that amount of expense, and then only a few units. They probably can't get their money out of it, which is why it hasn't developed in all these years. So I'll support the guys, you know, attempt to at least put a nice, small office complex on it.
Okay. Next one.
This property is, you saw it before, you've seen it before. It was from, it was postponed from November. 5,000 West John Carpenter is an SP1 CP Commercial Park. And they're keeping the CP Commercial Park and adding a hotel used with variances. Staff recommend approval, P&amp;Z recommend approval, eight to zero, no opposition or support. And you do have a letter from the agent and just some informational items that she had submitted. This was a property that was burned, I believe, in 2022. You're probably familiar with this from last time. They are looking to rebuild into what would be more of a extended stay hotel. Part of the concern last time, and their questions were last time, the requirement on 114 is to have a 30-foot parking setback. And the request, or they show a little bit over 17 feet. We discussed last time, did the other properties in the area, they meet the 30-foot. And from what we can tell, the others did meet the 30-foot. We did not see, we asked, we did not see any changes from the November proposal to today. So these are the variances they're requesting. The existing site plan was 101 rooms. The current requirement's 200. They are requesting 118. So they, looks like they did go down a couple. And, but they are still a little bit higher than what was originally on site before it burned. Meeting space, very minimal meeting space because of the long-term stay aspect to it. Also, a smaller lounge area, recreational facilities. They increased a little bit, looks like they recalculated some of the outdoor area into it. They're providing a portico. Their lot coverage would be the 79% as last time, a maximum height, still four stories, and then the 17 and a half feet to 114. I'm sorry, and the items in green were variances last time, but they did remove those as variances. So this is a picture of the property. Again, it was burned and razed, and they're just wanting to rebuild. And just some of the surrounding, look like the hotels in the area are three and four stories. So the four stories would not be out of place. Be happy to answer any questions.
Al?
Yeah. Jocelyn, if they're going to go up four stories, I'm very familiar with that location, because right next to it is, every now and then, I'll rent a van from the location there next to it. I'm having a little bit of heartburn that, you know, I know the area, and yet, I look at the variance, and it looks like all they're trying to do is move from what should be around a 200 minimum rooms to 118. And they're saying, well, there's not going to, and well, they're requesting a variance of 82 rooms. Am I correct?
Yes, because the, the hotel standards are 200.
Yeah, well, that's a big chunk. I just, the area, if we're going to approve something out there, it's got to be something that's going to be, I think, compatible with what's also on both sides of, of that, that piece of property. So I'm concerned about, is it really going to fit in there? Or is it just really renting rooms, period, for a short stay? Because that's what it looks like. So that says to me, then where does it go next? So I, I've got to look at it tonight.
Kyle?
Yeah, thanks, Jocelyn. Since this is an extended stay hotel, do you know if they're going to have kitchenettes in there or not?
Yes. The pictures that we saw last time will have small, like, on the wall, just small kitchenettes.
So they'll have kitchenettes, place refrigerator?
Little cooking area, a little sink, mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Abdul?
Hey, Josh. Last time when they brought this case, and then in the evening, they postponed it.
Correct.
For tonight, right? And I think we discussed this in our work session last time. And based on some of the input given to them, they say that they are going to work on it and come back. So the green highlighted area is the one which they have made changes?
Yes, those are the items that they're saying they no longer need variances. So the lounge area, which is kind of the entry, where they have the front desk, they were, they had a small, just basically kind of a walk-in type thing. So they have increased that to at least meet the 500 square feet. The recreational facilities, I don't know if they recalculated, or if they actually made them larger so they can meet the 1,000. And then the portico, kind of a covered drive in the front, they did add that.
Yeah. So in November, they didn't have anything on the minimum size of meeting space. Now they have 344. And then in lounge area, we didn't have anything in there on November 7th. Now they have 840. So there are, there is some, you know, consideration to the feedback which we have given last time. And I think this concept is a good concept that, and it is being by Hilton. I think it's a good brand for, for extended stay. These are popping up in different places I have seen. So let's see how it goes. And I would be interested to, to hear from the owners tonight to consider. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate that the applicant revised some of their requested variances to eliminate the need for the, for the variances in some of these things. The lounge area, recreational facilities, the portico. To me, the ones that I really care about are the room count and the meeting space. When we look at the purpose of our hotel standards, a lot of it has to do with the room rate, which, you know, when you hit an economic downturn, that room rate, if you don't have more reasons to come to the hotel than just a place to stay, the only thing you can do is drop your, your rates. And they will drop in an instant, and it takes them years to come back up. And so that's the reason for having that 200-room count and that 5,000-square-foot meeting space requirement. Those are the two that I really wanted to see more attention to getting towards. I'm really flexible on the, the building height requirements. I'm really flexible in giving that variance. If you need more, it's a smaller lot generally, so you got to build up. I get that. So I'm, I'm happy to give extra stories to get those extra rooms and extra meeting space, especially with how close this is to the airport. I'm really willing to give variances on the parking requirement. Most, you know, a lot of people are, they're taking Ubers from the airport to the hotel. So parking is less of a concern these days at a hotel that close to the airport. So those are two variances that I, I'm happy to give to this kind of a project that's coming in. But going down in the, in the requested rooms and, and meeting space, to me, to me, that, it's more than, more than I can take on this one. You know, and yes, I know, they could, they could build fewer rooms right now to the site plan they already have on that property. And, well, I didn't, I didn't vote on that case. But if you're asking me to choose to accept these variances, I, I can't, I can't support this one.
Okay. Next one.
All right. The next two, again, are companion cases, 419 and 427 Maxwell. The first is a future land use request from compact neighborhood to local commercial. Staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z approval, eight to zero, no support, N1 in opposition. So here's the site. It's just to the east of the Family Advocacy Center on Pioneer Drive. So the future land use is compact neighborhood. Again, Pioneer Drive is a, more of a major arterial. And so they're wanting that the request is to put, what you'll see in the next case, is to put a small medical clinic here with some small recovery, a few recovery rooms. So that's why they need to request to go to the commercial future land use. Here's the location of the opposition. It's the residential to the south. The uses in the area are residential to the east and to the south, and then across the street from Pioneer. And of course, again, the Family Advocacy Center and a school to the west. Compact neighborhood is primarily the small lot, but a little bit higher density residential. Local commercial, of course, provide local services. And staff, there are some criteria, of course, if you want to transition from non-residential, from residential to non-residential, and staff is satisfied these have been met. Be happy to answer any questions or move on to the next case.
Next one.
So they have multiple zoning districts currently, I'm sorry, and they want to go to commercial office. The property, listen, we'll just back up, staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z recommend approval, eight, zero, one support, no, I'm sorry, no opposition, no support, one opposition. So this property here to the south, kind of the flag lot, was rezoned just last year, y'all probably remember it. And what they wanted to do is, it was, they were gonna do R35 plus essentially kind of a recovery care. They wanted to have four bedrooms, so if someone had a knee replacement or some type of surgery or a medical issue and didn't have family to take care of them, they could come here for a few weeks, get back on their feet and move on. So the applicant, I expect that the lot to the north came for sale and thought that they'd expand on that idea a little bit. So here's the property, they have started to clear it, and they are, they are going straight CO, commercial office, and so they will be able to meet the regulations of CO in terms of height, setbacks, parking. Again, they do plan to do a medical use. We categorize it kind of like a hospital because they, they say they're gonna have some scans and different things, but then also the inpatient care kind of crosses that line into a very small hospital. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, move on to the next one.
The next one is 2701 East Growwell, so this is at Growwell and Maryland. They are requesting, the current zoning is MFW Freeway and 183 overlay. They are having to rezone, they could actually do what they want to do in the MFW district, but because they were asking for variance to the parking, they have to rezone. MFW is a repealed district and therefore they have to go to the freeway district. So they're going SP2 for freeway with a variance to minimum parking requirements. Staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z approval, eight to zero, no opposition or support. So here's the location at Maryland and Growwell. The properties along 114 are currently zoned as PUD 6. They are in area, or tract C, which is a flex work, which does allow the small warehouse and industrial types of use as long as all of the operations occur inside. And this is, Excela is the name of it, it's Excela Technologies. It's been closed for a while, I don't know how long. They would completely clear the property and grade and put, I believe it's gonna be a total of five, including the property to the north, industrial warehouse buildings. I think there'll be spec, I don't think they have a user currently. So again, future land use is industrial. It is an SP2, so they don't have to have a detailed site plan. Their original request was for a variance to 1,000 to 2,000, to just have, do half the parking. They did reduce that to 1,500, and they have provided a parking study that shows that that's a reasonable and consistent amount of parking. So this is kind of generally what they planned to do. What they've explained and why they needed some of the variances is because there's actually a, a very big grade differential. I believe it slopes toward 183. And there will be a tall wall here, so these, between the property that's on PUD 6 and this development that we're talking about in this case, will not be physically connected because I think it'll be a 10 to 12-foot retaining wall. But part of the topography and the grading they'll have to do does contract whether they'll be able to build and provide that parking. So here's their grading plan in yellow is this case. And again, they're gonna have to do a lot of grading to get done what they want to get Some pictures of the area, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So some of it's in PUD 6 and some of it's out of PUD 6?
Yeah, so the property that was in PUD 6 went through a development plan. So the way the PUDs are set up is the development plan is just considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are the final, the final decision on those cases.
But it stayed in PUD 6, right?
Yes, it stayed in PUD 6 because it is that flex work. And so the use is actually allowed in PUD 6, is allowed in that flex work. They just wanted some variances pretty much to the parking in the front.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to pull any more property out of PUD 6.
No, it stayed in PUD 6 and it's consistent with that area.
Okay.
Okay. So we are 1220, 1224, 1300, 1304, East Shady Grove. Request R6 and SP1 detailed plan for a thrift shop to a straight CN neighborhood commercial. Staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z approval, eight to zero, no opposition or support. So this is property, again, it's on east, sorry, Shady Grove, East Shady Grove, just to the east of Nursery. And it's a series of four lots, and so this is a future land use, so you can kind of see as we get toward the west, this is kind of the start of a pattern of commercial. These, the three lots essentially are already zoned for the thrift shop. Thought that was very specific, but it's owned for a thrift shop. And only this lot on the west side is for single-family. And adjacent to that are some auto uses. So there is a single-family lot that's included in this rezoning to commercial, but it's actually already surrounded by commercial. This is just their illustrious exhibit, this is kind of like the other one where it's not tied to a site plan, but we thought it'd be helpful for you to see just what their layout could look like. It appears to be just a standard commercial strip center, maybe four tenant spaces, but they will meet all the regulations of the CN district. And again, here's that auto use on the other side of the residential lot, and just some of the properties in the area. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So my ignorance is gonna come out, they couldn't use this as an automotive, they'd have to get that zoning correct?
The CN allows what we call minor automotive, which would be like what we have adjacent already, the inspections or, you know, anything that doesn't allow for an overnight, you know, overnight leaving of your car. It's the kind where you would drive and get your oil changed and leave. So when we, a couple of years ago, we differentiated between minor auto repair and major. You could not do that major, but you could do the minor.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my concern is that I hear quite a bit from somebody that owns a mechanic shop just down on Shady Grove, that the, the one adjacent to them, every night there's cars packed up and piled up and doing body repair and service repair and everything, and they have a hard time keeping the lines. And sometimes you don't realize what they're doing because they do it at night and then it leaves.
Yeah, this would not allow, this would be like a, the quick oil changes or, you know, just the type that you would come and they would, they would do it and you would leave with your car.
So there couldn't be any overnight.
There could not be any, I think it's actually in the definition where there's overnight, overnight stay.
Thank you. That's, that's what I was concerned about. Thank you. Dennis?
Yeah, I got a question. So back, picking back on what Rick's talking about, what types of repair would that actually entail? I know you keep saying, you know, lube change place, but I know lube change places that also work on cars. So could that conceivably happen?
No, if, if you get into where you're changing alternators, maybe a battery might be okay, but when you start changing the mechanics of a car, that's, that's more the heavier, what we call the major auto repair. So the minor is just the service where you're, again, oil change, the inspections, that's, that's the way we have the definition ordered in the ordinance.
Right, I understand that, but what I'm saying is how do you regulate beyond all changes? What, what else can they not do? Can they not, can they not replace an alternator?
Yeah, they, they could, they would be regulated through the CO of what they, what their use would be and what they're intending to do, but you couldn't do mechanical repair through a minor auto repair category.
Right, but I'm still not understanding because I don't know what's minor and what's major when you're talking about auto repair. You could actually have, yeah, yeah.
I don't have them here, yeah.
I think we probably want to provide you the definitions.
And that's what I'm asking, yeah, that's what I'm really asking because, I mean...
I'll get those for you and I'll have them on the dais tonight so you can see what the definitions are.
Thank you. Because some of those repairs, even though they appear and usually are one, two-hour repairs, if all of a sudden you take a car in for an alternator and the alternator's not in stock and they didn't took the alternator off the car, then it may have to sit there a couple of days.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's when we wrote the definitions, we clearly intended for that not to be, I mean, you can't store any cars on a minor auto repair.
Okay. Thank you. Next one.
2420 River Hill Road, requests ML20 to CW. This is in kind of pretty much industrial area near Loop 12. Staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z approval, eight to zero, no opposition or support. So this, again, is already a heavily industrial area on East Union Bower. They're wanting to build, I believe, in small distribution, I believe, and they just want to get smaller setbacks. So they could do what they want to do in the current zoning, but CW is, allows less intense uses and therefore it allows for smaller setbacks. So that's all they're wanting to do. And these are just, this is subject property and just some of the area. So that's the only reason for the rezoning.
Questions? Okay, next one.
One more. 220 Virginia and 320 North O'Connor, SP1 CN currently. They want to change to the Heritage Crossing District Transit Mixed Use. They want to construct some townhouses. Staff recommends approval, P&amp;Z approval, eight to zero, no opposition or support. This property is directly to the east of the criminal, of the city's Criminal Justice Center. It does have a future land use of Main Street. So this is an area, of course, just across the railroad track is the rail station and we get into our downtown area. So this area is identified as one where we intend for that mixed use, that form-based code to eventually extend into this area as the downtown area and the Heritage Crossing area is successful. So the rezoning is consistent with the future land use. And again, they plan to put townhouses along this site. So the rezoning, and this is the, again, the site with the current HCD, future land use, which is consistent. And just some of the photos. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? They're supposed to be, I think Herzog's supposed to be cleaning that lot up and moving out of there, so that triangle.
The property itself, the subject property?
No, the triangle.
Oh, oh, the triangle.
Where Herzog is right now.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
No, Dart. Dart. Herzog was using it for staging and stuff and storage. And so we've got him to move because we thought those apartments down there, we didn't want them looking at a, at a storage lot. Could maybe work, well, you're in between railroad tracks is a problem.
Yeah, the access, getting access across, but that was kind of the envision is to have that be a core, as long as we can get it across those railroad tracks.
Okay, yeah, that's what we thought about one time. I'm sorry, Brad?
Just a quick question, so is there a way to control kind of the look of townhomes? Because some of the ones off, it's off Pioneer, they look great. I mean, they're really a great addition, really nice. And then there's some other ones, I won't say where, that don't look great. And so, I mean, the ones that they did on Pioneer, I think are fantastic.
So in Heritage, we do enforce our design standards, so there is a masonry requirement. We, we can't determine the architecture, but there are some specifics in Heritage that would require a higher level of aesthetics that we can't apply elsewhere. So yes, the answer is yes.
There's one that comes to mind that falls short. It may be even inherited, so I, I just think, I think it's a good use. I think, I think it'll be a good addition there, and if it's the right look and feel, it's exactly what we want. People here with good disposable income and, you know, being able to bring up the whole area. So I think it's a good concept. I just, I, I want to make sure we have some good minimum design standards.
Philip?
I just want a, a word of caution, although Heritage Crossing, that traditional Heritage District does have limited design standards, they're not robust, and I don't want to give the impression that we can, that we have a great deal of control over the architecture. It's very limited what we can do. So full transparency.
Okay.
Thank you.
You guys have got appointments. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Kayo, you want to read us an executive session, we'll have some meat. And we're gonna take about a 10, 15-minute break before we come back.
The time is now 3:50, and the Irving City Council will convene into a closed executive session to discuss personnel items pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, and to receive legal advice as and if necessary pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071.
The holiday season is upon us, and we have the lineup for holidays at Heritage. On December 7th at 6:00 PM, the parade begins in downtown Irving. Applications to participate in that parade are available at cityofirving.org/parade, and they're due by December 1st. After the December 7th parade, the fun continues in Heritage Park with the traditional tree lighting and other festive activities, including photos with Santa. There's also live music and a drone show. December 13th is holiday movie night. It starts with a performance by the Merry Band of Christmas. Then it's the classic How the Grinch Stole Christmas. There will be food vendors on site and free popcorn for the first 100 people. December 14th is Carol Oki, that's caroling karaoke. December 20th is another holiday movie night, and December 21st is a chance to get photos with Santa. All events are in Heritage Park. Find more details at irvingevents.org.
When I was three years old, my first year dancing, and I saw Clara on the stage and I was like, I want to be her.
Now, at 16 years old, Polly Schofield is living out her dream in this year's production of Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker.
It's like a surreal experience, I love it.
A surreal and exciting experience that allows her to put her own spin on Clara.
I like, took the character and made it into the way I would like to portray her, which is a lot, it's more, has more sass and less little innocent little girl, which I find fun.
Another dancer who's adding a personal touch to his character, the prince, is Nathaniel Yu.
When the attendants for the Sugar Plum bring us tea and coffee and things like that, I'm not gonna pretend I like tea because I don't. I like to add a little touch of silliness without going too overboard with it.
And some dancers, like Gianna Nygaard, wear many hats, performing various characters and working behind the scenes.
I'm helping produce the show. I'm so grateful for all the opportunities I received growing up in this, in Momentum Dance Company community, and I'm trying to give back.
That kind of gratitude and passion is what makes these dancers return to Momentum every year and be part of this breathtaking ballet.
Nutcracker has been my life for my entire life. I don't have a Thanksgiving break, I have a Nutcracker Week. It's been, yeah, it's just been my life for so long, it's just part of me now.
I know I'm gonna have no time, but I also know that I'm gonna love my time at the studio, at rehearsals, working with the kids, being able to work with all the dancers. I love it.
While The Nutcracker has become a valuable part of the dancers, it has also become a cherished community tradition.
It's like a fairy tale, like Cinderella, Sleeping Beauty, they appeal to the younger audiences. And this one also does that, but at the same time, it has like a poise and an elegance that would also appeal to adults and older teens.
The music and the dancing and the story all come together in a really special way that I think captures and entertains audiences year over year. that I think captures and entertains audiences year over year.
This is an amazing opportunity for us to give back.
There's a lot of families in need in Irving, so we're here to do the most we can do.
We're packing toys and bags in preparation for Saturday when we're going to be delivering gifts to over four hundred needy families in the city of Irving.
We're the people that put them out, so, you know, we're kind of the elves, I guess.
The first couple of days, basically, we sort everything, so we have all the donations that come in from the fire stations, from the different events that we've done throughout the year.
They've learned over the years that if we can sort it by age and gender, then whenever they have the application for the families, they can go get exactly what those kids may want. Every year, there's a few things that I'm like.
My favorite toys as a kid.
Maybe Legos.
I've not seen them since I was a kid. We have Rock'em, Sock'em Robots.
I saw a Nerf gun earlier that whichever kid gets that, they're going to be happy campers because that thing is mega.
This is emblematic of the culture of the employees of this city. The culture of wanting to give back and valuing the place where we serve.
It's just good to see the community supports this program, supports the police and fire department so much that, that we're able to do this every year.
Working for the city, you know, you, you get to provide for your family and your kids and, and, but you also get to see all the families in town who don't have the opportunity to provide for their kids. So it's, it's good to be able to help.
We're able to brighten up their Christmas a little bit, so it feels good.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we check out unique cosplayers and creative vendors at the Dallas Fan Festival. And we attend this year's exciting and colorful Diwali celebration. So tune in for the November fifteenth episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel sixteen and Frontier Channel thirty, and on YouTube at The City of Irving, as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
It's meal time at the Irving Animal Care Campus, but today's menu isn't ordinary dog food. This is a holiday supper, perfect for a pupper.
We have chicken, we have canned carrots, green beans, and we have a pumpkin puree.
This is what Thanksgiving looks like for fifty-one dogs, who are patiently waiting to be adopted.
They don't even know where to start.
While some dogs were a little confused.
Did you enjoy Thanksgiving? How was it?
Most gobbled up every bite in their bowl, just like many of us on Thanksgiving.
Where's all your food?
Look at them, they're so happy.
Everybody was very quiet, no barking. Everybody's really happy enjoying their food.
Of course, no Thanksgiving meal is complete without a sweet treat.
It's dessert time. Of course you have to have pumpkin pie.
This isn't dessert. Your dessert's down there.
As is the case at many dinner tables, the pumpkin pies didn't last long. And obviously, the perfect ending to Thanksgiving is a food-induced coma, with these dogs no doubt dreaming of a forever home to spend the holidays.
Take our dog home for the holidays. They deserve it.
Welcome home.
The Lalea family is walking into their new home.
Finally home, yeah. Wait, look at that.
For the very first time.
Beautiful.
And it's mortgage-free.
Whoa. Look at this.
I don't know how to explain it, sir. I'm so thankful.
So grateful, you know, we are so thankful for all this.
Lola's room.
Operation Finally Home and its partners provide homes to veterans. The Laleas always lived in military housing, most recently in Alaska.
We moved from that duty station to another duty station.
This is our first home.
And it is custom designed.
I hear from our camera guys, you had quite the reaction in that walk-in closet.
Oh my gosh, yes.
Is that your favorite feature?
Yes. Yes, yes. Well, I never had a walk-in closet in my whole life. It's amazing. All the hard work they did in this house.
The road to get here was an interesting one.
I got to come clean with you.
What?
This is all for you guys.
In August twenty twenty-three, Operation Finally Home surprised the Laleas with the news they would receive the home.
You passed the interview.
A surprise capped off with a groundbreaking. As construction progressed, the community wrote notes that will forever be part of this home and surround the family with love. We showed them the progress through Zoom, but they have not seen anything else of the site until today.
You know what time he got up this morning? He was up at four o'clock this morning, ready to check out at the hotel.
I was bringing our luggage down.
Four o'clock in the morning.
A full procession, including first responders and Patriot Guard riders, heads toward the home, where Irving Mayor Rick Stover provides the first welcome. Samsoni Lalea was deployed three times to Iraq and he lives with the impacts of serious injuries and PTSD.
When you talk about someone who's committed to their country, that has the tenacity that this gentleman has to not only go out one time and be wounded, but turn around and go out a second time and have a vehicle blown up. And then wanting to go back out again when finally they said enough is enough.
The city of Irving provided the land for this home and two others so far.
We love to use the city of Irving around the country as an example of how to partner with a municipality.
We're proud to have that, that relationship with them. We're proud to be leading by example on giving back.
Hello, family.
The Lalea's new next door neighbor is Luisa Velez. A U.S. Navy veteran and her son Spencer received their home in twenty twenty-two.
Definitely life-changing. I've been able to do way more for him. Let him participate more in the communities. And I hope to have you as my neighbor so one time. They'll settle in and hopefully enjoy everything about it. I know I have. We have.
We are home. That's what I told my wife. I can finally say that we are finally home now.
And home for him means always having grandkids around. Especially in what he believes will be his favorite area, the backyard.
And I look at the backyard, I'll be sitting over there and just watch them playing in the backyard. Just what I'll be, that's what I wanted to.
For me, it's a real give back that I think all of us should be proud of.
A community of people. Everybody ready? Okay. Coming together to help make this house a home. In honor of dedicated service to the country. Thomas Gandy for City Source. Hope in the Heart Land is a musical created by Dallas-based, award-winning songwriter, Curtis Machen. Featuring twenty-two original songs, the show is based on a true story of one family's struggle to survive the Great Depression. Experience this touching musical at the Dupree Theater, December twelfth through December fifteenth. Don't let it be a silent night. Jingle all the way to Heritage Park. Enjoy evening of Christmas. Sing alongs with friends and family. Plus, make holiday ornament crafts and warm up with free hot chocolate for the first one hundred attendees. Continue celebrating holidays at Heritage, December fourteenth at six PM. Splash into Grinchmas with a swim and a screening of the holiday classic, How the Grinch Stole Christmas. Embrace the spirit of the Grinch with twinkling lights, holiday decor, and special surprises at the North Lake Naterium, December fourteenth at five PM. Twenty twenty-five will be a busy year for teams involved with a major project to elevate aquatics and recreation in Irving. We've been telling you a lot about it and Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses is here with some updates. Thanks for coming in, Joe.
Thank you for having me.
Well, first off, how exciting of a time is this? Tell us about what's going on at Mustang Park.
Yeah, there's, this is a super exciting time, you know, especially it's the holiday season and you talk about a Christmas present. Irving residents are going to get three great Christmas presents for the next three years. Mustang is going well and it's going to be the first of its kind for the city of Irving. It's a multi-generational recreation center where you will have a senior component, an aquatic component, a rec component. We'll have an indoor track and a couple, a couple other features I want to keep as a surprise for our Irving residents, but it's going to be amazing. Rate they're off of six thirty-five. We're in the process with design documents and finalizing everything. And hopefully we'll be breaking ground in the early part of next year.
And so what's kind of the long-term timeframe there for Mustang Park?
We're looking at about twenty twenty-seven. Like I said, for the next three years, we'll be opening up a new facility, which is amazing. So, you know, as of course, as you know, twenty-five, we'll be opening up Lee. Twenty-six, we'll be opening up Center Park and then Mustang will be the crowning jewel in twenty-seven.
So Center Park will get a major upgrade. Tell us about that.
Yeah, we are taking out the old pool and we're going to build an indoor naterium attached to the facility. We're going to reorientate the facility, so the, the main entrance will no longer be on the back side. It's going to be on the front side of Center Park, opening it up to the park. Think that's going to really change the whole scope of the project out there, the way that park looks and feels, make it a lot more inviting. I think the residents on that side of town are just going to be amazed at what they're going to get out there.
Well, and we're already seeing a lot of progress out at Lee Park. What should residents know about that pool and what's happening?
You know what, it's, it is an amazing project, what we have at Lee Park. The pool is about the same size as the old pool, but the great thing about it is it's got a hundred percent usable water. With the older pool, you had a good portion of it that was deep water. And so for residents that could not swim, they didn't use it. So when you go to those older style pools, you see most of your people hanging out in the shallow end, having fun, trying to stay cool, but majority of your deep into the water was empty. This one is, there's no, I think five feet is about the deepest water. So you'll have people all over the place. There'll be plenty of play features out there. Essentially, it's a miniature version of our water parks. So it, it's just going to be a great experience for our residents.
Well, it sounds like you're a busy man right now. How unusual is it for a city to take on this many major projects at once?
You know, I went to our national conference and I was talking to people, to directors all over the country and I was telling them about that and people were just amazed. I've never known anybody to do this many projects simultaneously at the same time. And this fast, I mean, this, this conception, our city manager and, and the council and the mayor came up with the idea to do this all at once. They, they put together the funding package for us and we hit the ground running. And I mean, for this to happen in a three-year time period is, is just unbelievable. But that really just speaks to the commitment that the city has to Parks and Recreation and providing those services for our residents and in our staff.
Yeah, what does it say about the city kind of looking at a big picture to make this big of an investment in Parks and Recreation and aquatics?
Yeah, we're listening to our residents, you know, and that's the key factor. We're here to provide these services for our residents. We want to listen to our residents, get some feedback from them. And also keeping our, our finger on the pulse of what's happening outside in other communities. We want Irving to have the same amenities as other communities. We want our residents to feel there's a value that, to live in this city. We want a great Parks and Recreation system where people can continue to come out and enjoy and play and, and create memories.
Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses, thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Stay up to date on all of these projects by visiting cityofirving.org/playirving.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next City Source, see all of the emotion as Operation Finally Home, the city of Irving, and other partners provide a mortgage-free home to a military family. We also have these stories.
Meet the Parks and Rec employees working to light up the night with holiday cheer. Plus, see improvements at the Irving Golf Club that are just one part of the venue's success. That's at six PM on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel sixteen and Frontier Channel thirty, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source. It's time now for Pet of the Week and we're joined with Egan Dobson from the Irving Animal Care Campus. And Baby Girl, tell us a little about Baby Girl.
Yeah, Baby Girl's about two years old. She is a terrier mix. She is super silly, super sweet, and very, very dog-friendly. Pretty much she's a dog we go to if we want to test another dog, see how they do with another friend. She seems to like cats. We're pretty sure she's potty-trained. She came from another house. Baby Girl is one of our extended stay superstars, so her adoption fee is actually reduced.
And like a lot of other pets, she's wearing her Holiday Festive sweater. It's, you kind of have a Black Friday sale running all the way through Christmas, right?
Always, yes. So we have the home for the holidays or ho, ho, home for the holiday special. Where all animals are fifty dollars to adopt, unless they're an extended stay or a critter, then they're only twenty-five or less.
Who could ask for a better Christmas gift than Baby Girl, right?
Oh, right. I mean, we do appreciate people getting animals for Christmas, but we do want to recommend, you know, and obviously let everybody know that it is a lifetime investment. It's not just a present for Christmas, but for life.
And lastly, the Comfort and Joy Drive is also running during the holiday season. Tell us about that.
Yeah, so the comfort and joy is to be able to get donations from people for this Christmas holiday, to be able to provide things that we need here at the shelter during the year.
Well, while Baby Girl wants to see if Santa's at the door, we'll remind you at home that you can check out our websites on the screen below and find some adoptable animals here at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
The Mustangs of Los Kalinas holds a special place in the heart of our city and in the heart of its renowned sculptor, Robert Glenn.
He loved them. And every time we came, people would come, are you Mr. Glenn? And he'd say, yeah. He said, can we get your autograph? And so he would always do it.
Robert Glenn's partner, Susan Stolberger, is sharing fond memories of when the two of them would visit the Mustangs.
And then, don't want to get teary.
Robert passed away in the fall of twenty twenty-three, but his legacy lives on as we celebrate forty years of the historic sculpture that has touched the entire metroplex.
When we were coming in once through the customs in Dallas Airport, the, the customs lady, it was a lady, and she looked at Rob's passport and she looked at Rob and she looked at the passport and she said, are you the man who made our horses? And Rob said, I am. And so she stood up, stuck her head, hey, you go, you all. This man here, he made our horses. And Rob was so embarrassed, but it was so marvelous.
Robert was commissioned by businessman Ben Carpenter in nineteen seventy-six to create the group of wild Mustangs. They were shipped by air from England to Irving in nineteen eighty-four.
I got to see them when they flew them in and they brought them in on a seven forty-seven. And the first time you see that stallion back there, it'd take your breath away.
Sanders Thompson had the opportunity to work with Ben Carpenter in nineteen seventy-two and witness his vision come to life.
One of the things Mr. Carpenter always was keen on is he said, I want Los Kalinas to have a sense of place.
That sense of place has become a desired destination for visitors and the community.
I often choose my traffic pattern to go somewhere in the city so that I go by here just to kind of wave at them or see them.
Mustang Museum Guide Mary Higby values the horses that reminds her of Glenn's kindness.
Robert Glenn came one time as a surprise for me on an occasion that I received an award. And I was so touched that he felt strongly like that, that he wanted to be here for that evening. He was always so generous with his time and patient for photographs and autographs. He said one time that often artists will feel after they've created something, they wish they might have done something just a little bit differently. And he said he never felt that way with the horses. He was satisfied.
After forty years, Robert Glenn's artwork continues to exceed Ben Carpenter's hopeful mission.
He wanted to leave something that would make people smile, make them be proud, and make them understand that they can, they can do great things in their lives.
Local golfer Patrick Hensley is enjoying a round at one of his favorite courses in the area, Irving Golf Club.
The facilities are great. The greens are always in great shape. It's just a pleasure to come out here and play with my friends.
Golfers from across North Texas have flocked to Irving Golf Club since it reopened in twenty nineteen, following an extensive renovation.
When we decided to do this, there were a lot of golf courses closing across the country. But, you know, we knew that there would be an uptick in golf. The numbers are showing that it's still alive. It's still, you know, doing very well.
Before the renovation, the number of rounds played here had fallen to about six thousand a year. But since reopening, that number has skyrocketed nearly seven times that, now averaging more than forty thousand rounds of golf played here annually.
They really love the course. The greens are one of the best in the DFW area. And with the cart paths going in, it's only going to get better.
Crews are currently in the process of replacing the original cart paths, which date back to when the course opened in the nineteen eighties.
Concrete in the city of Irving really don't get along too well. The cart path was literally crumbling.
The new paths are wider around the tee box and green complexes, allowing for two-way traffic while protecting the grass.
And it's kind of like the last big thing that needed to be done in the renovation process. It's an ongoing thing to make sure that we stay on top of the maintenance and keep people coming out here.
New additions to the clubhouse area have golfers hanging out after the round to grab a bite to eat or have a drink. And that food and beverage revenue has Irving Golf Club turning a profit.
They wanted to make sure that the course was affordable. We want to make sure that it's.
They wanted to make sure that the course was affordable. We want to make sure that it's something that anybody that wanted to play had the ability to come out here and play. You got to make the revenue up someplace else. And so food and beverage was was the key. And that's what we want, to grow the game and keep it going.
A renovation that's led to a revival of public golf in Irving, creating memories on the links for years to come.
The New Philharmonic Orchestra of Irving presents its annual holiday sing-along with special guest, the Arts District Chorale. They'll lead a holiday sing-along and perform two great choral works of Christmas, Bax Magnificat and Vivaldi's Gloria. Enjoy this festive event here at Carpenter Hall, December 15th at 3:30 PM. Join the Irving Libraries in celebrating its annual Winter Fest series. Show off your creativity and build your own cramp cracker holiday house with other teens. This holiday craft event takes place here at Valley Ranch Library, December 19th at 6:00 PM. Holidays at Heritage continues with Holiday Movie Night. Bring your blankets and lawn chairs and experience dance performances, plus a free showing of Disney's A Christmas Carol. Free popcorn will be available for the first 100 attendees. Don't be a Scrooge and come down to Heritage Park, December 20th at 7:00 PM.
Irving Public Library has a new mobile kitchen. The kitchen sets the stage for new programming that shows people of all ages how to cook for themselves. Grant money paid for the kitchen, and for now, it's stationed at West Irving Library and moved into meeting rooms for classes.
The library tries to pick up trends, I guess, that that will really benefit our patrons. Cooking is something that everybody likes. I haven't yet met a single person who does not like to eat. With a kitchen, it brings people in and they get to learn to do things.
Classes offered so far have proven popular. Here's what's cooking. On December 26th, kids can learn how to make holiday cookies. And on January 11th, teens will tackle making sushi rolls. More classes for adults will be posted soon. Ingredients are provided and registration is required.
We would like to welcome you to the ribbon cutting celebration of DeLuca Gaucho Pizza and Wine.
There's a lot of neat things to eat here, a lot of good food, and I think people will really enjoy it.
DeLuca is a Brazilian concept pizza place. We serve a style of food that is called rodizio. So people get to enjoy all the food, unlimited food that we have here every day.
We do make our dough from scratch every day, simple ingredients, imported Italian flour. We make our own mozzarella cheese here with natural curd.
We have a variety of flavors. We wanted to be able for everybody to enjoy what we have.
You get to sit down and they bring you a nice salad. They bring you a nice bisque. And the meatballs, if you haven't had the meatballs, are amazing.
We were so glad that about a year ago, we found this amazing location right in the heart of Las Colinas. So we were so thrilled to be opening this new location.
You can come and celebrate as a group or have a small intimate dining experience where you can eat more pizza, enjoy wine, right here in the heart of our community.
It's that time of year, you know, when you untangle lights, thousands and thousands of lights.
Yeah, that's a big battle.
Consider this Santa's sleigh because it means holiday season is on its way.
We could put a zip tie right here.
Irving Parks and Recreation crews are hanging lights and checking them twice.
This is definitely fun for sure, but my job is fun every day. So it's just one to add to the list.
Make that Santa's nice list, a worthy reward for hanging 60,000 lights.
Just going to follow this branch right here. Okay, swing it over to there and we're going to drop a light right there.
All the decor, all the lights that hang from the trees. It's not a small job.
Crews began work on this annual Centennial Park tradition back in mid-November.
Come on, you've got some good arms, right?
And now the final touches are being added before the festive fun opens to the public.
Make sure all the lights are aimed the right way. I love the whole Christmas holiday season. And for, you know, assembling stuff that people enjoy. It's real nice to see every single year.
Spreading holiday cheer one bulb at a time, a team full of elves
Of course, then I go.
right here in Irving.
You go back to the truck.
Robert Cheek for City Source.
When I was three years old, my first year dancing, and I saw Clara on the stage and I was like, I want to be her.
Now, at 16 years old, Polly Schofield is living out her dream in this year's production of Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker.
It's like a surreal experience. I love it.
A surreal and exciting experience that allows her to put her own spin on Clara.
I like took the character and made it into the way I would like to portray her, which is a lot more, has more sass and less little innocent little girl, which I find fun.
Another dancer who's adding a personal touch to his character, the prince, is Nathaniel Yu.
When the attendants for the Sugar Plum bring us tea and coffee and things like that, I'm not going to pretend I like tea because I don't. I like to add a little touch of silliness without going too overboard with it.
And some dancers like Gianna Nygaard wear many hats, performing various characters and working behind the scenes.
I'm helping produce the show. I'm so grateful for all the opportunities I received growing up in this Momentum Dance Company community, and I'm trying to give back.
That kind of gratitude and passion is what makes these dancers return to Momentum every year and be part of this breathtaking ballet.
Nutcracker has been my life for my entire life. I don't have a Thanksgiving break. I have a Nutcracker Week. It's been, yeah, it's just been my life for so long. It's just part of me now.
I know I'm going to have no time, but I also know that I'm going to love my time at the studio, at rehearsals, working with the kids, being able to work with all the dancers. I love it.
While the Nutcracker has become a valuable part of the dancers, it has also become a cherished community tradition.
It's like a fairy tale, like Cinderella, Sleeping Beauty. They appeal to the younger audiences. And this one also does that, but at the same time, it has like a poise and an elegance that would also appeal to adults and older teens. The music and the dancing and the story all come together in a really special way that I think captures and entertains audiences year over year.
This is an amazing opportunity for us to give back.
There's a lot of families in need in Irving, so we're here to do the most we can do.
We're packing toys and bags in preparation for Saturday when we're going to be delivering gifts to over 400 needy families in the City of Irving.
We're the people that put them out. So, you know, we're kind of the elves, I guess.
The first couple of days, basically, we sort everything. So we have all the donations that come in from the fire stations, from the different events that we've done throughout the year.
They've learned over the years that if we can sort it by age and gender, then whenever they have the application for the families, they can go get exactly what those kids may want. Every year, there's a few things that I'm like, ooh.
My favorite toys as a kid.
Maybe Legos.
I've not seen them since I was a kid. We have Rock'em Sock'em Robots.
I saw a Nerf gun earlier that whichever kid gets that, they're going to be happy campers because that thing is mega.
This is emblematic of the culture of the employees of this city. The culture of wanting to give back and valuing the place where we serve.
It's just good to see the community supports this program, supports the police and fire department so much that that we're able to do this every year.
Working for the city, you know, you you get to provide for your family and your kids and and but you also get to see all the families in town who don't have the opportunity to provide for their kids. So it's good to be able to help.
We're able to brighten up their Christmas a little bit, so it feels good.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we kick off Holidays at Heritage with the annual parade and tree lighting. And we attend one of the community's favorite holiday shows, Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker. So tune in for the December 13th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving, as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
It's meal time at the Irving Animal Care Campus, but today's menu isn't ordinary dog food. This is a holiday supper, perfect for a pupper.
We have chicken, we have canned carrots, green beans, and we have pumpkin puree.
This is what Thanksgiving looks like for 51 dogs who are patiently waiting to be adopted.
They don't even know where to start.
While some dogs were a little confused.
Did you enjoy Thanksgiving? How was it?
Most gobbled up every bite in their bowl, just like many of us on Thanksgiving.
Where's all your food?
Look at them. They're so happy. Everybody was very quiet, no barking. Everybody's really happy enjoying their food.
Of course, no Thanksgiving meal is complete without a sweet treat.
It's dessert time. Of course you have to have pumpkin pie.
This isn't dessert. Your dessert's down there.
As is the case at many dinner tables, the pumpkin pies didn't last long. And obviously, the perfect ending to Thanksgiving is a food-induced coma, with these dogs no doubt dreaming of a forever home to spend the holidays.
To take our dog home for the holidays, they deserve it.
Welcome home.
The Lalea family is walking into their new home
Finally, oh yeah, look at that.
For the very first time.
Beautiful. Wow.
And it's mortgage-free.
Whoa. Look at this. I don't know how to explain it, sir. I'm so thankful.
So grateful, you know, we are so thankful for all this. Lola's room.
Operation Finally Home and its partners provide homes to veterans.
Whoa.
The Laleas always lived in military housing, most recently in Alaska.
We moved from that duty station to another duty station.
This is our first home.
And it is custom designed.
I hear from our camera guys, you had quite the reaction in that walk-in closet.
Oh my gosh, yes.
Is that your favorite feature?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Well, I never had a walk-in closet in my whole life. It's amazing. All the hard work they did in this house.
The road to get here was an interesting one.
I got to come clean with you.
What?
This is all for you guys.
In August 2023, Operation Finally Home surprised the Laleas with the news they would receive the home.
You passed the interview.
A surprise capped off with a groundbreaking. As construction progressed, the community wrote notes that will forever be part of this home and surround the family with love. We showed them the progress through Zoom, but they have not seen anything else at the site until today.
You know what time he got up this morning? He was up at four o'clock this morning, ready to check out at the hotel.
I was bringing our luggage down.
Four o'clock in the morning.
A full procession, including first responders and Patriot Guard riders, heads toward the home, where Irving Mayor Rick Stouffer provides the first welcome. Samosone Lalea was deployed three times to Iraq, and he lives with the impacts of serious injuries and PTSD.
When you talk about someone who's committed to their country, that has the tenacity that this gentleman has to not only go out one time and be wounded, but turn around and go out a second time and have a vehicle blown up, and then wanting to go back out again when finally they said enough is enough.
The City of Irving provided the land for this home and two others so far.
We love to use the City of Irving around the country as an example of how to partner with a municipality.
We're proud to have that that relationship with them. We're proud to be leading by example on giving back.
Hello, family.
The Lalea's new next door neighbor is Luisa Valdez. The U.S. Navy veteran and her son Spencer received their home in 2022.
Definitely life-changing. I've been able to do way more for him. Let him participate more in the communities and I hope to have you as my neighbors at one time. They'll settle in and hopefully enjoy everything about it. I know I have. We have.
We are home. That's what I told my wife. I can finally say that we are finally home now.
And home for him means always having grandkids around. Especially in what he believes will be his favorite area, the backyard.
And I look at the backyard, I'll be sitting over there and just watch them playing in the backyard. Just what I'll be, that's what I wanted to. For me, it's a real give back that I think all of us should be proud of.
A community of people coming together to help make this house a home in honor of dedicated service to the country. Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Hope in the Heartland is a musical created by Dallas-based, award-winning songwriter Curtis Machen. Featuring 22 original songs, the show is based on a true story of one family's struggle to survive the Great Depression. Experience this touching musical at the Dupree Theater, December 12th through December 15th. Don't let it be a silent night. Jingle all the way to Heritage Park. Enjoy evening of Christmas sing-alongs with friends and family. Plus, make holiday ornament crafts and warm up with free hot chocolate for the first 100 attendees. Continue celebrating holidays at Heritage, December 14th at 6:00 PM. Splash into Grinchmas with a swim and a screening of the holiday classic, How the Grinch Stole Christmas. Embrace the spirit of the Grinch with twinkling lights, holiday decor, and special surprises at the North Lake Naterium, December 14th at 5:00 PM.
2025 will be a busy year for teams involved with a major project to elevate aquatics and recreation in Irving. We've been telling you a lot about it, and Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses is here with some updates. Thanks for coming in, Joe.
Thank you for having me.
Well, first off, how exciting of a time is this? Tell us about what's going on at Mustang Park.
Yeah, there's, this is a super exciting time, you know, especially it's the holiday season and you talk about a Christmas present. Irving residents are going to get three great Christmas presents for the next three years. Mustang is going well and it's going to be the first of its kind for the City of Irving. It's a multi-generational recreation center where you will have a senior component, an aquatic component, a rec component. We'll have an indoor track and a couple, a couple other features I want to keep as a surprise for our Irving residents, but it's going to be amazing. Right there off of 635, we're in the process with design documents and finalizing everything. And hopefully we'll be breaking ground in the early part of next year.
And so what's kind of the long-term timeframe there for Mustang Park?
We're looking at about 2027. Like I said, for the next three years, we'll be opening up a new facility, which is amazing. So, you know, as of course, as you know, '25, we'll be opening up Lee, '26, we'll be opening up Center Park, and in Mustang, we'll be the crowning jewel in '27.
So Center Park will get a major upgrade. Tell us about that.
Yeah, we are taking out the old pool and we're going to build an indoor and auditorium attached to the facility. We're going to reorientate the facility. So the the main entrance will no longer be on the backside. It's going to be on the front side of Center Park, opening it up to the park. Think that's going to really change the whole scope of the project out there, the way that park looks and feels, make it a lot more inviting. I think the residents on that side of town are just going to be amazed at what they're going to get out there.
Well, and we're already seeing a lot of progress out at Lee Park. What should residents know about that pool and what's happening?
You know what? It is an amazing project, what we have at Lee Park. The pool is about the same size as the old pool, but the great thing about it is it's got 100% usable water. With the older pool, you had a good portion of it that was deep water. And so for residents that could not swim, they didn't use it. So when you go to those older style pools, you see most of your people hanging out in the shallow end, having fun, trying to stay cool, but majority of your deep into the water was empty. This one is, there's no, I think five feet is about the deepest water. So you'll have people all over the place. There'll be plenty of play features out there. Essentially, it's a miniature version of our water parks. So it's just going to be a great experience for our residents.
Well, it sounds like you're a busy man right now. How unusual is it for a city to take on this many major projects at once?
You know, I went to our national conference and I was talking to people, to directors all over the country and I was telling them about that and people were just amazed. I've never known anybody to do this many projects simultaneously at the same time. And this fast. I mean, this this conception, our city manager and the council and the mayor came up with the idea to do this all at once. They put together the funding package for us and we hit the ground running. And I mean, for this to happen in a three-year time period is just unbelievable. But that really just speaks to the commitment that the city has to Parks and Recreation and providing those services for our residents and in our staff.
Yeah, what does it say about the city kind of looking at a big picture to make this big of an investment in Parks and Recreation and aquatics?
Yeah, we're listening to our residents, you know, and that's the key factor. We're here to provide these services for our residents. We want to listen to our residents, get some feedback from them. And also keeping our finger on the and also keeping our finger on the pulse of what's happening outside in other communities. We want Irving to have the same amenities as other communities. We want our residents to feel there's a value to live in this city. We want a great Parks and Recreation system where people can continue to come out and enjoy and play and create memories.
Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses, thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Stay up to date on all of these projects by visiting cityofirving.org/playirving.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next CitySource, see all of the emotion as Operation Finally Home, the city of Irving and other partners provide a mortgage-free home to a military family. We also have these stories.
Meet the Parks and Rec employees working to light up the night with holiday cheer. Plus, see improvements at the Irving Golf Club that are just one part of the venue's success. That's at 6:00 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN CitySource.
It's time now for Pet of the Week, and we're joined with Egan Dobson from the Irving Animal Care Campus. And Baby Girl, tell us a little about Baby Girl.
Yeah, Baby Girl's about two years old. She is a terrier mix. She is super silly, super sweet, and very, very dog-friendly. Pretty much, she's a dog we go to if we want to test another dog, see how they do with another friend. She seems to like cats. We're pretty sure she's potty-trained. She came from another house. Baby Girl is one of our extended stay superstars, so her adoption fee is actually reduced.
And like a lot of other pets, she's wearing her holiday festive sweater. It's, you kind of have a Black Friday sale running all the way through Christmas, right?
Always, yes. So we have the Home for the Holidays or Ho-Ho Home for the Holiday Special. We're all, animals are $50 to adopt, unless they're an extended stay or a critter, then they're only 25 or less.
Who could ask for a better Christmas gift than Baby Girl, right?
Oh, right. I mean, we do appreciate people getting animals for Christmas, but we do want to recommend, you know, and obviously let everybody know that it is a lifetime investment. It's not just a present for Christmas, but for life.
And lastly, the Comfort and Joy Drive is also running during the holiday season. Tell us about that.
Yeah, so the Comfort and Joy is to be able to get donations from people for this Christmas holiday, to be able to provide things that we need here at the shelter during the year.
Well, while Baby Girl wants to see if Santa's at the door, we'll remind you at home that you can check out our websites on the screen below and find some adoptable animals here at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
The Mustangs of Las Colinas holds a special place in the heart of our city and in the heart of its renowned sculptor, Robert Glenn.
He loved them. And every time we came, people would come, are you Mr. Glenn? And he'd say, yeah. He said, can we get your autograph? And so he would always do it.
Robert Glenn's partner Susan Stolberger is sharing fond memories of when the two of them would visit the Mustangs.
And then, don't want to get teary.
Robert passed away in the fall of 2023, but his legacy lives on as we celebrate 40 years of the historic sculpture that has touched the entire metroplex.
When we were coming in once through the customs in Dallas Airport, the customs lady, it was a lady, and she looked at Rob's passport, and she looked at Rob, and she looked at the passport, and she said, are you the man who made our horses? And Rob said, I am. And so she stood up, stuck her head, hey, you go, you all. This man here, he made our horses. And Rob was so embarrassed, but it was so marvelous.
Robert was commissioned by businessman Ben Carpenter in 1976 to create the group of wild Mustangs. They were shipped by air from England to Irving in 1984.
I got to see them when they flew them in. And they brought them in on a 747. And the first time you see that stallion back there, it'd take your breath away.
Sanders Thompson had the opportunity to work with Ben Carpenter in 1972 and witness his vision come to life.
One of the things Mr. Carpenter always was keen on is he said, I want Las Colinas to have a sense of place.
That sense of place has become a desired destination for visitors and the community.
I often choose my traffic pattern to go somewhere in the city so that I go by here, just to kind of wave at them or see them.
Mustang Museum Guide Mary Higbee values the horses that reminds her of Glenn's kindness.
Robert Glenn came one time as a surprise for me on an occasion that I received an award. And I was so touched that he felt strongly like that, that he wanted to be here for that evening. He was always so generous with his time and patient for photographs and autographs. He said one time that often artists will feel, after they've created something, they wish they might have done something just a little bit differently. And he said he never felt that way with the horses. He was satisfied.
After 40 years, Robert Glenn's artwork continues to exceed Ben Carpenter's hopeful mission.
He wanted to leave something that would make people smile, make them be proud, and make them understand that they can, they can do great things in their life.
Local golfer Patrick Hensley is enjoying a round at one of his favorite courses in the area, Irving Golf Club.
The facilities are great. The greens are always in great shape. It's just a pleasure to come out here and play with my friends.
Golfers from across North Texas have flocked to Irving Golf Club since it reopened in 2019, following an extensive renovation.
When we decided to do this, there were a lot of golf courses closing across the country. But, you know, we knew that there would be an uptick in golf. The numbers are showing that it's still alive. It's still, you know, doing very well.
Before the renovation, the number of rounds played here had fallen to about 6,000 a year. But since reopening, that number has skyrocketed nearly seven times that, now averaging more than 40,000 rounds of golf played here annually.
They really love the course. The greens are one of the best in the DFW area. And with the cart paths going in, it's only going to get better.
Crews are currently in the process of replacing the original cart paths, which date back to when the course opened in the 1980s.
Concrete in the city of Irving really don't get along too well. The cart path was literally crumbling.
The new paths are wider around the tee box and green complexes, allowing for two-way traffic while protecting the grass.
And it's kind of like the last big thing that needed to be done in the renovation process. It's an ongoing thing to make sure that we stay on top of the maintenance to keep people coming out here.
New additions to the clubhouse area have golfers hanging out after the round to grab a bite to eat or have a drink. And that food and beverage revenue has Irving Golf Club turning a profit.
They wanted to make sure that the course was affordable. We want to make sure that it's something that anybody that wanted to play had the ability to come out here and play. You got to make the revenue up someplace else. And so food and beverage was the key. And that's what we want, to grow the game and keep it going.
A renovation that's led to a revival of public golf in Irving, creating memories on the links for years to come.
The New Philharmonic Orchestra of Irving presents its annual holiday sing-along with special guest, the Arts District Chorale. The lead holiday sing-along will perform two great choral works of Christmas, Bach's Magnificat and Vivaldi's Gloria. Enjoy this festive event here at Carpenter Hall, December 15th at 3:30 p.m. Join the Irving Libraries in celebrating its annual winter fest series. Show off your creativity and build your own crumb-cracker holiday house with other teens. This holiday craft event takes place here at Valley Ranch Library, December 19th at 6:00 p.m. Holidays at Heritage continues with Holiday Movie Night. Bring your blankets and lawn chairs and experience dance performances, plus a free showing of Disney's A Christmas Carol. Free popcorn will be available for the first 100 attendees. Don't be a Scrooge and come down to Heritage Park, December 20th at 7:00 p.m.
Irving Public Library has a new mobile kitchen. The kitchen sets the stage for new programming that shows people of all ages how to cook for themselves. Grant money paid for the kitchen, and for now, it's stationed at West Irving Library and moved into meeting rooms for classes.
The library tries to pick up trends, I guess, that will really benefit our patrons. Cooking is something that everybody likes. I haven't yet met a single person who does not like to eat. With the kitchen, it brings people in and they get to learn to do things.
Classes offered so far have proven popular. Here's what's cooking. On December 26th, kids can learn how to make holiday cookies. And on January 11th, teens will tackle making sushi rolls. More classes for adults will be posted soon. Ingredients are provided and registration is required.
We would like to welcome you to the ribbon-cutting celebration of DeLuca Gaucho Pizza and Wine.
There's a lot of neat things to eat here, a lot of good food, and I think people will really enjoy it.
DeLuca is a Brazilian concept pizza place. We serve a style of food that is called rodizio. So people get to enjoy all the food, unlimited food that we have here every day.
We do make our dough from scratch every day. Simple ingredients, imported Italian flour. We make our own mozzarella cheese here with natural curd.
We have a variety of flavors. We wanted to be able for everybody to enjoy what we have.
You get to sit down and they bring you a nice salad. They bring you a nice bisque and the meatballs. If you haven't had the meatballs, they're amazing.
We were so glad that about a year ago, we found this amazing location right in the heart of Las Colinas. So we were so thrilled to be opening this new location.
You can come and celebrate as a group or have a small intimate dining experience where you can eat more pizza, enjoy wine, right here in the heart of our community.
It's that time of year, you know, when you untangle lights, thousands and thousands of lights.
Yeah, that's the big battle.
Consider this Santa's sleigh, because it means holiday season is on its way.
We could put a zip tie right here.
Irving Parks and Recreation crews are hanging lights and checking them twice.
This is definitely fun for sure, but my job is fun every day, so. It's just one to add to the list.
Make that Santa's nice list, a worthy reward for hanging 60,000 lights.
Just going to follow this branch right here. Okay, swing it over there. And we're going to drop a light right there.
All the decor, all the lights that hang from the trees. It's not a small job.
Crews began work on this annual centennial park tradition back in mid-November.
Come on, you've got some good arms right.
And now the final touches are being added before the festive fun opens to the public.
Make sure all the lights are aimed the right way. I love the whole Christmas holiday season and for assembling stuff that people enjoy. It's real nice to see every single year.
Spreading holiday cheer one bulb at a time. A team full of elves
Of course, I go.
Right here in Irving.
Do you go back to the truck?
Robert Cheek for CitySource.
When I was three years old, my first year dancing, and I saw Clara on the stage, and I was like, I want to be her.
Now, at 16 years old, Polly Schofield is living out her dream in this year's production of Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker.
It's like a surreal experience. I love it.
A surreal and exciting experience that allows her to put her own spin on Clara.
I like took the character and made it into the way I would like to portray her, which is a lot, has more sass and less little innocent little girl, which I find fun.
Another dancer who's adding a personal touch to his character, the prince, is Nathaniel Yu.
When the attendants for the Sugar Plum bring us tea and coffee and things like that, I'm not going to pretend I like tea, because I don't. I like to add a little touch of silliness without going too overboard with it.
And some dancers, like Gianna Nygaard, wear many hats, performing various characters and working behind the scenes.
I'm helping produce the show. I'm so grateful for all the opportunities I've received growing up in this Momentum Dance Company community. And I'm trying to give back.
That kind of gratitude and passion is what makes these dancers return to Momentum every year and be part of this breathtaking ballet.
Nutcracker has been my life for my entire life. I don't have a Thanksgiving break. I have a Nutcracker Week. It's been, yeah, it's just been my life for so long. It's just part of me now.
I know I'm going to have no time, but I also know that I'm going to love my time at the studio, at rehearsals, working with the kids, being able to work with all the dancers. I love it.
While The Nutcracker has become a valuable part of the dancers, it has also become a cherished community tradition.
It's like a fairy tale, like Cinderella and Sleeping Beauty. They appeal to the younger audiences. And this one also does that, but at the same time, it has like a poise and an elegance that would also appeal to adults and older teens.
The music and the dancing and the story all come together in a really special way that I think captures and entertains audiences year over year.
This is an amazing opportunity for us to give back.
There's a lot of families in need in Irving, so we're here to do the most we can do.
We're packing toys and bags in preparation for Saturday, when we're going to be delivering gifts to over 400 needy families in the city of Irving.
We're the people that put them out. So, yeah, we're kind of the elves, I guess. The first couple of days, basically, we sort everything. So we have all the donations that come in from the fire stations, from the different events that we've done throughout the year.
They've learned over the years that if we can sort it by age and gender, then whenever they have the application for the families, they can go get exactly what those kids may want. Every year, there's a few things that I'm like, woo.
My favorite toys as a kid, maybe Legos. I've not seen them since I was a kid. We have Rock'em, Sock'em Robots.
I saw a Nerf gun earlier that whichever kid gets that, they're going to be happy campers, because that thing is mega.
This is emblematic of the culture of the employees of this city, the culture of wanting to give back and valuing the place where we serve.
It's just good to see the community supports this program and supports the police and fire department so much that we're able to do this every year. Working for the city, you know, you get to provide for your family and your kids. And, but you also get to see all the families in town who don't have the opportunity to provide for their kids. So it's good to be able to help.
We're able to brighten up their Christmas a little bit, so it feels good.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we kick off holidays at Heritage with the annual parade and tree lighting. And we attend one of the community's favorite holiday shows, Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker. So tune in for the December 13th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
It's meal time at the Irving Animal Care Campus, but today's menu isn't ordinary dog food. This is a holiday supper, perfect for a pupper.
We have chicken, we have canned carrots, green beans, and we have a pumpkin puree.
This is what Thanksgiving looks like for 51 dogs who are patiently waiting to be adopted.
They don't even know where to start.
While some dogs were a little confused.
Did you enjoy Thanksgiving? How was it?
Most gobbled up every bite in their bowl, just like many of us on Thanksgiving.
Where's all your food?
Look at them, they're so happy. Everybody was very quiet, no barking. Everybody's really happy enjoying their food.
Of course, no Thanksgiving meal is complete without a sweet treat.
It's dessert time. Of course you have to have pumpkin pie.
This isn't dessert. Your dessert's down there.
As is the case at many dinner tables, the pumpkin pies didn't last long. And obviously, the perfect ending to Thanksgiving is a food-induced coma, with these dogs no doubt dreaming of a forever home to spend the holidays.
To take our dog home for the holidays, they deserve it.
Welcome home.
The Lalea family is walking into their new home
Finally, oh yeah, look at that.
For the very first time.
Beautiful.
And it's mortgage-free.
Whoa. Look at this. I don't know how to explain it, sir. I'm so thankful.
So grateful, you know, we are so thankful for all this.
Lola's room.
Operation Finally Home and its partners provide homes to veterans. The Laleas always lived in military housing, most recently in Alaska.
We moved from a duty station to another duty station.
This is our first home.
And it is custom designed.
I hear from our camera guys, you had quite the reaction in that walk-in closet.
Oh my gosh, yes.
Is that your favorite feature?
Yes. Yes, yes. Well, I never had a walk-in closet in my whole life. It's amazing. All the hard work they did in this house.
The road to get here was an interesting one.
I gotta come clean with you.
What?
This is all for you guys.
In August 2023, Operation Finally Home surprised the Laleas with the news they would receive the home.
You passed the interview.
A surprise capped off with a groundbreaking. As construction progressed, the community wrote notes that will forever be part of this home and surround the family with love. We showed them the progress through Zoom, but they have not seen anything else at the site until today.
You know what time he got up this morning? He was up at four o'clock this morning, ready to check out at the hotel.
I was bringing our luggage down.
Four o'clock in the morning.
A full procession, including first responders and Patriot Guard riders heads toward the home, where Irving Mayor Rick Stouffer provides the first welcome. Samosone Lalea was deployed three times to Iraq, and he lives with the impacts of serious injuries and PTSD.
When you talk about someone who's committed to their country, that has the tenacity that this gentleman has to not only go out one time and be wounded, but turn around and go out a second time and have a vehicle blown up, and then wanting to go back out again when finally they said enough is enough.
The city of Irving provided the land for this home and two others so far.
We love to use the city of Irving around the country as an example of how to partner with a municipality.
We're proud to have that, that relationship with them. We're proud to be leading by example on giving back.
Hello, family.
The Lalea's new next-door neighbor is Luisa Valdez. A U.S. Navy veteran and her son Spencer received their home in 2022.
Definitely life-changing. I've been able to do way more for him, let him participate more in the communities. And I hope to have you as my neighbors at one time. They'll settle in and hopefully enjoy everything about it. I know I have, we have.
We are home. That's what I told my wife. I can finally say that we are finally home now.
And home for him means always having grandkids around, especially in what he believes will be his favorite area, the backyard.
And I look at the backyard. I'll be sitting over there and just watch them playing in the backyard. Just what all day, that's what I wanted to.
For me, it's a real give back that I think all of us should be proud of.
A community of people. Coming together to help make this house a home. In honor of dedicated service to the country. Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Hope in the Heartland is a musical created by Dallas-based award-winning songwriter Curtis Machen. Featuring 22 original songs, the show is based on a true story of one family's struggle to survive the Great Depression. Experience this touching musical at the Dupree Theater, December 12 through December 15. Don't let it be a silent night. Jingle all the way to Heritage Park. Enjoy evening of Christmas sing-alongs with friends and family. Plus, make holiday ornament crafts and warm up with free hot chocolate for the first 100 attendees. Continue celebrating holidays at Heritage, December 14 at 6:00 p.m. Splash into Grinchmas with a swim and a screening of the holiday classic, How the Grinch Stole Christmas. Embrace the spirit of the Grinch with twinkling lights, holiday decor, and special surprises at the North Lake Natatorium, December 14 at 5:00 p.m. 2025 will be a busy year for teams involved with a major project to elevate aquatics and recreation in Irving. We've been telling you a lot about it, and Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses is here with some updates. Thanks for coming in, Joe.
Thank you for having me.
Well, first off, how exciting of a time is this? Tell us about what's going on at Mustang Park.
Yeah, this is a super exciting time, you know, especially it's the holiday season and you talk about a Christmas present. Irving residents are going to get three great Christmas presents for the next three years. Mustang is going well and it's going to be the first of its kind for the city of Irving. It's a multi-generational recreation center where you will have a senior component, an aquatic component, a rec component. We'll have an indoor track and a couple, a couple other features I want to keep as a surprise for our Irving residents. But it's going to be amazing. Right there off of 635, we're in the process with design documents and finalizing everything. And hopefully, we'll be breaking ground in the early part of next year.
And so what's kind of the long-term timeframe there for Mustang Park?
We're looking at about 2027. Like I said, for the next three years, we'll be opening up a new facility, which is amazing. So, you know, as of course, as you know, '25, we'll be opening up Lee. '26, we'll be opening up Center Park. And in Mustang, we'll be the crowning jewel in '27.
So Center Park will get a major upgrade. Tell us about that.
Yeah, we are taking out the old pool and we're going to build an indoor natatorium attached to the facility. We're going to reorientate the facility. So the main entrance will no longer be on the back side. It's going to be on the front side of Center Park, opening it up to the park. I think that's going to really change the whole scope of the project out there, the way that park looks and feels, make it a lot more inviting. I think the residents on that side of town are just going to be amazed at what they're going to get out there.
Well, and we're already seeing a lot of progress out at Lee Park. What should residents know about that pool and what's happening?
You know what? It is an amazing project, what we have at Lee Park. The pool is about the same size as the old pool, but the great thing about it is it's got 100% usable water. With the older pool, you had a good portion of it that was deep water. And so for residents that could not swim, they didn't use it. So when you go to those older-style pools, you see most of your people hanging out in the shallow end, having fun, trying to stay cool, but majority of your deep end of the water was empty. This one is, there's no, I think five feet is about the deepest water. So you'll have people all over the place. There'll be plenty of play features out there. Essentially, it's a miniature version of our water parks. So it's just going to be a great experience for our residents.
Well, it sounds like you're a busy man right now. How unusual is it for a city to take on this many major projects at once?
You know, I went to our national conference and I was talking to people, to directors all over the country, and I was telling them about that, and people were just amazed. I've never known anybody to do this many projects simultaneously at the same time and this fast. I mean, this conception, our city manager and the council and the mayor came up with the idea to do this all at once. They put together the funding package for us and we hit the ground running. And I mean, for this to happen in a three-year time period is just unbelievable. But that really just speaks to the commitment that the city has to Parks and Recreation and providing those services for our residents and in our staff.
Yeah, what does it say about the city, kind of looking at a big picture, to make this big of an investment in Parks and Recreation and aquatics?
Yeah, we're listening to our residents, you know, and that's the key factor. We're here to provide these services for our residents. We want to listen to our residents, get some feedback from them, and also keeping our finger on the pulse of what's happening outside in other communities. We want Irving to have the same amenities as other communities. We want our residents to feel there's a value to live in this city. We want a great Parks and Recreation system where people can continue to come out and enjoy and play and create memories.
Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses, thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Stay up to date on all of these projects by visiting cityofirving.org/playirving.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next City Source, see all of the emotion as Operation Finally Home, the city of Irving and other partners provide a mortgage-free home to a military family. We'll also have these stories.
Meet the Parks and Rec employees working to light up the night with holiday cheer. Plus, see improvements at the Irving Golf Club that are just one part of the venue's success. That's at 6:00 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
It's time now for Pet of the Week, and we're joined with Egan Dobson from the Irving Animal Care Campus. And Baby Girl, tell us a little about Baby Girl.
Yeah, Baby Girl's about two years old. She is a terrier mix. She is super silly, super sweet, and very, very dog-friendly. Pretty much, she's a dog we go to if we want to test another dog, see how they do with another friend. She seems to like cats. We're pretty sure she's potty-trained because she came from another house. Baby Girl is one of our extended stay superstars, so her adoption fee is actually reduced.
And like a lot of other pets, she's wearing her Holiday Festive sweater. It's, you kind of have a Black Friday sale running all the way through Christmas, right?
Always, yes. So we have the home for the holidays or ho, ho, home for the holiday special, where all animals are $50 to adopt, unless they're an extended stay or a critter, then they're only 25 or less.
Who could ask for a better Christmas gift than Baby Girl, right?
Oh, right. I mean, we do appreciate people getting animals for Christmas, but we do want to recommend, you know, and obviously let everybody know that it is a lifetime investment. It's not just a present for Christmas, but for life.
And lastly, the Comfort and Joy Drive is also running during the holiday season. Tell us about that.
Yeah, so the Comfort and Joy is to be able to get donations from people for this Christmas holiday, to be able to provide things that we need here at the shelter during the year.
Well, while Baby Girl wants to see if Santa's at the door, we'll remind you at home that you can check out our websites on the screen below and find some adoptable animals here at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
The Mustangs of Las Colinas holds a special place in the heart of our city and in the heart of its renowned sculptor, Robert Glenn.
He loved them. And every time we came, people would come, are you Mr. Glenn? And he'd say, yeah. He said, can we get your autograph? And so he would always do it.
Robert Glenn's partner Susan Stolberger is sharing fond memories of when the two of them would visit the Mustangs.
And then, don't want to get teary.
Robert passed away in the fall of 2023, but his legacy lives on as we celebrate 40 years of the historic sculpture that has touched the entire metroplex.
When we were coming in once to the customs in Dallas Airport, the customs lady, it was a lady, and she looked at Rob's passport, and she looked at Rob, and she looked at the passport. And she said, are you the man who made our horses? And Rob said, I am. And so she stood up, stuck her head, hey, you go, you all. This man here, he made our horses. And Rob was so embarrassed, but it was so marvelous.
Robert was commissioned by businessman Ben Carpenter in 1976 to create the group of wild Mustangs. They were shipped by air from England to Irving in 1984.
I got to see them when they flew them in. And they brought them in on a 747. And the first time you see that stallion back there, it'd take your breath away.
Sanders Thompson had the opportunity to work with Ben Carpenter in 1972 and witness his vision come to life.
One of the things Mr. Carpenter always was keen on is he said, I want Las Colinas to have a sense of place.
That sense of place has become a desired destination for visitors and the community.
I often choose my traffic pattern to go somewhere in the city so that I go by here just to kind of wave at them or see them.
Mustang Museum Guide Mary Higbee values the horses that reminds her of Glenn's kindness.
Robert Glenn came one time as a surprise for me on an occasion that I received an award. And I was so touched that he felt strongly like that, that he wanted to be here for that evening. He was always so generous with his time and patient for photographs and autographs. He said one time that often artists will feel, after they've created something, they wish they might have done something just a little bit differently. And he said he never felt that way with the horses. He was satisfied.
After 40 years, Robert Glenn's artwork continues to exceed Ben Carpenter's hopeful mission.
He wanted to leave something that would make people smile, make them be proud, and make them understand that they can, they can do great things in their lives.
Local golfer Patrick Hensley is enjoying a round at one of his favorite courses in the area, Irving Golf Club.
The facilities are great. The greens are always in great shape. It's just a pleasure to come out here and play with my friends.
Golfers from across North Texas have flocked to Irving Golf Club since it reopened in 2019, following an extensive renovation.
When we decided to do this, there were a lot of golf courses closing across the country. But, you know, we knew that there would be an uptick in golf. The numbers are showing that it's still alive. It's still, you know, doing very well.
Before the renovation, the number of rounds played here had fallen to about 6,000 a year. But since reopening, that number has skyrocketed nearly seven times that, now averaging more than 40,000 rounds of golf played here annually.
They really love the course. The greens are one of the best in the DFW area. And with the cart paths going in, it's only going to get better.
Crews are currently in the process of replacing the original cart paths, which date back to when the course opened in the 1980s.
Concrete in the city of Irving really don't get along too well. The cart path was literally crumbling.
The new paths are wider around the tee box and green complexes, allowing for two-way traffic while protecting the grass.
And it's kind of like the last big thing that needed to be done in the renovation process. It's an ongoing thing to make sure that we stay on top of the maintenance and keep people coming out here.
New additions to the clubhouse area have golfers hanging out after the round to grab a bite to eat or have a drink. And that food and beverage revenue has Irving Golf Club turning a profit.
They wanted to make sure that the course was affordable. We want to make sure that it's something that anybody that wanted to play had the ability to come out here and play. You got to make the revenue up someplace else. And so food and beverage was, was the key. And that's what we want, to grow the game and keep it going.
A renovation that's led to a revival of public golf in Irving, creating memories on the links for years to come.
The New Philharmonic Orchestra of Irving presents its annual holiday sing-along with special guest, the Arts District Corral. They'll lead a holiday sing-along and perform two great choral works of Christmas, Bax Magnificat and Vivaldi's Gloria. Enjoy this festive event here at Carpenter Hall, December 15 at 3:30 p.m. Join the Irving Libraries in celebrating its annual winter fest series. Show off your creativity and build your own cramp cracker holiday house with other teens. This holiday craft event takes place here at Valley Ranch Library, December 19 at 6:00 p.m. Holidays at Heritage continues with Holiday Movie Night. Bring your blankets and lawn chairs and experience dance performances, plus a free showing of Disney's A Christmas Carol. Free popcorn will be available for the first 100 attendees. Don't be a Scrooge and come down to Heritage Park, December 20 at 7:00 p.m.
Irving Public Library has a new mobile kitchen. The kitchen sets the stage for new programming that shows people of all ages how to cook for themselves. Grant money paid for the kitchen, and for now, it's stationed at West Irving Library and moved into meeting rooms for classes.
The library tries to pick up trends, I guess, that will really benefit our patrons. Cooking is something that everybody likes. I haven't yet met a single person who does not like to eat. With a kitchen, it brings people in and they get to learn to do things.
Classes offered so far have proven popular. Here's what's cooking. On December 26, kids can learn how to make holiday cookies. And on January 11, teens will tackle making sushi rolls. More classes for adults will be posted soon. Ingredients are provided and registration is required.
We would like to welcome you to the ribbon-cutting celebration of De Luca Gaucho Pizza and Wine.
There's a lot of neat things to eat here, a lot of good food, and I think people will really enjoy it.
De Luca is a Brazilian concept pizza place. We serve a style of food that is called Brodisio. So people get to enjoy all the food, unlimited food that we have here every day.
We do make our dough from scratch every day. Simple ingredients, imported Italian flour. We make our own mozzarella cheese here with natural curd.
We have a variety of flavors. We wanted to be able for everybody to enjoy what we have.
You get to sit down and they bring you a nice salad. They bring you a nice bisque and the meatballs. If you haven't had the meatballs, they're amazing.
We were so glad that about a year ago, we found this amazing location right in the heart of Las Colinas. So we were so thrilled to be opening this new location.
You can come and celebrate as a group or have a small intimate dining experience where you can eat more pizza, enjoy wine, right here in the heart of our community.
It's that time of year, you know, when you untangle lights, thousands and thousands of lights.
Yeah, that's the big battle.
Consider this Santa's sleigh because it means holiday season is on its way.
We could put a zip tie right here.
Irving Parks and Recreation crews are hanging lights and checking them twice.
This is definitely fun for sure, but my job is fun every day, so. It's just one to add to the list.
Make that Santa's Nice List, a worthy reward for hanging 60,000 lights.
Just gonna follow this branch right here. Okay, swing it over there. And we're gonna drop a light right there.
All the decor, all the lights that hang from the trees. It's not a small job.
Crews began work on this annual Centennial Park tradition back in mid-November. Crews began work on this annual Centennial Park tradition back in mid-November.
Come on, you got some good arms right.
And now the final touches are being added before the festive fun opens to the public.
Make sure all the lights are aimed the right way. I love the whole Christmas holiday season. And for, you know, assembling stuff that people enjoy. It's real nice to see every single year.
Spreading holiday cheer one bulb at a time. A team full of elves.
Where's that go?
Right here in Irving.
You go back to the truck.
Robert Cheek for City Source.
When I was three years old, my first year dancing, and I saw Clara on the stage, and I was like, "I want to be her."
Now, at 16 years old, Polly Schofield is living out her dream in this year's production of Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker.
It's like a surreal experience. I love it.
A surreal and exciting experience that allows her to put her own spin on Clara.
I like took the character and made it into the way I would like to portray her, which is a lot more, has more sass and less little innocent little girl, which I find fun.
Another dancer who's adding a personal touch to his character, the prince, is Nathaniel Yu.
When the attendants for the Sugar Plum bring us tea and coffee and things like that, I'm not going to pretend I like tea, because I don't. I like to add a little touch of silliness without going too overboard with it.
And some dancers, like Gianna Nygaard, wear many hats, performing various characters and working behind the scenes.
I'm helping produce the show. I'm so grateful for all the opportunities I received growing up in this Momentum Dance Company community. And I'm trying to give back.
That kind of gratitude and passion is what makes these dancers return to Momentum every year and be part of this breathtaking ballet.
Nutcracker has been my life for my entire life. I don't have a Thanksgiving break. I have a Nutcracker Week. It's been, yeah, it's just been my life for so long. It's just part of me now.
I know I'm going to have no time, but I also know that I'm going to love my time at the studio, at rehearsals, working with the kids, being able to work with all the dancers. I love it.
While the Nutcracker has become a valuable part of the dancers, it has also become a cherished community tradition.
It's like a fairy tale, like Cinderella and Sleeping Beauty. They appeal to the younger audiences. And this one also does that. But at the same time, it has like a poise and an elegance that would also appeal to adults and older teens.
The music and the dancing and the story all come together in a really special way that I think captures and entertains audiences year over year.
This is an amazing opportunity for us to give back.
There's a lot of families in need in Irving, so we're here to do the most we can do.
We're packing toys and bags in preparation for Saturday, when we're going to be delivering gifts to over 400 needy families in the city of Irving.
We're the people that put them out. So, you know, we're kind of the elves, I guess.
The first couple of days, basically, we sort everything. So we have all the donations that come in from the fire stations, from the different events that we've done throughout the year.
They've learned over the years that if we can sort it by age and gender, then whenever they have the application for the families, they can go get exactly what those kids may want. Every year, there's a few things that I'm like, "Ooh."
My favorite toy as a kid.
Maybe Legos.
I've not seen them since I was a kid. We have Rock'em, Sock'em Robots.
I saw a Nerf gun earlier that whichever kid gets that, they're going to be happy campers, because that thing is mega.
This is emblematic of the culture of the employees of this city, the culture of wanting to give back and valuing the place where we serve.
It's just good to see the community supports this program, supports the police and fire department so much that we're able to do this every year.
Working for the city, you know, you get to provide for your family and your kids. And but you also get to see all the families in town who don't have the opportunity to provide for their kids. So it's good to be able to help.
We're able to brighten up their Christmas a little bit, so it feels good.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we kick off Holidays at Heritage with the annual parade and tree lighting. And we attend one of the community's favorite holiday shows, Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker. So tune in for the December 13th episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and on YouTube at The City of Irving as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
It's meal time at the Irving Animal Care Campus. But today's menu isn't ordinary dog food. This is a holiday supper, perfect for a pupper.
We have chicken, we have canned carrots, green beans, and we have pumpkin puree.
This is what Thanksgiving looks like for 51 dogs who are patiently waiting to be adopted.
They don't even know where to start.
While some dogs were a little confused.
Did you enjoy Thanksgiving? How was it?
Most gobble up every bite in their bowl, just like many of us on Thanksgiving.
Where's all your food?
Look at them, they're so happy.
Everybody was very quiet, no barking. Everybody was really happy, enjoying their food.
Of course, no Thanksgiving meal is complete without a sweet treat.
It's dessert time. Of course, you have to have pumpkin pie.
This isn't dessert. Your dessert's down there.
As is the case at many dinner tables, the pumpkin pies didn't last long. And obviously, the perfect ending to Thanksgiving is a food-induced coma, with these dogs no doubt dreaming of a forever home to spend the holidays.
To take our dog home for the holidays, they deserve it.
Welcome home.
The Lalea family is walking into their new home.
Finally home, yeah. Wait, look at that.
For the very first time.
Beautiful.
And it's mortgage-free.
Whoa. Look at this. I don't know how to explain it, sir. I'm so thankful.
So grateful, you know, we are so thankful for all this. Lola's room.
Operation Finally Home and its partners provide homes to veterans.
Whoa.
The Laleas always lived in military housing, most recently in Alaska.
We moved from that duty station to another duty station.
This is our first home.
And it is custom designed.
I hear from our camera guys, you had quite the reaction in that walk-in closet.
Oh my gosh, yes.
Is that your favorite feature?
Yes, yes. Well, I never had a walk-in closet in my whole life. It's amazing. All the hard work they did in this house.
The road to get here was an interesting one.
I got to complain with you.
What?
This is all for you guys.
In August 2023, Operation Finally Home surprised the Laleas with the news they would receive the home.
You passed the interview.
A surprise capped off with a groundbreaking. As construction progressed, the community wrote notes that will forever be part of this home and surround the family with love. We showed them the progress through Zoom, but they have not seen anything else at the site until today.
You know what time he got up this morning? He was up at four o'clock this morning, ready to check out at the hotel.
I was bringing our luggage down.
Four o'clock in the morning.
A full procession, including first responders and Patriot Guard riders, heads toward the home, where Irving Mayor Rick Stover provides the first welcome.
Sure, how you doing? All right? Glad you're doing fairly well in the weather.
Samsoni Lalea was deployed three times to Iraq, and he lives with the impacts of serious injuries and PTSD.
When you talk about someone who's committed to their country, that has the tenacity that this gentleman has to not only go out one time and be wounded, but turn around and go out a second time and have a vehicle blown up, and then wanting to go back out again when finally they said enough is enough.
The city of Irving provided the land for this home and two others so far.
We love to use the city of Irving around the country as an example of how to partner with a municipality.
We're proud to have that, that relationship with them. We're proud to be leading by example on giving back.
Hello, family.
The Lalea's new next-door neighbor is Luisa Valdez. A U.S. Navy veteran and her son Spencer received their home in 2022.
Definitely life-changing. I've been able to do way more for him, let him participate more in the communities. And I hope to have yours my neighbor so one time. They'll settle in and hopefully enjoy everything about it. I know I have, we have.
We are home. That's what I told my wife. I can finally say that we are finally home now.
And home for him means always having grandkids around, especially in what he believes will be his favorite area, the backyard.
And I look at the backyard. I'll be sitting over there and just watch them playing in the backyard. It's just what I'll be. That's what I wanted to. For me, it's a real give back that I think all of us should be proud of.
A community of people coming together to help make this house a home in honor of dedicated service to the country. Thomas Gandy for City Source.
Hope in the Heartland is a musical created by Dallas-based, award-winning songwriter Curtis Machen. Featuring 22 original songs, the show is based on the true story of one family's struggle to survive the Great Depression. Experience this touching musical at the Dupree Theater, December 12th through December 15th. Don't let it be a silent night. Jingle all the way to Heritage Park. Enjoy evening of Christmas sing-alongs with friends and family. Plus, make holiday ornament crafts and warm up with free hot chocolate for the first 100 attendees. Continue celebrating Holidays at Heritage, December 14th at 6 p.m. Splash into Grinchmas with a swim and a screening of the holiday classic, How the Grinch Stole Christmas. Embrace the spirit of the Grinch with twinkling lights, holiday decor, and special surprises at the North Lake Naterium, December 14th at 5 p.m.
2025 will be a busy year for teams involved with a major project to elevate aquatics and recreation in Irving. We've been telling you a lot about it, and Irving Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses is here with some updates. Thanks for coming in, Joe.
Thank you for having me.
Well, first off, how exciting of a time is this? Tell us about what's going on at Mustang Park.
Yeah, this is a super exciting time, you know, especially it's the holiday season. And you talk about a Christmas present. Irving residents are going to get three great Christmas presents for the next three years. Mustang is going well, and it's going to be the first of its kind for the city of Irving. It's a multi-generational recreation center where you will have a senior component, an aquatic component, a rec component. We'll have an indoor track and a couple, a couple other features I want to keep as a surprise for our Irving residents. But it's going to be amazing. Right there off of 635, we're in the process with design documents and finalizing everything. And hopefully, we'll be breaking ground in the early part of next year.
And so what's kind of the long-term timeframe there for Mustang Park?
We're looking at about 2027. Like I said, for the next three years, we'll be opening up a new facility, which is amazing. So, you know, of course, as you know, '25, we'll be opening up Lee. '26, we'll be opening up Center Park. And in Mustang, we'll be the crowning jewel in '27.
So Center Park will get a major upgrade. Tell us about that.
Yeah, we are taking out the old pool, and we're going to build an indoor naterium attached to the facility. We're going to reorientate the facility. So the main entrance will no longer be on the back side. It's going to be on the front side of Center Park, opening it up to the park. I think that's going to really change the whole scope of the project out there, the way that park looks and feels, make it a lot more inviting. I think the residents on that side of town are just going to be amazed at what they're going to get out there.
Well, and we're already seeing a lot of progress out at Lee Park. What should residents know about that pool and what's happening?
You know what? It is an amazing project, what we have at Lee Park. The pool is about the same size as the old pool, but the great thing about it is it's got 100% usable water. With the older pool, you had a good portion of it that was deep water. And so for residents that could not swim, they didn't use it. So when you go to those older-style pools, you see most of your people hanging out in the shallow end, having fun, trying to stay cool. But majority of your deep end of the water was empty. This one is, there's no, I think five feet is about the deepest water. So you'll have people all over the place. There'll be plenty of play features out there. Essentially, it's a miniature version of our water parks. So it's just going to be a great experience for our residents.
Well, it sounds like you're a busy man right now. How unusual is it for a city to take on this many major projects at once?
You know, I went to our national conference, and I was talking to people, to directors all over the country, and I was telling them about that, and people were just amazed. I've never known anybody to do this many projects simultaneously at the same time. And this fast. I mean, this conception, our city manager and the council and the mayor came up with the idea to do this all at once. They put together the funding package for us, and we hit the ground running. And I mean, for this to happen in a three-year time period is just unbelievable. But that really just speaks to the commitment that the city has to Parks and Recreation and providing those services for our residents and in our staff.
Yeah, what does it say about the city kind of looking at a big picture to make this big of an investment in Parks and Recreation and aquatics?
Yeah, we're listening to our residents, you know, and that's the key factor. We're here to provide these services for our residents. We want to listen to our residents, get some feedback from them, and also keeping our finger on the pulse of what's happening outside in other communities. We want Irving to have the same amenities as other communities. We want our residents to feel there's a value to live in this city. We want a great Parks and Recreation system where people can continue to come out and enjoy and play and create memories.
Parks and Recreation Director Joe Moses, thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Stay up to date on all of these projects by visiting cityofirving.org/playirving.
Hi, I'm Thomas Gandy. On the next City Source, see all of the emotion as Operation Finally Home, the city of Irving, and other partners provide a mortgage-free home to a military family. We also have these stories. Meet the Parks and Rec employees working to light up the night with holiday cheer. Plus, see improvements at the Irving Golf Club that are just one part of the venue's success. That's at 6 p.m. on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30, and at youtube.com/thecityofirving for all of the important local stories and information we bring you on ICTN City Source.
It's time now for Pet of the Week, and we're joined with Egan Dobson from the Irving Animal Care Campus. And Baby Girl, tell us a little about Baby Girl.
Yeah, Baby Girl's about two years old. She is a terrier mix. She is super silly, super sweet, and very, very dog-friendly. Pretty much, she's a dog we go to if we want to test another dog, see how they do with another friend. She seems to like cats. We're pretty sure she's potty-trained. She came from another house. Baby Girl is one of our extended stay superstars, so her adoption fee is actually reduced.
And like a lot of other pets, she's wearing her holiday festive sweater. It's, you kind of have a Black Friday sale running all the way through Christmas, right?
Always, yes. So we have the Home for the Holidays, or Ho, Ho, Home for the Holiday Special, where all animals are $50 to adopt, unless they're an extended stay or a critter, then they're only 25 or less.
Who could ask for a better Christmas gift than Baby Girl, right?
Oh, right. I mean, we do appreciate people getting animals for Christmas, but we do want to recommend, you know, and obviously let everybody know that it is a lifetime investment. It's not just a present for Christmas, but for life.
And lastly, the Comfort and Joy Drive is also running during the holiday season. Tell us about that.
Yeah, so the comfort and joy is to be able to get donations from people for this Christmas holiday, to be able to provide things that we need here at the shelter during the year.
Well, while Baby Girl wants to see if Santa is at the door, we'll remind you at home that you can check out our websites on the screen below and find some adoptable animals here at the Irving Animal Care Campus.
The Mustangs of Las Cuenas holds a special place in the heart of our city and in the heart of its renowned sculptor, Robert Glenn.
He loved them. And every time we came, people would come, "Are you Mr. Glenn?" And he'd say, "Yeah." He said, "Can we get your autograph?" And so he would always do it.
Robert Glenn's partner Susan Stolberger is sharing fond memories of when the two of them would visit the Mustangs.
And then, don't want to get teary.
Robert passed away in the fall of 2023, but his legacy lives on as we celebrate 40 years of the historic sculpture that has touched the entire metroplex.
When we were coming in once through the customs in Dallas Airport, the customs lady was a lady, and she looked at Rob's passport, and she looked at Rob, and she looked at the passport. And she said, "Are you the man who made our horses?" And Rob said, "Yeah, I am." And so she stood up, stuck her head, "Hey, you go, you all. This man here, he made our horses." And Rob was so embarrassed, but it was so marvelous.
Robert was commissioned by businessman Ben Carpenter in 1976 to create the group of wild Mustangs.
When I was three years old, my first year dancing, and I saw Clara on the stage, and I was like, "I want to be her."
Now, at 16 years old, Polly Schofield is living out her dream in this year's production of Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker.
It's like a surreal experience. I love it.
A surreal and exciting experience that allows her to put her own spin on Clara.
I like took the character and made it into the way I would like to portray her, which is a lot more, has more sass and less little innocent little girl, which I find fun.
Another dancer who's adding a personal touch to his character, the prince, is Nathaniel Yu.
When the attendants for the Sugar Plum bring us tea and coffee and things like that, I'm not going to pretend I like tea because I don't. I like to add a little touch of silliness without going too overboard with it.
And some dancers, like Gianna Nygaard, wear many hats, performing various characters and working behind the scenes.
I'm helping produce the show. I'm so grateful for all the opportunities I received growing up in this Momentum Dance Company community. And I'm trying to give back.
That kind of gratitude and passion is what makes these dancers return to Momentum every year and be part of this breathtaking ballet.
Nutcracker has been my life for my entire life. I don't have a Thanksgiving break. I have a Nutcracker Week. It's been, yeah, it's just been my life for so long. It's just part of me now.
I know I'm going to have no time, but I also know that I'm going to love my time at the studio, at rehearsals, working with the kids, being able to work with all the dancers. I love it.
While the Nutcracker has become a valuable part of the dancers, it has also become a cherished community tradition.
It's like a fairy tale, like Cinderella, Sleeping Beauty, they appeal to the younger audiences. And this one also does that, but at the same time, it has like a poise and an elegance that would also appeal to adults and older teens.
The music and the dancing and the story all come together in a really special way that I think captures and entertains audiences year over year.
This is an amazing opportunity for us to give back.
There's a lot of families in need in Irving, so we're here to do the most we can do.
We're packing toys and bags in preparation for Saturday, when we're going to be delivering gifts to over 400 needy families in the city of Irving.
We're the people that put them out. So, you know, we're kind of the elves, I guess.
The first couple of days, basically, we sort everything. So we have all the donations that come in from the fire stations, from the different events that we've done throughout the year.
They've learned over the years that if we can sort it by age and gender, then whenever they have the application for the families, they can go get exactly what those kids may want. Every year, there's a few things that I'm like.
My favorite toys as a kid, maybe Legos. I've not seen them since I was a kid. We have Rock'em, Sock'em Robots.
I saw a Nerf gun earlier that whichever kid gets that, they're going to be happy campers because that thing is mega.
This is emblematic of the culture of the employees of this city. The culture of wanting to give back and valuing the place where we serve.
It's just good to see the community supports this program, supports the police and fire department so much that we're able to do this every year.
Working for the city, you know, you get to provide for your family and your kids. And, but you also get to see all the families in town who don't have the opportunity to provide for their kids. So it's good to be able to help.
We're able to brighten up their Christmas a little bit, so it feels good.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Stevens. Be sure to watch Irving Spotlight as we kick off Holidays at Heritage with the annual parade and tree lighting. And we attend one of the community's favorite holiday shows, Momentum Dance Company's The Nutcracker. So tune in for the December 13 episode on ICTN Now, Spectrum Channel 16, and Frontier Channel 30. And on YouTube at The City of Irving, as we spotlight the city's arts, culture, and entertainment.
It's meal time at the Irving Animal Care Campus, but today's menu isn't ordinary dog food. This is a holiday supper, perfect for a pupper.
We have chicken, we have canned carrots, green beans, and we have pumpkin puree.
This is what Thanksgiving looks like for 51 dogs who are patiently waiting to be adopted.
They don't even know where to start.
While some dogs were a little confused.
Did you enjoy Thanksgiving? How was it?
Most gobbled up every bite in their bowl, just like many of us on Thanksgiving.
Where's all your food?
Look at them, they're so happy. Everybody was very quiet, no barking. Everybody's really happy enjoying their food.
Of course, no Thanksgiving meal is complete without a sweet treat.
It's dessert time. Of course you have to have pumpkin pie.
This isn't dessert. Your dessert's down there.
As is the case at many dinner tables, the pumpkin pies didn't last long. And obviously, the perfect ending to Thanksgiving is a food-induced coma. With these dogs.
So we're going to eat while we, while we work. I think the next we can do, Mel, is you ready for, we'll go, are chiefs ready? Chiefs.
Mayor, should we do number six first? Or do you want to do number nine first?
We'll do number nine. That'll go.
Okay.
Chief, we've been waiting, you've been here all day waiting for us, haven't you? They turned it off when it goes off.
Is it off? On?
Now it's on.
Okay. Mayor and Council, city manager, I'd like to come forward and give you a presentation on Station 9. I'm going to kind of cover the history of Station 9, where it's located, some of the damages that have taken place, what the cause and origin is presumed to be at this time. I will let you know that the station has been investigated. There was a final determination, both inside the city and outside by the insurance company. So we've had our work confirmed by outside agencies as well. So just to give you kind of a timeline and on events that took place for Station 9. The personnel assigned to that station left the station at approximately 8:20 in the morning. They were headed to the drill field to do their physical fitness test. And about an hour and 17 minutes later, the EMS lieutenant went out there because one of the personnel left a piece of equipment at the station. So he returned to the station to get that equipment, and he reported no smoke odors or anything visible. But he did enter through the bay, apparatus bay door, not inside the station. 9:37, they started hearing static over the radio in our dispatch center. And eight minutes later, 9:45, we got the first emergency call from a civilian outside for a private business that saw the smoke and flames coming from the fire station, called it in. Shortly thereafter, IPD got the call, called over to us to see what was going on, said Station 9 could be on fire. 9:45, the call was shipped over to our dispatch center. Structure fire response was dispatched at 9:45. Four minutes later, Engine 11 reported heavy smoke showing while en route on Highway 114. And at 9:49, 10 seconds later, Medic 12 checked out on scene with smoke and fire showing from the building. Here's some of the damage on the inside of the fire station. The center picture you see there is the kitchen and the stove. The bottom right hand is looking at the dining room. The top right hand is the living room. So you see that whole large area of that station suffered significant damage from the fire. Let me back up just a minute. At the bottom, you can see where the investigation was completed and ruled as undetermined. Because if they don't know beyond the shadow of a doubt, they have to put undetermined, accidental. I will say that going up there and looking at the station myself, looks like the heaviest part of the fire was just left of the stove. The ceiling joists were burnt into at that location. We're assuming that the grease fire caught the cabinet on fire next door, next to the stove, and then went vertical into the ceiling. So just to give you a little bit of history about Station 9. Station 9 was built in 1987 at a cost of roughly $400,000. Since that time, we've had a lot of issues with Fire Station 9. And the reason I'm giving you this history because I don't feel like it is a good idea to invest in this facility to rebuild it, and I'll tell you why. The slab is cracked in two. We have put piers under part of it. It's cracked so bad that the firefighters had to prop their beds up on four by four blocks in the bedroom just to level them out. Anytime we irrigated the property, water would seep up into the slab. Bricks have cracked, fallen off this structure, windows have busted and had to be replaced. They've had to refloat the driveway a couple of times because it keeps sinking for that heavy apparatus to drive over. They floated underneath the fuel tank because it's so heavy, it kept sinking. As you know, North Irving, we got really, really bad soil. And that station, like I said, was built in 1987. There were no piers put under it, so there was significant issues with this station. Station 9 was assessed by Building Services. And based on the condition of the facility, that's why we put it into the bond program. So it was one of the stations included in the bond program. There was a lot of maintenance that needed to be done with this station. Plus, the age and limited space of the facility determined the need to be rebuilt. That's the reason why the station was currently in the bond program. So Fire Station 9 assessment that was conducted by Building Services back in 2019. The prices back then were roughly $600,000 in needed maintenance at that station, and 50% of that was priority one issues. Now, I did work with Mark Massey, just like I've done with Station 8. We only spent the funds we needed to spend to limp that facility along until it could be rebuilt. So like Station 8 had some issues with the roofing, we just did what needed to be done. We didn't spend a lot of money on it because we didn't know what the outcome of the building would be once we were finished using it. Same thing with Station 9. So Station 9 was included in the bond program. It was to be relocated and rebuilt, and I'll show you some pictures why, for better response times up in that area. So all along, we had the idea of moving that station. So Station 9 covers the Freeport area. I think most of you know that. Station 9 was a single, was a single company house with one pumper engine in it. The apparatus had a daily minimum staffing of four firefighters, to include one captain, one driver, two firefighters. The reason we kept four on this particular piece of equipment because it was a single company house. The closest stations to Fire Station 9 are Station 12 on 635 right at Olympus, Station 10, which is in Valley Ranch, and Station 7 located down on Walnut Hill and Beltline. A structured fire has three phases that we go through, the incipient, free burning, and smoldering. Both OSHA and Texas law requires us to have four firefighters on scene to fight any fire beyond the incipient stage. That's why we had four in that single company house. So if they responded to a structured fire, they could make an attack immediately, no matter what phase it was in. The closest station to Station 9 is Fire Station Number 12. Over the past 12 months, we went back and researched how much longer it would take for responses in that area. And Engine 12 takes about 90 seconds longer than Engine 9 to arrive on scene within Station 9's district. Now, the truck and the medic times will remain the same because they did not have a truck or a medic at that station. Okay? So we're only talking about the pumper. To cover this area for the city with Station 9 out of service, this is my recommendation based upon what I can somewhat control. I want to make that clear. This is, this is what I can do, kind of where we've got our facilities within the bond program and based upon what happened here. We're not looking to take capital projects from other departments. I know they need their projects just like we do. And so that's why, that's where this recommendation is coming from. So in order to cover this area, we'll be upstaffing the fire engine at Station 12. So they'll have four firefighters staffing on the engine. The truck already has four. It's a tiller truck. Fire Station 7 will upstaff that engine to four firefighter, four firefighters. Fire attack can take place as soon as practical because of this, because every station around Station 9, 10s, 11s, 12s, 7s, will all have four firefighters staffing. If you'll remember, the city of Irving, at our recommendation, passed the resolution for automatic assistance agreement with the city of Coppell back in July of '21. So I reached out to Chief Richardson up at Coppell, and they're willing to help us cover this area until a new station is built. I want to show you a map, kind of what I'm talking about here. You can see Station 9 on the far left. That's their district. The stations around it, like I said, are 12, 10 up in Valley Ranch, 7 to the south, which is straight up Beltline. And see the X up at the top left? That's Coppell's closest fire station. It's right off Freeport. And I can't, I want to, I don't remember what that road is that cuts across between Beltline and Freeport, right up there. But you can see they can come right down Freeport and hit that northern jurisdiction that we're talking about. I will say Coppell has four firefighters staffing on each one of their equipment, so we'll get the manpower there from Coppell. And we'll have the manpower with all the surrounding stations. So as I mentioned, in 2021, the bond program, the voters approved the fire department's bond package for $34.3 million. In the tenure CIP plan, Fire Station 9 was to be rebuilt in 2030. So we would start designing it in '29 and rebuild it in '30. Currently, the way it's written, Fire Station 1 will go through the design phase in '26, '27, and construction in '27, '28. What I'm proposing here today is that we flip those two stations and we start designing Station 9 in '26, '27, and do construction in '27, '28, and move Station 1 back to where Station 9 would have been. Now then, I'll show you some history. This is Station 9 when it was built. This was the first picture we could find in 1994. The station was built in 1987. You don't see too many rooftops around that station. Matter of fact, that right there is a billboard sign. This is what it looks like in 2024. The gold star up there is Station 9, so it's hard to find it with all the rooftops around it. So the reason I'm showing you this picture is the reason I want to move Station 9. So looking at this map right here, you can see the opportunities of where we want to move the station. Now, a couple of those areas may involve DFW property, and I don't know how difficult that will be because it's a federal agency. But I know that I spoke with Orlando and Pat, CIP team, we're looking for some property in that area. But what I want to explain here is all the green streets, that's the study that we conducted that shows our response time meets the NFPA standard. Okay? So if you look all throughout the city, you're going to So if you look all throughout the city, you're going to see gaps. And when that study was done, they recommended 24 fire stations to completely cover the City of Irving in the response time. Now, the cost of doing that does not justify the means, and I understand that. That's why we're looking now, as we rebuild stations, where do we best relocate them to cover the most? So if you look at the stars on the bottom left where we'd like to move Station 9, and let me back up here, you'll see all the park side and all the residential development that has gone on in that part of the city. That extends our response time to people that are at home in the evenings with our number one priority being life safety. This is where we need to get to first. Commercial structure, I understand there's times when we need to get up there, but 90% of the time, we're going to a residential house in the evening. Okay? If we relocate Station 9, we'll better serve that part of our city and the community where they live at home. And like I said before, you can look all over the city, and there's parts of the cities that are not covered in that four-minute response time. But we're covering the most we can with what we've got. And we have an opportunity to relocate this station to cover the residential areas better in Station 9's district. I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, I got several questions. Chief, how many stations does Coppell have?
They have four.
Okay. And so your agreement you have, is it a mutual aid agreement or just? Help me understand the agreement.
It's an automatic aid agreement.
Automatic aid, which means that the city doesn't have to reimburse Coppell for anything, right?
No.
So what's the limit of? Because when you start talking about having, so in other words, on a one alarm assignment, the first engines would be Ardenhurst's engine and Coppell's engine.
That's correct.
Which means that, that's if Coppell's engine is available.
That is correct.
Which means that this agreement is really not, it's a good idea now because it's all you got. That is definitely not something you need to be depending upon for months, and especially since you say about 90% of the calls on Fire Department are EMS calls. And my concern about any delay to build this is that what usually, where you get in trouble is when your backup engine is not available. Then you got to get the third engine from somewhere, so your response times are very long. And especially when you're talking about medical emergencies, you definitely got to get there in a very short period of time. And so, yeah, I'm for doing whatever we can to get this station back online pretty quick because that's a lot of rooftops up there to not have that immediate, that immediate medical response. You know, so.
Yes, sir.
How we can get it as fast as we can, we definitely need to because we're leaving in the area uncovered.
Yes, sir.
Mark, excuse me, Brad.
Yeah, I would agree. I agree with your plan and whatever you can do to bump it up. It's just money, right, Chris? But yeah, so hopefully insurance helps out with that too. But I agree, and I also, I like, it's up to you, obviously, but I like that southern location because it's on the other side of 114.
Yes, sir.
Where there's a significant amount of more homes than you can see on that map.
Yes, sir.
They're not all really covered. Now, if you do that, I will be arguing, maybe I'll argue it just period, but 12s will need four people at that point because it looks like you're relying on 9 to help if there's a structured fire versus getting back up across and then getting in there. Obviously, you know, Hackberry Creek, you can see is already half uncovered already. And then at night, it's even worse because one gate's open, although y'all may have addressed how to get in through the other gates or whatever. But with that said, I like your new locations. They make total sense, and I think it maybe didn't make sense before 12 was built, but it makes a lot of sense now where you can see you're going to get a ton of extra coverage of things that weren't covered before. And I agree, as soon as we can get people on board, but maybe if we get so used to it at Station 12, we just keep four people, Chris, if we can figure out a way to do it.
Yeah, if I could, just reiterate here, the master plan originally was to shift some fire stations around. And so we built Station 12 at 635 in Olympus with the idea of shifting Station 9 down originally to cover that growth. And if you see Station 7 down here to the south, when you move 9s down, you're going to encroach in their district. That allows us the opportunity in the next bond program to move it closer to Story and Walnut Hill area because we've already shifted Station 4 when we rebuilt it. When you come over here on the east side of the city, it's the same thing. We put Central Station in there. It's encroaching on Station 3. So when the stadium side is redeveloped, I highly recommend getting the developer to rebuild that station around that development because Station 8 is already being shifted to the north. So you're shifting your stations kind of counterclockwise to cover the population growth and how it's shifting.
Chief, am I reading this right? Station 8 is now what we consider the one there at the transportation center at Riverside and Northwest Highway?
Yes, sir.
So we've switched from 9 to 8 and then 9 forward. Is that correct?
No, my recommendation is just leave Station out of this conversation. But when Station 1 was supposed to come up in '26, '27, back it up to '29, '30 and move Station 9 forward.
Okay. So it does.
It's just too different.
8 is 9 what I view, what we originally funded, correct? And now, so then you're going over and you're doing, replacing what would have been 1 and we go from there. Am I right? Good. I'm good.
Okay.
Sure. Go ahead, Dennis. Yeah, one last question. On your automatic aid, does that include EMS from Coppell? Ambulances?
They're not automatic aid, no, sir. Just for the whole council to understand the difference between mutual aid and automatic aid. Mutual aid is when a city's resources are overwhelmed to the point they cannot handle it with their resources anymore. The state of Texas has a 418 agreement where we can go and respond in any jurisdiction and help them out when their resources have been wiped out. And for the first 12 hours of that operational period, you're basically providing the services without a fee. Now then, after that, you move into a state getting involved in all that with mutual aid. Now, automatic aid is an agreement we made with the City of Coppell, and that allows us to go over our jurisdictional lines between the cities to respond to emergencies as we agree upon them between the two cities of what will take place. We implemented that automatic aid agreement primarily for Valley Ranch because Coppell has a station just north at MacArthur and Sandy Lake.
Correct.
They have, I think Fire Station 2 is up there. They could actually sit in a house and watch some of our structured fires take place, and it didn't make sense. So Chief Richardson agreed that we'd start off at that area, getting people used to talking on the radio and communicating with each other and get used to each other's procedures on how to respond in those. And we've done quite well over the last couple of years. We've got a lot of those wrinkles ironed out. So it's going to be a lot easier now than to shift to the west and start having Station 1 come in there and help us with Freeport until we get Station 9 built. So it won't be a huge transition for Coppell, but we are asking a lot of them to help us, and they have stepped up and said they would.
You know what? Let me finish up some.
Turn your mic on.
By your coverage, Chief.
Turn on the microphone. Thank you. Your coverage, Chief, really is impacting those major highways where a lot of your calls are because of accidents. So you're really doing a lot more than just covering where our quote unquote residential areas and all, but because of those very, very.
You're talking about like 1.
Corridor, 114.
635, 114.
Definitely. Am I right?
Yes, sir. Because if you look, Station 12 is right on 635.
Yeah.
If I shift 9 down, they can get right on 114. You got it, boss. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. I'm just curious, what kind of firefighters, stations, and ambulance do they have at the airport?
I'm sorry.
At DFW Airport? Is there firefighters that can help at the airport?
There are fire stations at the airport. Now, I will say that I'm sure Chief White would help me if I called upon him for mutual aid. I don't have an automatic aid agreement with DFW. They have an airport just south of Station 9 in the DFW property, but they're not used to fighting structured fires like a lot of these municipalities. So it's a kind of a game changer there, but he would be more than willing to step up if I ask him. Now, like ambulances, I know Councilman Webb asked about ambulances. We have a mutual aid agreement in Dallas County for ambulances, but it's for mass casualty incidents only. And so they send five ambulances from whatever jurisdiction they can get them from and send it like when we had the bus wreck. Everybody remember the bus wreck we had? So when we had that accident happen, we activated the mass casualty EMS protocol, and they sent five ambulances into our city to help us. So we do have that, but it's for mass casualty, not for day-to-day operations.
Other questions? Chief, you got us covered. That's the main thing.
Okay, boss. Thank you, sir.
All right. Number six. Mel has been ready to go a couple of times, and we.
Thank you. Good evening. So I am going to present our overview for the homeless prevention program that staff has developed a framework for, and then what the application will look like and the timeline to put this out. So just again, as background, in August, council, you approved $230,000 to go towards a homeless prevention program. That funding to be awarded to a nonprofit to provide services and resources to any households in Irving that are at risk of becoming homeless, basically helping to reduce any crises that are resulting in housing instability and ultimately preventing them from entering the homeless system by entering a shelter or another place not meant for habitation. So staff then developed framework to, framework and a scoring criteria as a way to allocate these dollars out to a qualified nonprofit providing these services. And I just want to know that this framework is not to be prescriptive of a specific type of program, but more allows a broad range and parameter setting to help achieve, provide the services to help achieve the city's goals in this program. So with that, the program framework, we set the objective to be that it serves a public purpose to provide or connect households at risk of homelessness to short-term rent, mortgage, utility, and/or other housing-related financial assistance or other services that can resolve periods of serious housing insecurity, thereby helping participants address their housing instability issues and avoid episodes of homelessness. We set out three goals to achieve with this program when awarding the funds. The number one is helping those that are at risk to maintain stable housing and avoid homelessness. Two, we hope to reduce the factors facing those households that may contribute to being at risk of homelessness. And for a more long-term goal is improving the health and well-being of those residents through housing stability. The two, the greatest impact that housing prevention programs have is when they're able to, one, effectively target assistance to the households most likely to end up in experiencing homelessness, and then also successfully assisting those households and stabilizing their housing. So we're looking for programs that can effectively do both of these. The components we've put together include, but again, aren't limited to, one, the financial assistance to address any outstanding housing-related obligations, short-term rental assistance, and then the more encompassing of other supportive services such as mainstream resource connections for mediation, workforce development, other resources to address their housing instability, to even maybe helping them find more suitable housing units. Program services that can help achieve those components include housing stability, food assistance, financial empowerment from financial education to household budgeting, workforce development. There could be senior programs, educational programs, and other shared partners that maybe might be on-site to the nonprofit providing healthcare, mental health resources. This list is not exhaustive. There could be other things that maybe staff didn't think of that a program may provide that, again, achieve the overall goals of the program. And we are also not anticipating a program to provide all of these services. They could provide one or two. They may collaborate with other organizations that provide it. But at the end of the day, we're going to be looking for an organization or organizations to award the funds to that help to provide services achieving the ultimate goal of the program and objective. So again, just broad parameters to set how we'd like to see the funding used. We did provide some funding restrictions, so the funds cannot be used for the payment for services of a fiscal agent, endowment funds for religious organizations for religious purposes. So not that the religious organization doesn't provide homeless prevention, but they can't use the funds to then turn around and teach a religious class, for example. It'd have to be workforce development or educational classes to help with their housing instability. Can be used for fundraising activities or events, funding an umbrella organization that then intends to distribute the funds with their own discretion, and then ultimately any items that don't support the public purpose of this program. Again, $230,000 has been allocated to the program, so we'll be awarding that out. Could be one or more than one award to go out. The term is expected to be for 12 months of assistance, and the payment would be the first, 50% of an award would be paid within 30 days of an executed contract, and then the remaining 50% to be paid out six months after contract execution. And we did cap that administrative costs at 10% of awarded funds. So the nonprofit in their agreement would agree to providing the program services, providing monthly and year-end reports to the city, collaborating with other service providers in the community, doing community outreach and engagement and education about the issues and needs for homeless prevention, looking in, examining the causes and identified issues around homelessness, and then participate in the All Neighbors Coalition and the Irving Community Action Network. As a city, we will provide the funding. We will assist those awardees in their reporting performance measures and maybe providing technical assistance if needed. We, you know, this isn't our normal HUD funding, so there's very minor technical assistance, but we still want to be a resource to them in how to help them with their program. And then overall, just monitoring the agencies and conduct program evaluation. On the reporting side, what we're expecting on a monthly basis would be the total amount of program residents seen, the number of residents assisted, total amount of funds spent, total amount of funds spent per activity, and then amounts of funds remaining before the next disbursement. And then any specific performance metrics to the awarded program, which would have been described in their program application. So this will come in, whatever their program is and how they define success within their program. And then at the end of year, it would basically be a cumulative report of all the monthly reporting, and then their most recent financial assessment and audited financial statement prepared by a certified professional to ensure that they're utilizing the funds appropriately. Some additional requirements would include that the city can do an onsite visit with the organization during the term of the agreement. We'd like to have a list of their board members and all the scheduled board meetings so we can attend. We may elect to attend one of those, and then recognize the city as a supporter of the organization and the marketing materials produced during the term of the agreement for the program. In order to apply, minimum qualifications include you to be an agency that have a minimum of two years of being established and successful in providing these services, be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, have submitted all applicable tax returns to the IRS in the state of Texas, and then not owe any debt to the City of Irving or any other litigation. When we get to the application, this is just a checklist that will have a cover letter, a completed and signed application, a current operating budget, and a proposed budget if awarded, the list of any businesses or foundation owners with their contribution level, a copy of the most certified audited financials from an independent accounting firm. If they are a smaller nonprofit that have gross receipts of less than $500,000, then just a compilation report by a third party would meet that requirement for the application, their 501(c)(3) determination letter, Texas nonprofit certificate, and then a copy of their most recently filed 990. All of that together, once they submit, within, this is the scoring criteria we've put together. So if they were first a qualified nonprofit and then they completed the application on time, it was a complete application and was an eligible activity, they'll get 10 points. And the rest is here is what will be assessed as we go through the application. So capacity and experience that they have demonstrated, they have the necessary capacity both on a staffing and financial level to administer the proposed program. The program design meets our city priorities and reflects the processes that promote efficient and effective program implementation. Their collaboration, up to five points. So how are they collaborating with other entities to provide their participants meaningful services? Their scope of services is if, how are they meeting the needs of their target population? is if, how are they meeting the needs of their target population? And the target population can be just as broad of being the at-risk of homelessness, or if it's a program that is a little bit more targeted in, for example, seniors, they could show how they meet those needs. Financial management, that they are able to provide the meaningful services of the award funds and have a financial management system in place to ensure that the funds are dispersed responsibly. Outcomes are reasonable and effective to measure the accomplishments of the proposed program, and the performance measures are an effective method that track the proposed outcomes. And lastly, cost effectiveness looks at their budget they've put together for the program. It's balanced, reasonable, and they demonstrate reasonable self-sufficiency for program implementation. All those together would be on a scorecard of 100, to make it easy for grading. And then that's when we assess applications. So after receiving your feedback today, we'll incorporate that, and our plan is to open the application in January, have the applications due by January 31st, so a quick turnaround. We will then review those applications and bring forward our recommendations for approval to you in late March and February to then approve. Go forward.
Questions? Mark? Dennis?
Well, John had his on for it.
John?
Just a quick question. Now, this is the, this $230,000, this is the money we allocated for direct, you know, from general fund dollars, direct assistance to local nonprofits. This is not the housing forward?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect.
$450,000 total. $220 for housing forward, $230 here.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Is this a, is this a one-time, like this year only, or is this going to be recurring?
We have placed this in the base budget in the general fund, so we have it ongoing.
Okay. So in other words, next year, you'll do another $230?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another question. Will the, will preference be given to Irving agencies, or will it be available for any agency from any city?
We have not placed as a preference in this scoring criteria. The main part is that they can show that they can effectively serve, effectively and efficiently serve our Irving residents. So they have to be able to prove that up if they aren't located in Irving.
So have you got any idea of, like, possible organizations or agencies that would meet your criteria?
I think there are a few local nonprofits that should be able to meet the criteria, yes.
Okay. And you don't have to tell them now, but I'd like to have that list of those.
I would just say those that are, I mean, I would think of those that are currently involved in the Irving, in ICANN, would be open to be able to apply. They are doing, you know, as we've heard, homeless prevention services now. And so we tried to write this in a way to make it an application to adequately assess a program and an organization, but help build that capacity at the same time, is that's feedback that we have received from council, is how can the city help build capacity of our nonprofits. So that was the intention of the framework and application.
Okay. And the reason I ask that question is because, and I'm familiar with some of the nonprofits in ICANN, and they will not meet this qualification. We've gone down this road before with some of the nonprofits that don't have the capacity to apply and score high enough to get the award. So that's really why I'm asking the question. What organizations are we talking about here? You know, I mean, off the top of my head, you know, I can think of Catholic charities, but beyond that, I can't think of any other organization that's going to meet that requirement. So that's why I'm curious about, do you have a list of organizations currently now that's, you know, like I said, that's doing this?
May I ask which requirement it is that you're worried that they're not going to be able to meet?
Well, when I look at that score, that application and the scoring, you know, that's that one, yeah. Because, Mayor, that's based on scoring. So the nonprofits that I'm familiar with, you know, and we've had this conversation before, they are some of the nonprofits that don't have a lot of staff, you know, they don't have, quote, "a lot of that capacity." So they're not going to score high. You're going to have, again, nothing against Catholic charities, but you're going to have an organization like Catholic Charities that's going to come in and just going to outscore everybody, or Irving Cares, you know. But some of these other nonprofits are not going to really be able to compete with those nonprofits who got compliance officers who are already involved in this. So that's what I'm getting, and I'm not complaining. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking the question because it's always my preference to try to get some of these Irving nonprofits to be able to get some funding to help with their homeless initiatives. And so, and that's all, that's the only reason I'm asking that question. I'd just be curious to know the possible nonprofits.
I think it's a fair question. I don't have the exact list. We didn't assess the nonprofits. I would say we looked at several other cities that are providing, whether it's through general fund or other non-HUD fund dollars, programs like this that had, what I would think, make it easier to spend, and looked at what were some of the minimum requirements to make it easy to apply and administer the program. So for some of our nonprofits that may have smaller capacity, they may have a really good program design. So it's really a holistic scoring that we'll be looking at, not just one thing. We hope by providing the funds, maybe that can help build their capacity, and they can go after other dollars, so then on a staffing level, be able to do that. You know, they may have other workarounds, if you will. If they don't have a paid staff that's the compliance person, maybe they have someone on their board that comes in and addresses compliance and volunteers their time that way. That could work as well. It doesn't have to be a paid staff in that. We've seen that a lot with some of our smaller nonprofits. But again, we looked at some other cities that have done the same type of program and got feedback from them and felt this was, would help achieve what we're trying to get to.
Okay. And last question. Would the priority to be Irving residents?
It'd have to be Irving residents.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10 was Dennis, if you and Abdul want to talk about. We've got a few minutes here. Still get time to have a break.
I need 35 minutes, man.
Well, you got it.
I'm just kidding. Actually, so if I find my notes. I just wanted to kind of give a little update.
Sure.
You know, just kind of a overview of the NLC conference that I went, me and Abdul went to in Tampa, and encourage, you know, other council members to take advantage of the opportunities to go to these conferences. They are very informative. You can really learn a lot. And so, yeah. So by the way, that picture, I actually was going through the NLC's photo gallery from the conference and found my photo. And I was having a conversation with, and I'd forgotten what state this lady was from, but she was blown away by just the city of Irving, the things I was talking to her about, but she was from a smaller city. And one of the things about NLC, you know, it's where you got a group of leaders from cities from all over the country, both small and large, gather for these conferences, and you really learn a lot. Let me get my notes here. And so I went to several sessions, and I'm just going to give you a few highlights of some of the sessions that I went to. But one of the sessions that I went to was a mobile workshop, and we went to a place called Tampa Hope, which is, actually, if you go back to that picture you just showed, that's okay. We're sitting in Tampa Hope, and we're, there's a panel discussion is going on. And what Tampa Hope is, is Tampa Hope is a homeless center. And it was put together, and it's in a commercial area, and it has all of these small Hope cottages that they call them. And it's a place where, if you go to the next picture, I think, you got, go to the next picture, those. So they've got like about 100 of these on this piece of property, and then behind these, they've got like about 100 with a plan to do like another 300. They call them pallet tents. And there's actually a company that makes these. And so homeless people, they live in this location, and there's two big, large buildings that provides, you know, some other services. And this was actually, this was initially built to assist people who were displaced by hurricane. And after its use, you know, was ended, then Catholic charities, who actually runs this, came with the idea of just using this to take care of providing some, you know, cottages for homeless people. And so it was, it was a pretty interesting discussion. And if you go to that other picture, that one. So inside of Tampa Hope, there is this booth called Own Mayit. And basically, what it is, it is a, their term that they used for it was, it was basically a, like a medical center in a box. And what you do is you go inside this place, and you can get virtual medical care. You can get all type of examinations from, you can be treated for behavior evaluations, wound care, chest exams, skin checks, respiratory exams, ear, nose, and throat, abdominal exams, headache exams, and general care. And so when you go inside, on the other side of this monitor, there is actually a doctor. He's not in the booth, but it's virtual. And they begin to talk to you. And so then they'll tell you, okay, reach up and grab something and pull it down. And it's, you know, it's like a heart monitor you can put on. And you actually step on the floor, and it has a, you can take your weight. And pretty much, it was pretty neat. And it is actually in the big building for the Tampa Hope, and it's designed so that people could just step into it and get basically, pretty much, all of the virtual care they need. And it was not just designed for homeless situations anywhere, where you can increase your ability to provide, you know, medical evaluations. So I thought it was very interesting. Also, and I've got some, I've got some information, if anybody wants to take a look at it. But one of the things about this conference, it was one of the best NLC conferences that I've attended, and they had some pretty good classes. And a lot of the sessions and classes had to do with housing initiatives, homeless prevention, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll just quickly, it, y'all snuck up on me, so I wasn't prepared. But I was going to read off some of the classes that I went to, and can't find them. Oh, here it is. Here it is. Okay. And so just going to give you an example of some of the titles and kind of the description of at least three of them that I went to, kind of give you an idea. One of the sessions that I went to was called Moving the Needle on NIMBY and Housing. And it was designed to help communities deal with NIMBY. And basically what they were saying is that if you have in your plan somewhere down the road to do something that you think is going to be controversial, you know, they say begin to start talking to the community, you know, months and months and months in advance, and then get the community's buy-in, you know, and it will help you lessen the pushback from people, you know, that's going to have a problem with it being located in their cities. One of the other classes I went to was called Securing Capital for Housing Development Strategies and Partnership for Success. And I just want to read to you here the description. It says, "This workshop, this workshop will explore new federal funding sources, public-private partnerships, and local policy strategies to spur housing development. One key focus will be the Inflation Reduction Act Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund." And it says, "The groundbreaking $27 billion initiative mobilized finances and private capital to address the climate crisis and strengthen economic competitiveness." And it says, "Participants, excuse me, will learn how local governments can connect their residents and stakeholders to capital and how to forge key partnerships with private entities to pursue diverse attainable and equitable housing." And they talked about this fund that's available that cities can actually connect their residents with, you know, to get some funding. And then they talked about some other different housing funding opportunities through the federal government. And then the last one I'm going to talk about, it talked about housing stability and community resilience. And this one basically talked about tactical strategies to enhance preparedness and continuity planning to maintain service delivery and allocate resources that incorporate care and basic needs, security for all members of your town, village, or city. And basically what they was talking about in there was, and it was basically a really more centered around hurricanes, but it says, "When you have a major disaster that displaced thousands of people in your city at one time," it was talking about how you prepare yourself to be able to house those people. I mean, if you can imagine, if we had a tornado come through here and just, you know, displace, you know, 10,000 people, or that may be a little bit too many numbers, 5,000 people, what are you going to do? Because they all need somewhere to stay temporarily. So they talked about those type of things and strategies that you could do in your city. And finally, on the general session, there was a guy from San Antonio who talked about housing initiatives, and he said something I thought was very interesting. He said that the city of San Antonio changed their charter so that they can sell bonds to fund affordable housing. And I thought that was pretty interesting, you know, that, you know, creativity that, you know, they realized that, you know, there's a need for affordable housing. But overall, it was, it was a great conference. I learned a lot. And Abdul, you know, if you want to just share what you want to share. But I just would encourage y'all to go to every conference as you can, because you really get to network with people from other countries, other cities. And you realize that regardless of the size of your city, we all got the same problems. And so, and everybody else has come up with creative ways that, you know, we can use ourselves to meet some of our challenges.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to share some of my thought and experience, what I have learned attending one of the program. I was more interested in looking at from the affordable housing perspective. Quite a few times, we talked about affordable housing, you know, how to overcome the shortages of homes in our area. And as we all know, Irving is growing, and home prices are skyrocketing, and some people have a struggle in getting affordable house. Now, what I learned is a lack of affordable housing sometime leads to homelessness. That is, that is what they were, they were saying. And then to resolve the issues, the city has required a comprehensive approach tailored to local needs and resources. And in that, I think, number one, what they were suggesting is develop affordable housing, meaning expand low-income housing, partner with developers to build affordable housing units using grants or tax incentives. Number two, adaptive reuse, convert vacant buildings or hotels or underutilized spaces into affordable housing. Number three, they say that, and this issue also came and keep coming, the ADUs, right, accessory dwelling units. They say that update the zoning laws to allow smaller, low-cost housing projects. And recently, they mentioned that New York City has changed or relaxed the zoning laws to allow ADUs, and even, you know, is, there is, there is some regulations in the zoning need to be changed to accommodate the ADUs or minimum usage of their lots. And some of the other things which they talked about is building community-based solutions, meaning we could collaborate with, as Dennis was saying, with the nonprofits, leverage the expertise of local charities and faith-based organization. And also, they say that we could think of establishing a transitional housing, which provides the temporary housing that includes support services to help individual transitions to permanent housing. I think these are the, the things which they have been talking about, and I I think these are the, the things which they have been talking about, and I think we, time to time, talked on these issues, and I think we just have to see if we really want to address the issue of housing, then, especially the affordable housing, then there are probably grants and help is available and that we have to tap into. That's all I have to share. Thank you.
Well, it's always great to go to these, these events, you get to meet some good people, and it's always interesting to me, when you start, to your point, Dennis, when you start talking to people about what we do in Irving, they're like, kind of taken back, because we do quite a few things, and there's a lot of stuff that we do that, that they're talking about, and, oh, we've already done that, we've already done that, so, but it's also, for me, it was always a good networking, because you developed some things that were happening in other cities, and they wanted to come see what you were doing, and you got a chance to go see what they were doing, and it worked out pretty good, so, appreciate both of you doing that and explaining to us. Well, we got through everything except the website design and customer relationship management, project update, and the data centers, I do think that the data centers are something we're going to have to spend some time on, because we got them coming at us from like 20 directions. We may want to, Chris, talk to Encore as part of this whole thing to understand what they really will do and won't do, and what's in their budget, and what's in their ability to do, because I think if we're really going to pick, look at this differently, we need to work with them so we know where they're putting them to take advantage of it, or if we're going to select certain areas, then that's where we want them, we don't want all of a sudden one clear out in the middle of nowhere that really doesn't do anything but take care of one, when we're moving forward with this, so. All right, well, we got about 20 minutes, everybody will get a chance, and we'll stand adjourned and meet at 7 o'clock.